Good morning, and welcome, members of the public. We welcome you to the special meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is February 21st, 2025, Friday. We take note that I was going to say a quorum, thank you, of the board is present. The chief executive officer, county council, executive officer, and the sergeant-at-arms are all here to assist. We will begin today's board meeting with the county's land acknowledgement. The county of Los Angeles recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and care for by the Tongva, Tautavium, Surrano, Kish, and Shumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, Fernandino Tautavium Band of Mission Indians, Gabriolino Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabriolino Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabriolino Band of Mission Indians Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. To learn more about the First Peoples of Los Angeles County, please visit the Los Angeles City/County Native American Indian Commission website at lanaic.lacounty.gov. Thank you. Executive Officer, please play the Code of Conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is about to commence. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's board hearing, and the board encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the board must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the board's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the board. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with board members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements toward the board, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and board members, and may not clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the board meeting. And finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify the sergeant-at-arms or other county staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Today, we have the budget matter, which includes departmental budget presentations. Executive Officer, before we begin, would you please read the call-in information that was also provided on the agenda and explain the speaking rules?
For members of the public wishing to participate remotely, as indicated on the agenda, please call 877-692-8955 and use participant code number 4433663. Members of the public participating remotely and in the boardroom, you will have one minute to address the budget matter. Please state your name, and once your time has expired, we will immediately move to the next speaker. For members of the public joining us remotely, when the board moves to the budget matter, promptly press 1, then 0, to be moved from the listening queue to the speaking queue. Remember to turn down the volume on your device as soon as the moderator calls on you, or there will be an echo. To ensure we hear from both in-person and telephonic speakers, we will alternate between the two speaking queues. Members of the public who are in attendance, when you hear or see your name displayed on the screen, please come down to the front of the boardroom, and staff will assist you. Please do not approach the podium until directed to do so.
Thank you. We will take up item number one, fiscal year 2025, 26, departmental budget presentations. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1, then 0, now to comment on this item. We will first hear from our chief executive officer, Fesia Dampenport.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, and good morning, supervisors. So, as I mentioned in our previous departmental budget presentations, many of our departmental presentations were prepared and even submitted before the disastrous fires, and so you may not see requests in their budget for this fiscal year relating to the fires, but they have included them in terms of their unmet challenges as appropriate. And secondly, we received some feedback from our earlier presentations that the template was not easy to read for those who were streaming or viewing on the television, so we have revised the template slightly to enhance the viewability of the document. Yes, so we're working on it. We're trying to make it better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will start with the first presentation by District Attorney Nathan Hockman. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and supervisors. It is an absolute pleasure to be here today, representing the District Attorney's Office of Los Angeles County and its over 2,100 members. The District Attorney's Office is engaged in a number of priority items. We are engaged in prioritizing public safety, whether we've seen it recently in the wildfires and going after everyone from the looters to the arsonists to the people impersonating first responders to the price gougers to the financial scammers. We're going after the human traffickers. We're going after the fentanyl poisoners. We're going after the organized retail thieves. We're going to go after the residential burglars. We're going to go after the hate criminals. We're going to go after people committing both these large violent property crimes and the small crimes, the people who are destroying the quality of life in our community through essentially creating nuisances throughout the community that has not gone abated in a criminal forum, and we are going to treat those as seriously as we're treating everything else. Now, while we engage in this mission of prioritizing public safety, we are going to do it with the highest respect for the due process of the people that we are labeling effectively defendants and then bringing to court to charge them with crimes. Along those lines, we're going to be dealing, we've been dealing with, the Racial Justice Act and all the implementation of that throughout the entire DA's office. But coming online right now is something called Race Blind Charging. It's a technology that allows an investigative report to be stripped of any indicia of any race or ethnicity, have a deputy district attorney decide whether or not to file on it, reinsert that information, and have, see if there's a different conclusion, and then if there is, have a memo prepared explaining the difference. That is coming online by the end of this month. There is a cost certainly involved to engage in that technology, as there is a cost involved in bringing in additional artificial intelligence technology that we're dealing with, and ultimately other technology that is going to allow the District Attorney's Office to do its job more effectively. We're also dealing with the fact that we are down 20% on our workforce. By that, I mean that the attrition coupled with the people who have left the District Attorney's Office means that we are down 200 deputy district attorneys office-wide. We are engaging recruitment efforts to build back those numbers. We're bringing in part-time employees, people with 10, 20, 30 years' experience to help us on a part-time basis, because it turns out that the criminal activity in this county hasn't gone down. You know, where the District Attorney's Office deals with over 180,000 criminal cases every year, we deal with every felony in this county. We deal with every juvenile case in this county. And as far as misdemeanors goes, sure, there are city attorney's offices in 12, actually 16 out of the 88 cities, but for the other 72 cities, we actually deal with their misdemeanors. And for the 125 unincorporated areas, the DA's office is all they have to prosecute crimes. It is an enormous task, but it is a task that we are absolutely up for. And we look to, again, we submitted a budget, they asked for certain requests, both for technology, for certain positions, as grants have been deleted, we've noted that in the budget as well. And what do I do at this point, open it up for any questions that anyone might have?
Thank you. Janison.
You usually go first. Do you want to ask your questions first?
No, go ahead.
I just took a bite of a bagel. Good morning, Mr. DA. Thank you for that presentation. This board has prioritized "care first, jails last" for a vision for all of LA County. And a part of making that vision for us a reality is implementing strong mental health diversion programs for people who commit crimes because of their mental illness to help them get the care they need, which we think cannot occur inside the jails. So prosecutors play an important role in these diversion programs. So what are your thoughts on diverting people who have mental illness from jail into other programs, and does your budget support that?
So generally, I love the idea of diversion, where we find someplace other than a jail for someone with a serious mental illness to get adequate treatment for the mental illness that they suffer. However, if they've committed certain crimes and they victimize certain people in our county, those crimes have to be acknowledged, and the victim needs to be supported as much as the defendant needs to have his underlying issues cared for. So to the extent that the mental health diversion programs are diverting people, particularly people involved with nonviolent, non-serious crimes, into mental health diversion, and these facilities that are receiving them are adequate to actually treat their mental health issues, and the people who have these mental health issues stay in the programs until conclusion, and if they don't, that the mental health programs then notify the District Attorney's Office and everyone else involved that they've walked away from the program, so that then if they choose not to be part of the program, and specifically if it was part of diversion, the next step in that situation is they get back in front of a court. And if they choose not to be part of the diversion program, then yes, there is a place that we'll have to put them, and it's called jail, or depending on the level of crime, a prison. So starting off with the idea of actually trying to find a mental health diversion alternative for this class of criminal that goes ahead and commits a particularly nonviolent, non-serious crime, I think would be fantastic. I hope you folks fund it. If you can't fund it, I hope the state funds it, and if they can't fund it, I hope we find federal dollars to find it, to fund it. Because again, using the LA County jails as a locked mental health facility is a joke. I want to make that clear. They are not equipped to deal with people on a long-term basis who have serious mental health problems, yet there are over 4,000 people in our LA County jails today, and you'll be hearing from the sheriff, and you can ask him this question, that they are trying to give some level of mental health treatment, because there are no other programs out there that have locked facilities, particularly to deal with a violent or serious criminal who also has these mental health programs. So I would be absolutely thrilled if you can fund or find these programs that can provide not just the outpatient programs, but the locked facilities, so they truly can get help for the mental health issues that they are facing.
Good. Well, my question was, you know, what's your thoughts about this? So you've given us a good indication of your perspective, and I appreciate that. So speaking of our victims, the Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, has been funded by the federal dollars, and it's been decreasing every year. And last year, there was a national shortfall of about $700 million. And as you know, and we know, this money is used to support victims of crime here in LA County through your department's Bureau of Victim Services. We're grateful that our state was able to backfill some of that shortfall. However, we're anticipating that this trend of decreasing funds will continue. Is your budget currently, or how is your current budget going to continue with some of these services and, you know, really continue to connect our victims of crime to the help that they need?
So our Bureau of Victim Services over the last four years has been, has witnessed a 15-plus percent decrease in the number of victim service representatives. The focus, quite candidly, has not been as much focusing on victims as crimes as it was the actual perpetrators of crimes. I'm doing my best to reverse that immediately, that the District Attorney's Office, for instance, now sends deputy district attorneys with victim families who have suffered the tragedy of having a son or a daughter or a parent murdered when they're facing that murder at a parole hearing. We're going to be, do our best to increase the victim service representatives, both through hiring that we're engaged in, because there are currently 14 positions that are open that they've, I don't know if they've tried to hire in the last couple of years, but they've absolutely failed. We're not going to fail. We're going to bring back our ranks, and again, to the extent that the VOCA funds are being cut, to the extent that the California state budget isn't going to help us out here, we'll search for grants, whether it's, again, state or federal grants to help backfill these very necessary positions, because if you are a victim who's going through the criminal justice process, and it is a bewildering and terrifying process from a victim standpoint, we need to make sure we are holding their hands at all points in the process, answering their questions, and making sure they don't get revictimized by going through the criminal justice process.
Thank you. One last question, Madam Chair. Mr. DA, you and I have spoken a lot about the young people who are incarcerated in our system, and as you know, I've been spending a lot of time at Los Pedrinos with some of the young men who are fighting to stay in the juvenile system and not be sentenced to county jail. One of the alternatives is Pine Grove, the fire camp, and I think we talked about that, but I'd like you to talk publicly a little bit about that process. I saw that you actually have visited with some of the young men in Pine Grove who were helping to fight the Eaton Fire and the Palisades Fire, and it sounds like you think that's a good program. So I'm wondering, what level of support do you think your office and your prosecutors can give to trying to divert more young men to Pine Grove to finish out their sentence as opposed, again, to county jail? And are you open to, I don't know, maybe making your prosecutors a little more aware of this program, or training them to maybe recognize a potential in a young man who is having their sentencing hearings? That's my last question. Thank you.
So I had the chance in one of the weekends in which I went down to the Rose Bowl to meet with the firefighters, to meet seven members of Pine Grove between the ages of 18 and 25. Pine Grove is located in Aurora, California. It's run by California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation and Cal Fire. This is an incredible program, and we need to do everything we can to get people into Pine Grove and to actually build one here in Los Angeles County. So of the seven kids, or young men that I met with, we went around the horn to see what crime they had committed. It was murder, 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 attempted murder, shooting into an inhabited dwelling, murder, attempted murder. These were young men who had made seriously bad mistakes, but I saw them there, and they had gone through this Pine Grove program where they get up at 8:00, and they got to work. They got to be dressed, shaved, ready to go. They worked till 4:30. They learned the skills of being a firefighter. They clean brush. They learned the positions on the fire line. They worked their tush off all day. The guards that are there don't even call themselves guards. They call themselves basically instructors, because they are there to help these people, these young men, become productive young citizens. Now, here's your problem. They can't get the Los Pedrinos people. They can only get the SYTF population. That would be, you know, Barry Nirdorf population. Now, here's where it becomes an even bigger problem. There was only one guy there from LA County. They could have 40 people there from LA County. So when I asked, and you should ask, our probation officer, the chief probation officer, what's happening here? He said that it's a voluntary program. You cannot force someone to go up and do this program that will give them discipline and life skills to truly turn their lives around. So what happens is, you're in the Los Angeles juvenile system. There are no, you don't have to wake up at a particular time. You certainly don't have to work. Go to classes, don't go to classes, and the access to drugs is actually quite plentiful versus going to Pine Grove where the discipline is significant, where the job is real, where the life skills you will learn are incredible. So we need to actually have the individuals convinced that Pine Grove is their alternative in life. This is a combination, not just of the DA's office, because I'll promote it from here to the ends of the earth, but you need the public defender and the alternate public defender's office pushing it with their clients. You need the probation office pushing it with the people who are there, and hopefully we can get more and more young men to Pine Grove.
There are young men in Los Pedrinos who want to go to Pine Grove, but honestly, sometimes your prosecutors are pushing for county jail instead.
I will tell you that there are, again, sadly, the Los Pedrinos population, as I've been informed, doesn't qualify for Pine Grove. It has to be through SYTF. If there's any exceptions to that...
Yeah, they're on their way to SYTF.
Yeah, if there's any exceptions to that, I will absolutely push it with our prosecutors.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you, Mr. DA.
Thank you, supervisors.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis?
Thank you for your presentation. And I wanted to ask you about some of the grants that you're losing out on, obviously. Can you just go over those again? I think there were several that you had mentioned. What is your plan to try to continue some of those exercises or staffing of these programs? It sounded to me pretty important.
Yes. So two of the grants that terminated dealt with elder abuse and human trafficking. We are actually supplementing them with other funds within the district attorney's office so that we don't miss a beat in either one of those two grants. Also, there was a Social Security Administration grant that had certain positions. Turns out that when we figured out the amount of the grant versus the amount we had to contribute on top of it to actually achieve what we wanted, it was not cost-effective to have the grant. So we are actually dealing with the cases of Social Security without the need of this particular grant, because it was actually not increasing the prosecutions we can bring in this area versus the cost that was involved with the grant.
What were the issues around the Social Security? Fraud, or what?
Yeah. So typically, the issues around Social Security are fraud. It's only fraud. It's people using fake Social Security numbers in a variety of identity theft. It's working with certainly the Social Security Administration, which was the best part of the grant, is that they sort of had some skin in the game. By giving us a grant, it would be easier to work with them. I've been assured that communications with the Social Security Administration will not be slowed at all by the fact we're not getting the grant, that those channels have already been set up now. And again, to the extent that we can now dedicate, in this case, district attorney investigators to not just Social Security fraud, but all the different types of fraud implicating identity fraud, we view this as a cost-benefit analysis not to accept this grant. You're not going to hear me say that very often. I'm going to be accepting grants that help our mission from wherever I can get that source. We definitely need additional resources. This one turned out not to be cost-benefit effective.
And I'm wondering if you collaborate with our Department of Business and Consumer Affairs, who does oftentimes look into fraud as well? If there's been any attempt or discussion with that office regarding fraud?
I don't know, but I will certainly look into that, because I'm looking for pipelines to information wherever we can get them.
Right.
Whether it's the public, whether it's county or city organizations that get notification of fraud, certainly, or different hotline numbers. So we will certainly look into that as another pipeline for information.
And the director is Rafael Carvajal.
Thank you very much.
Who has been at it for a long time. And I think our former CEO assistant, Joan Akita, was previously in charge of that unit. I'm sure you can have a discussion with you around that. But I also wanted to ask a question regarding something that is more particular to my district is nuisance abatement. We have a lot of issues, in particular in East Los Angeles, unincorporated, with unlicensed cannabis dispensaries, and wondering what your thoughts are on that and what direction you're going to be taking.
So particularly with cannabis, and what we're talking about, obviously, is the illegal cannabis market. That is one of our priority items in the next year. It is a multi-hundred-million-dollar illegal market throughout the entire county. It's a multi-billion-dollar across the state of California. It is affecting everything from the tax revenue that is not being collected from these illegal cannabis stores, sales tax, income tax, to the extent they have workers, workmen, cops. Every type of payroll tax is not being collected. Moreover, they're putting the legitimate cannabis stores that have gone through the licensing process, they've gone, they're paying their taxes, at an economic disadvantage because they can sell their illegal cannabis a lot lower than the price of cannabis in a legal store. Plus, there's a huge problem with the illegal cannabis market dealing with fentanyl. The legitimate cannabis market, they call it from seed to store. They're able to monitor literally from the seed all the way to the sale to make sure it is healthy. Cannabis, it is what they are marketing. The illegal cannabis players don't even begin to go into that level of scrutiny of their product. And we have seen fentanyl being mixed into the marijuana supply and the cannabis supply, and people dying from it. So for all these reasons, we are going to focus in the next year in the illegal cannabis market. We will welcome the participation of every legal, legitimate cannabis store to help identify their illegal competitors out there. And this is not just going to be a LADA priority. We're going to be working with the cities. We're going to be working with the state and the federal government to go after this particular criminal element.
One thing that had come up a couple of years ago in our district, in East L.A., was that we had, you know, these unlicensed dispensaries. And the minute that you would find out or have sheriffs go out there, they'd leave, and then they'd come right back up. So it's kind of a whack-a-mole thing here. And one of the things that we found as well is not just going after the people that are actually running the operation, but the people who they lease from, and going after them as well. Because in many ways, they also know what is being distributed there. And wondering what your thoughts are on that? Because we've had issues where we've even attempted to try to close off water and electricity, where we've actually had manufacturers of, you know, the illegal cannabis in warehouses in East Los Angeles and around city terraces as well.
Let me tell you, Supervisor Solis, how I will go one significantly huge step bigger than that. There's nothing that can put away an entire illegal marketplace than putting people in jail and taking all their money and property that derives from their criminal proceeds. So I'm not just going to shut down the electricity and the water. We'll go ahead and take the entire warehouse. If they bought a car with the criminal proceeds, we'll go take the car. If they bought a house with the criminal proceeds, we'll go take the house. Then as far as whack-a-mole, turns out if you put the person in jail, they might want to hide under certain LLCs, but they're going to jail. And you can keep tracking down the LLCs. So the ability to both follow the money and then follow the criminal is something that the DA's office, working with the DA's investigators, and local and state and federal law enforcement will do. It will actually take that type of effort to really make a serious dent in the illegal cannabis world, and we are prepared to do it. And please, anybody who's engaged in the illegal cannabis world right now, this is not a threat, but it is actually a promise.
One last question. What are your efforts right now in terms of investigating public officials, Public Integrity Unit? What has gone on in that department?
So I come from a public integrity prosecution background. I did it when I was in the U.S. Attorney's Office. I even defended these cases when I was a defense attorney. I personally have an idea how to build these cases and how to win these cases. We have an excellent Public Integrity Division right now in the DA's office. There's a number of pending cases, and then there's a number of cases under investigation. Very high priority. Because again, just like whether it's the police forces or public officials, you have one bad public official or one bad police officer, it ruins it for all the good ones out there. Just ruins their reputation. So our goal, again, is to move as expeditiously as possible. When we find criminal behavior being committed by a public official, investigate it thoroughly, make sure that if we do bring the charges, they are beyond a reasonable doubt, and then prosecute that public official.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Horvath?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to follow up on where Supervisor Solis left off. As I understand, you've expressed interest in improving your office's response to waste, fraud, and abuse efforts. So a different part of that coin, but I think sort of a similar subject. So have you been working, I know you've been working with county agencies. I know we've talked about some departments in particular where we've been having trouble with staffing issues and people calling out and potentially abusing the systems that are in place for them. Does this budget provide your office sufficient funding to do that work?
Yes and no. At a small level, it does provide us with enough funding. But if we were to go from department to department to department, looking at overtime fraud, any type of medical excuse fraud, targeting the various employees in each department that were engaged in that, we do not have enough funding at that level. So we can do a small number of cases, but to the extent that I sense that there is a much larger pool of criminals, let's just call them what they are. If you're engaged in criminal fraud, ripping off your department by submitting fake overtime requests, fake medical excuses, fake sick leaves, you are receiving county dollars that you should not be receiving. You've used lies and deceit to get them. That is the definition of a crime, and our job is to go after the criminals. So yes, we will certainly, if we expand these efforts, and I hope we do, we will probably have to come back to this board for additional funding.
Well, since you have to start in a focused place, might I suggest a department that really needs that sort of help? I know we've certainly heard the impact of chronic calling out and potential abuse of the system. So maybe focusing on a singular department as an example to sort of see what kind of progress you can make in a department before expanding countywide if you have limited resources. And please come back to us as you have an assessment of what your need might be in that effort.
Absolutely. And Supervisor, if you have any particular department in mind that you'd like us to start with, I'm all in.
Probation.
Probation?
Yes.
Then we will. We will be looking, even before you ask your question, we will be looking at the probation department.
Yeah. And I raise it only because it's been raised publicly already, that we've been having staffing challenges. There are significant concerns. And so if we have limited resources, I would, we have particular challenges in that department. So I would say maybe starting there might be beneficial for us, given a number of challenges we've had there. I really appreciate how you have come into the office and been open to discussion and collaboration. I know my deputies will be scheduling visits for the facilities in our district with you. I would also, to Supervisor Han's point, note that Camp Gonzalez is a fire camp that is in Los Angeles County, and that might be another place for you to either visit or consider, get familiar with, too. But as it relates to the work that we've had and the issues with the fires, price gouging has been a particular concern, and it is widespread. We are getting a lot of documentation at the county, both at County Council and DCBA. But you have been very out there in terms of making clear that we are not going to allow people to be additionally taken advantage of. And I think we haven't seen perhaps as much progress on enforcement on the price gouging issue. I know this board has increased the penalty that exists. So what resources in this budget are going to be invested in that effort? And how should we anticipate you increasing your efforts to make sure price gouging isn't happening for those residents who have already been through so much?
So without getting additional resources, we diverted resources, particularly in our investigator bureau, to deal with price gouging. Turns out that when, in looking at all the numbers and the complaints that came in, we have to find victims, quite candidly, that are willing to come forward beyond just making an initial complaint. That's actually been a little bit, and surprisingly harder than I thought, because many people don't want to be the public face of being a victim of price gouging. They're happy to anonymously report it, and they want you to do something about it, which we are, whether it's, you know, the city attorney's office and the California Attorney General's office, for instance, have sent letters out, pre-stern warning letters. And it's actually done a whole bit of good in the sense of, I think, really tapping down on some of the larger price gougers. In fact, dealing with the folks who are using an algorithm to dynamically price apartments, for instance, and then they clearly saw a huge demand surge, so they increased their prices well above 10%. They got a whole bunch of these letters, and they fixed their algorithms. So we are actively, we've got active investigations, dozens of price gouging investigations. I know the city attorney does as well. I've spoken to the California Attorney General's office. They, too, are active in this area. And we will bring those cases as soon as we get beyond a reasonable doubt where we can convict that person of a criminal violation. I very much appreciate this board's increasing the fine up to $50,000. Because again, ultimately, price gouging is a financial crime. Unlike, for instance, arson or some of the other crimes that involve an aspect of violence, price gouging is just financial. Can someone profit well beyond what they should otherwise profit? Well, when you put a $50,000 price tag, if you get caught for price gouging, even if we don't go after you criminally, now you've done your part in really, hopefully, deterring price gougers from engaging in these crimes. So thank you.
And I know that you've held a press conference with regard to some of the consequences and how you're doing enforcement. And I will stand alongside you for enforcement on price gouging, because people want to see more of that there. It's a really tough situation out there, and I think the more they see that enforcement effort, that is also an effective deterrent. So thank you for that. My last question is with regard to the enforcement of hate crimes. We know that we have a lot of vulnerable communities who are under attack at this moment at all levels in a variety of different ways. We've seen, as you first came in, you joined us at our press conference with regard to talking about hate crimes in Los Angeles County. And, you know, whether it's religious-based hate against our Jewish and Muslim communities, it's anti-LGBTQ hate, and especially our TGI and trans communities, people are vulnerable. And right now, you and our state attorney general might feel like you're sort of their last line of defense from a legal perspective. So what in this budget are you investing to make sure that they are protected from the hate and violence that is coming their way?
So in this budget, we are working within the budget that we've submitted to have deputy district attorneys specifically assigned to hate crimes, and they are. And we're doing a reach out to all the different communities. We recently reached out to the Asian community, held a press conference. We brought in local law enforcement, a variety of Asian elected leaders, community activists and leaders as well, to get the message out. Because hate crime is a two, there's two parts to it, if you want to look at it like that. The first is actually reporting it. Turns out that a lot of communities don't think of law enforcement when they become victims of hate crime. And in fact, some communities don't even understand what it means to be a victim of a hate crime. And that, and we're doing our best to educate them not only what a hate crime is, but how to report it. Then once they report it, now we have to work with law enforcement to build those cases. We've now told law enforcement, this is a priority item for the district attorney's office. So to the extent you might have thought in the past that the DA's office wouldn't prosecute a particular hate crime, I've removed that doubt from law enforcement, because I said, we're open for business. So you bring us a good case, we will prosecute that case. So that is the way ultimately you get to the DA's office. So if we get the case from law enforcement with a victim who has reported it, then we will do our jobs. Right now, we have adequate resources to deal with it. If we see a surge of hate crimes, because hopefully the reporting might have gone up and law enforcement's investigations would go up, I certainly will come back to the board if we need more hate crime prosecutors.
And I know the county has the L.A. vs. Hate campaign and other ways that we encourage people to report if they, for whatever reason, don't think to first go to the sheriff's department or law enforcement formally. So perhaps your office's relationship with L.A. vs. Hate can help to surface to maybe another place where people are reporting that would give you some insight as to what people are experiencing. And I'm happy to facilitate that if that's helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you, and good morning. Would you mind introducing the folks from your department that you brought with us here today, just so we know here?
Yes. So in fact, let me have them introduce themselves.
Oh, of course.
Even nicer.
Hi, good morning. This is Lydia Youssef, the chief over budget and finance in the district attorney office.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Navjuat Carr, and I'm the admin deputy for DA's office.
Good morning. My name is Steve Katz. I'm the chief deputy.
Good morning. I'm Brian Cosgrove. I'm the chief information officer.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Madam Chair, I've got a few questions, but just really wanted to respond to some of the things I've already heard and piggyback on some comments made by my colleagues. First of all, starting, thank you Supervisor Horvath in raising the hate crimes issue. And, you know, hate crimes really can be defined quite broadly. From my perspective, based on the community I come from, the fact that I'm a woman of color in this country, you know, hate crimes- color in this country, you know, hate crimes also can encompass overpolicing and upcharging of people of color. So I'm very interested in your top priority issue, the race-blind charging implementation, and hope that you can give us a little more detail about that. And I want to know a couple of reasons, because I see that you're not asking for additional staff, and so I just want to make sure that in that it's your top priority, you do have the resources to make that real, and want to hear what the implementation will entail, because as research shows us, you know, AI does not work well for BIPOC communities, because we're not typically thought about or engaged in the developmental stages, and so we experience even more bias if AI is used in any kind of implementation, particularly around policing. So could you talk about your top priority?
Certainly. So race-blind charging, the concept has been around since roughly 2017. What happened in 2021 is that a county up north, Yolo County, did a pilot project.
Very familiar with that pilot.
And what the pilot project was, was as follows. A police officer submits a report. The report threw an AI-derived, by the way, and when I say AI-derived, the original university that did this was Stanford University. They worked with all members of the community to make sure that the sensitivities levels were where they should be, so that everyone had buy-in on the algorithm. Because what the algorithm then does is it strips out and deletes any reference to race or ethnicity for a witness, for a witness's name, for a suspect or a suspect's name. It'll even do it around streets, if there are particular streets that are more prone to be of a particular race or an ethnicity, and it'll call it Street One or Street Two. Strips all this out. So now the deputy district attorney gets a report with this information that's effectively been anonymized or made much more anonymous. Then you make the call. Did this particular person, suspect one, suspect two, suspect three, commit a crime? And if so, which crimes? Then you basically note all the crimes you believe are committed. Then you get the report back, and now the information is all present. You look to see if you make a different conclusion. If you do, then you have to write a memo and explain what about a particular person's ethnicity or race led you to make a different conclusion? What they found up in Yolo County is the amount of different conclusions was extremely small, less than 5%. But what happened is, Yolo County then became the pilot project for the state legislation in 2022. So now the entire state, all 58 counties, have to engage in race-blind charging. They, by the way, the state didn't give the counties any additional money to go ahead and do this.
Unfunded mandates are coming.
This is a beautiful unfunded mandate, as many are. So they said, go ahead and do it. They said, you got till three years. You basically have until 2025 to implement this. Now, this could have been implemented as it was in Yolo County back in 2021 or 2022, before I got here. Could have been implemented in 2023, nothing was stopping them. By 2024, you had over 15 counties across the state that already put it in. We didn't. I showed up on December 3rd, I said, where's our race-blind charging? They said, we're working on it. I said, work on it quickly, because you actually have to get this implemented by 2025, which is coming up quickly. I'm happy to say that by the end of this month, we will have the techno, we've already chosen the vendor, the vendor's already evaluated our system, we'll be able to go online at the end of this month, and then there's additional training. So you don't actually need additional deputies, you just have to train them in how to use this system. Basically, the people who file cases. Because that's where this system comes in, is that the charging level, it's not the trial level, it's a charging level. At the trial level, by the way, and the investigation level, as you're aware, for the last four and a half years, we've had the Racial Justice Act. The Racial Justice Act was designed to not only ferret out explicit racial bias, that would be your classic text message from one officer to another officer, saying, let's arrest this person because of the color of their skin, but the implicit racial bias. So let's assume there's not an explicit message, but only one race gets arrested for this particular crime. What the Racial Justice Act allowed defense attorneys to do is ask prosecutors for the data, and the DA's office has been producing that data now for years. And so obviously, if it's explicit, that's pretty straightforward. But implicit, you have to see the patterns. And if a defense attorney sees the patterns, he can now, or she can now, raise that issue with the judge, and say, we would like this charge dismissed, we would like this entire case dismissed because of violations of the Racial Justice Act. Then the judge turns to the prosecutor, please justify what happened in a non-racial or ethnic reason, and you have an entire court hearing that can be on this racial issue on both explicit and implicit racial bias. What it's also done is it's trained prosecutors in my office over the last several years to be aware of any type of explicit and implicit racial bias in any aspect of the investigation or ultimately the trial prosecution. Are we perfect? I couldn't ever say we are perfect at this point, but are we certainly much better in the last couple of years than we were before this existed? Absolutely.
And so tell me your expectation, now that you've come and you've decided you're going to get us in compliance with state law, tell me what you expect, you know, your hypothesis, once you roll this out.
So my hypothesis, right, my hypothesis, because of the Racial Justice Act, and it's been around a number of years, and the sensitivity that not just prosecutors, but law enforcement also have for these racial questions, that when we go through this algorithm, this redacted copy, non-redacted copy, that our rates are going to be pretty close to what Yolo County was, less than 5%. It might even be lower. But the only way you're doing-
Help me understand, less than 5% what?
Less than 5% where there's a differentiation between your analysis of the first investigation report that stripped of racial and ethnic identifiers-
Compared to when you didn't know all the facts?
Compared to the second report.
Interesting.
And we'll see. You know, the technology is not inexpensive. I think we're asking for $580,000 to effectively have the licensing rights to have this technology onboard. We had no choice, by the way. We've sought the most effective and least cost vendor that we could find.
And do you happen to know who the vendor is? And if you don't know, if you could just get that back to me, it would be great to know.
I will definitely get back to you, I just- Justice Digital Innovations.
Thank you.
And we'll be able to report back after, if I'm here next year, and we'll have this discussion, I'll have some data for you on what actually has occurred as we've implemented this program.
I look forward to that, thank you very much. In response to Supervisor Solis's inquiry around unlicensed cannabis, you, you know, told us about your intention, and I just want to make sure, as you're following state law on that piece, that, you know, I had the privilege of serving in the legislature 10 years and carried a bill that severely limited civil asset forfeiture, because unfortunately, there was a practice in many counties, including this one, of seizing assets before a person actually got, had a conviction. So the current state law is you have to have a conviction before you take people's property, that you could actually prove that it was obtained through ill-gotten gains-
Right.
And not just upon an arrest. So as you're going forward with the unlicensed cannabis industry, I hope that you will follow that law.
Not only will I follow it, but we'll be doing criminal forfeiture. So we'll make sure that the crime has actually been committed, and then we'll then follow the money.
And a person is convicted.
Crimes committed.
Because that had not been the practice.
Person's convicted, and then we'll follow their criminal proceeds to make sure, giving them due process protection at all point. Because if they say, for instance, that that car was purchased with legitimate proceeds, and we'll show our evidence to the judge, they'll show their evidence, the judge will make the final call.
Appreciate that. With regard to the conversation following Supervisor Han's comments, you know, I heard you, clearly, I'm just going to paraphrase, that you talk about if the mental health, you know, programs are appropriate. And just know that we have worked very hard, as has the state, with the care court. You know, we've, are looking to the state to create new licensing models for locked facilities. So, you know, our hands have been tied. The IMD waiver, we have advocated at the federal level to try to get some flexibility from the federal government to allow us to build more quicker, more efficiently. I'm hoping that you're familiar with the homeless court model in Redondo Beach. I just had the privilege of being there this week, you know, they only meet once a month. And so I think that there are models that are happening with the collective goal of making sure that people who commit crimes, who suffer from mental illness, are in settings that are appropriate for them. So you talked about diversion, and I just want to make sure you know, we're building as fast as we can, advocating, and I hope that you'll join us in asking for the IMD waiver, and making sure that the state, you know, creates this licensing category that really meets the laws they pass with regard to Eggman's SB 43 and Proposition 1. We hope you'll help us with that. I think that's really important.
And Supervisor Mitchell, yes, 100%, I will help you, whatever I can do to make that happen. And by the way, I had a chance to go to the Redondo Beach homeless court. It actually was on a basketball court, I've never seen a court on a court. It was, it was quite a great experience.
Right.
Now, it dealt with lower-level crime, so it wasn't your more serious and violent crimes that we've talked about, but it's a fantastic model, because the homeless individual returns to, in a way that they don't have to go downtown for court, or even go into a courthouse necessarily. They have all the services lined up, literally next to the judge.
Yes.
And so the, and every time someone passes the program and is there for a year-
Congratulations.
They get a congratulations, a certificate, and a standing ovation from everyone there, including myself when I was there.
Same here.
So I love that program.
The other thing that was unique is that you don't have the experience in many other court settings, is it's the same judge, so she has the continuity, she sees people from beginning to end. Same with the district attorney and the public defender. And so people are able to track folks over time and understand their progress, and relationships are built. So I certainly hope that that is a program that will continue and be supported by you as well as our public defender. Last question for me, Madam Chair. You noted in your budget challenges that you're experiencing with staffing shortages. However, your requested budget shows a decrease of 15 positions, so can you help us understand, can you shed some light on the decrease in positions, given the potential future budget challenge that you also identify?
So what we identified was 15 positions that these grants, that we're no longer asking for, have funded.
Okay.
We are funding it through, we're funding actually through other requests, different positions, plus we have a number of vacancies that have already been provided in our budget that we are seeking to fill. So again, I'm down about 200 prosecutors, that we are in the process of a serious recruiting effort to bring onboard. Same thing with, down a number of investigators and even support staff. So that's what that 15 relates to.
Got it, got it. And final, final, sorry, Madam Chair, Supervisor Han referenced Pine Grove, and clarified it, I'm glad that you said you'll follow up, that the young people, that she's talked to in LP, are SYTF-eligible and could go into fire camp. So I appreciate you saying you'll follow up on that. And, you know, the challenge, yes, it's voluntary, people have to choose to put themselves in harm's way, I think that's appropriate. But the challenge, I think, in all of our infrastructure, it's a wonderful, honorable profession. The challenge many face, and certainly at the state level and Department of Corrections, is while they go through these programs, while they are, you know, in our service, if you will, there's so many statutory blocks, if you will, to prevent them from going into the profession once they're released, that you can't become, if you've been convicted of certain crimes, you can't then become a paramedic, which is your pathway into fire. So I think, you know, as you value and saw value in Pine Grove, I think we have to think long-term, that if this is going to be an opportunity for a young person to indeed turn their life around indefinitely, they should have a true pathway into that profession upon their release, not just the free service they give us while they're incarcerated. So I hope that you would, you know, help us figure that out as well.
So the path, actually, what's interesting, I asked that question as well. The state legislature actually created a situation where you can become a Cal Fire employee. You might not be the EMT, you might not be the paramedic, but they are allowing that certification for someone with a serious criminal past, if they go through the Pine Grove program, then they go through the next level program, that's where Camp Gonzalez comes in, the sort of the post juvenile program, these are now young adult men program, and it does allow that path. I think you're absolutely right, that if, they need to see what a bright future looks like if they put in the hard work to get there. I can't tell you how thrilled I am by that, because I'm also dealing with a over 50% recidivism rate in this county. People who commit crimes, go to prison or jail, within two years are going to commit more crimes and victimize more victims. We have to interfere with that pipeline by creating a more productive outlet for these people coming out of prison and jails.
Yes, like a job and a career opportunity.
Absolutely.
And so yes, they've created that carve-out for Cal Fire. My point is other fire departments, not just Cal Fire, other fire departments that are, you know, have difficulty, you know, recruiting. Thank you very much for your time today and to all of your colleagues with you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I thank you for being here. I was going to ask a question that, about the victim assistance program, but I think you covered that. What is your vacancy rate right now?
The vacancy?
Rate? Did you say 200?
We're down about, roughly 20% on deputies. The number works out to somewhere between 180 and 200 deputies that we are down right now. We are down, I think it's 30 to 35 investigators, and I'm not sure about support staff.
What do you envision for recruitment, to try to recruit?
So we're going out to all the law schools, certainly the ones in California, but nationwide. We're going out to, and I don't want to tell my fellow DA's this, but the words out to other DA's offices, that if someone would want to relocate to Los Angeles and they have skill sets, we're happy to have you. I certainly would never poach from another DA's wonderful staffs, but if someone was moving to LA anyway, we would love to invite them to join us. That's where the heart of the recruitment has always been. It's not been as robust in the past. We used to get hundreds of applications every time we opened up a portal. Over the last four years, if we got 50 applications for a portal, it was a lot. We want to go back to hundreds of applications.
Very good. All right, well, all my questions were answered, other than I want to agree with my colleagues on both the illegal dispensaries, because it's impacting unincorporated areas, and is very frustrating, because we shut them down, and then they open right back up, even two doors down, because they know that there's no consequences to the action. So anything we can do to help you, I know we, through the CEO's office, I think we've got staff, and actually Joe Nikita, where is Joe? Hiding? But he was part of that unit and could write a book on it. But I think that it's important for us to do everything we can, and then even as a board, we need to set policy as well at some point regarding that issue. But thank you for being here. Do you want to have any closing comments?
No, again, it's, the only way I can do my job is in partnership with this board, and law enforcement, and the probation office, and the public defender's office, and the alternate public defender's office. It really is a partnership to achieve criminal justice, meaningful criminal justice, that does provide opportunities to both exit the system and hopefully never get back in the system. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Madam Chair, could I just comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I like that you're saying that, and I know you've been meeting with some of our new offices and departments, and two that you're probably familiar with is J-COD, as well as the other, we have a new person, I forget his name, we just hired him. Mr. Pickney. Mr. Pickney, who's also looking at jail reduction at Men's Central Jail. So just quickly, what are your thoughts on that, on those?
Certainly, I've had a chance to, again, meet with the heads of J-COD and JSIT, the Jail Closure Implementation Team. I'm told he's about to change the name, by the way, because it's going to be the Community Safety Implementation Team. And I said, if you're in favor of community safety, then you've got a partner in the DA's office. We'll need to figure out how to achieve that, quite candidly. Because, you know, I have been going to Men's Central Jail, I've been a defense attorney for years. It was built at the year of my birth, 1963. Its shelf life should have been 30 or 40 years, which means it's over 20 years beyond its shelf life. It absolutely is a dangerous place, it's an inhumane and unsanitary place, bad for the inmates, bad for the jailers, bad for the lawyers, bad for the public, and doesn't and can't offer meaningful rehabilitation services because of the way it's designed. It needs to be cratered and blown up and taken- of the way it's designed. It needs to be cratered and blown up and taken to the ground. However, it houses 4,000 inmates. Many of them are single cell inmates, that you literally can't put another individual with them because their situations are so violent that you couldn't put a bunkmate with these people. We don't have 1,000 single cell bells anywhere in the county. And by the way, I don't know any of, any district or city or unincorporated area who'd like to have this population now in their, in their particular area. So we need to figure out a way to build some type of, whatever you want to call it, a care campus, community detention rehabilitation facility. The name is unimportant to me. I want 1,000 mental health beds in it, state of the art. I want a situation where Norway would look at us and say, I wish we had that facility in Norway, because it's so good. Is it going to be expensive? It will be. Is it absolutely necessary? 100%. Because I'm going to leave you with this thought, if I might. I read a long time ago, a philosopher who said, "You cannot measure a civilization by the quality of its museums. You measure a civilization by the quality of its prisons and jails." Under that metric, we are not succeeding. I very much want us to succeed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I, you just triggered mine, and maybe it's for the sheriff too, but, do we still have the waiver where we can actually bill for those that are pre-adjudication in our system for mental health and health services?
Supervisor, I believe that that is a waiver that we recently obtained, and it allows you to only do it for a short period of time. I think it's like the 30 days before discharge, not the entire time.
It's still in place.
I believe so.
Okay. Can we follow up on that? Because when you said it's expensive, that's why we advocate with the federal government for a waiver, because for, especially for those that are suffering from mental illness, it's important to have a continuity of services. And if you break that, it's not, it's not a good way to provide support.
So we'll confirm with DHS, ODNR, and get the information over to the District Attorney's Office.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
All right. We are now going to hear from our sheriff of Los Angeles County, Sheriff Robert Luna, and he's going to make a presentation.
Good morning, Board Chair, and members of the Board of Supervisors. First of all, I want to thank you for your service to all the residents of our county. Your work every day, in all matters, doesn't go unnoticed. I want you to know that in regards to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, we continue to work extremely hard and make progress. Just a bit of an overview. For example, I know we hear a lot of rhetoric about crime being up, and crime's important. Every crime that occurs is very important, especially when we have a victim attached to it. But I want you to know that for our county in 2024, we had a reduction of 2.4% in violent crime, which included a reduction of about 13% in homicides. Property crime was down 1.4% for a total Part One reduction of 1.8%. Not massive numbers. I believe 1.8% relays to about 1,422 crimes, but that's 1,422 less victims. So again, I give all the credit to our employees, our deputy sheriffs, and professional staff, who in patrol alone in 2024 made well over 2 million contacts. So obviously, our priorities continue to be to reduce crime, to restore public trust and accountability, in which from a compliance perspective, we've made significant progress. But I want to reemphasize, we have a lot of work to do. We continue to progress forward to try and modernize our department. We will be talking about that in our presentation, specifically as it relates to the computerated dispatch, or CAD as it's known. We continue to collaborate with a lot of our county partners and private partners to address homelessness. And I'm emphatic about improving deputy and employee wellness, and we have some work to do there. But I just want to take a minute before we start the official presentation. I want to recognize and thank our incredible sworn and professional staff members for their dedication to serve our community, and on many occasions, often too frequently, putting their own risk, their own lives at risk, which we did in awards banquet, and the stories were amazing about saving children, elders, you name it. Our deputies were very heroic in a lot of the work they did. And this becomes even more critical when you'll hear how significantly understaffed our department is. We have significant staffing challenges, and basically, we're doing 100% of the work with only about 76% of personnel. We're a department that lacks in technology, equipment, in some facilities, definitely in training, but we're trying to do whatever we can to improve that, and you'll hear this in our presentation. So I applaud, I absolutely applaud the incredible work that our employees are doing. They deserve all the credit in the world. I'm going to turn the actual presentation over to Assistant Sheriff Gerardo Pineda, which a lot of you already know. He'll be going through it. And then, under Sheriff April Tardy, who's sitting to my right, and I, actually, the three of us, will be looking forward to all of your questions and concerns after the presentation.
Thank you, Sheriff Luna. Good morning, Chair Barker, members of the board, and CEO Davenport. My name is Gerardo Pinedo, and I'm the Assistant Sheriff for Sheriff Luna, serving as the department's chief financial and administrative officer. The Sheriff's Department is requesting approval of 396 positions, including 225 deputy recruit trainees, and an augmentation of $386 million. The majority of the budget request is to properly staff patrol and custody operations, to provide first responders with working vehicles and equipment, and to comply with legal settlements. I'll be presenting our largest challenges, as well as sharing solutions that our department is pursuing in partnership with the CEO. Our first major challenge is recruitment, retention, training, and employee wellness. We continue to experience high vacancies among sworn and professional staff. This is not unique to Los Angeles County. It's a nationwide issue that is affecting most law enforcement agencies. Here in LA County, the Sheriff's Department has a 23% unavailability rate among sworn staff, and a 25% unavailability rate among civilian staff. The term unavailability includes vacant positions and positions that are held due to leaves of absence, also known as impairments. This creates a need for overtime, which attorney roads salary savings and hurts our employees, who are mandated to work very long hours. A few highlights for the board's consideration. Impairment a contributing factor. Among sworn staff, this accounts for 9% of our workforce. So we're very eager to see legislative reform in the area of workers' compensation claims. Competition with neighboring law enforcement agencies is challenging. Others offer higher salaries and provide signing bonuses, and will soon be competing with Metro as it stands up its own new police force. Essentially, we're all competing for a very limited pool of interested and qualified candidates. But there are two tools that could help us immediately. First, implementing a retention strategy as a pilot program with a sunset date and an evaluation period. And second, flexibility to backfill these impairments, especially in crucial areas like CAD, which Sheriff Luna mentioned earlier. CAD is a good example where impairments are hurting our department. The number one, number two, and the number three top leadership positions that are responsible for CAD are all out on impairment, and we're not able to backfill. This scenario permeates the department, and it hurts employee wellness throughout. And we anticipate the staffing crisis will worsen as the custody population increases following the passage of Proposition 36 and other new policies. A second challenge is compliance litigation and lack of staffing and training in the jails. We consider the Office of Constitutional Policing to be a very important part of the department, especially as we continue to work through compliance issues, litigation, and custody solutions. Here, we have four emerging needs, including, we need more positions in custody. The lack of sufficient positions is very damaging to our compliance efforts, and without these positions, compliance will continue to be a major challenge for the department. We're also legally required to complete community and deputy climate surveys. We might be able to complete the community survey with nominal internal expense, but the deputy climate survey is more complex and will require support, such as a consultant. A data scientist position is also essential to analyze and report on the impact of different programs and policies, such as use of forced data in relation to neighborhood crime statistics and stop data. This position would be analogous to an epidemiologist at public health. By way of comparison, Seattle added a similar position, and they've been doing extremely well with their monitors. And finally, in this challenge area, we need more training to ensure that our workforce is up to date and operates in accordance with modern policing standards. Continuing our focus on custody, we have a critical need for a care campus for the following reasons. A, we need a care-first treatment campus, which incorporates the highly successful Scandinavian and the new California models of corrections. B, a care campus would allow us to provide the most severely mentally ill with a therapeutic approach that's akin to a hospital setting in the community and focused on healing and rehabilitation. C, a care campus would provide ample space and opportunities to facilitate mentorship programs where incarcerated people are trained and use their lived experience to support their peers. D, a care campus would provide opportunities for the mentally ill to step down into more normalized environments, which will make it easier to transition upon release. And E, a care campus would be a valuable tool to provide the mentally ill population with wraparound services, and to decrease the number of homeless individuals residing on the streets upon release. We recently visited San Quentin, and we saw firsthand how inmates are benefiting from programs such as training on video production, coding and app development, and meditation classes to cope with anger management and other mental health issues. This reduces violence in custody, it keeps inmates healthier, and prepares them for reentry. A third challenge is outdated technology, equipment failures, and the need for increased training. Since New Year's Eve, CAD has crashed three times. These crashes put the public at risk, demoralize deputies, decrease public confidence, and hurt our recruitment and retention efforts. Today, the system is on its last leg. There are no computer programmers proficient in its antiquated computer program languages to make any repairs or fix CAD. We have been listening carefully to questions from the Board of Supervisors as to whether CAD can be combined between the sheriff and the fire departments. So we've explored this question extensively with our subject matter experts. We've also met with the fire department, and we agree that although CAD, these two CADs are difficult to combine, we may benefit from a one-roof solution. It would be analogous to the Hertzberg Davis Crime Laboratory, where sheriff and LAPD are co-located and provide mutual assistance when needed. So here is a snapshot of our work on the CAD RFP. We are running on three concurrent tracks. First, testing and configuration are happening right now. Second, contract negotiations are happening right now. And third, county council has been tremendously helpful in reviewing the contract on a flow basis in order to expedite. This means that absent any surprises, testing and negotiations can be concluded by mid-March, and we can be back here at the Board of Supervisors for contract approval soon thereafter. Once approved, we could have a new CAD rolled out by the end of this calendar year, if we were able to secure additional support that is very much needed. Specifically, a modern CAD system will require more than the $13 million set aside in the ITIB budget. There are two additional steps that are needed. First, reclassification and augmentation of staff. An example of this is law enforcement technicians reclassified to public radio dispatchers. And second, establishing a capital project for a centralized CAD facility that meets national best practices, including a backup site. Next, we have two other large systems that need to be replaced. RMS is our crime data repository with 4,000 users countywide. It's essential for compliance, responding to warrant and extradition inquiries, and public record requests. It was built 30 years ago, and it's not compliant with the FBI's National Incident-Based Reporting System. Our other antiquated system is Aegis, which is used to manage the four pillars of custody, booking, housing, management, and release. That system was built nearly 40 years ago, and we struggle to find programmers for simple system repairs. RMS and Aegis are similarly situated to CAD. They were built on old technologies, are difficult to support, and failure would be catastrophic to the criminal justice system. Next, we need new body scanners and document digitalization and custody. The department is in dire need of technology and training to eliminate contraband in the jails. Currently, we have old body scanners, and we've identified newer technology which would aid in confiscating illegal drugs that are smuggled inside people's bodies. Additionally, converting documents into digital images that inmates can view on tablets would eliminate drugs that are soaked into paper. Both solutions would save lives and reduce costly litigation. Another area of need is our TASER 10 and Body Cam programs. We're seeking additional funding to continue both. The less lethal and highly effective TASER 10 can save lives and reduce litigation exposure. For example, the TASER 10, once unholstered, activates the Body Cam, which can provide evidence at trial. It can also inform any subsequent training that may be needed. A fourth out of five challenges is the aging fleet of vehicles, buses, and helicopters. We've recently purchased 20 buses for custody transportation, and we very much appreciate support from the Board of Supervisors in having that flexibility. This resulted in five new buses in service, plus another five currently being outfitted, and another 10 buses arriving over the next six months. We were also informed recently that the CEO is helping to procure an additional 14 buses, and C C J C C is exploring the possibility of additional funding as well. We're very thankful for the CEO's support. This is terrific, but we have more to do in this area. Out of a total fleet of 80 buses, in the month of January, only 22 were available. A total of 58 buses were broken down while inmates missed court appearances. We developed a replacement plan, and with your approval of an additional $11.3 million, we'll make further progress toward replenishing the bus fleet. In terms of vehicles for public safety, as of today, we have a shortage of 535 vehicles compared to prior years. We have 2,180 vehicles exceeding the county's mileage policy, and the fleet continues to age and deteriorate faster than it's replaced. So we are requesting $42.8 million to replace an additional 641 vehicles. Finally, we see risk and liability with our aging helicopter fleet. Of the 18 patrol and rescue helicopters, only nine are fully operational without any grounding or maintenance pending. Also, the newest helicopter is 14 years old, with several others ranging between 22 years and 24 years old, and the majority exceed 8,000 flight hours. Helicopters are an essential tool in fighting crime, as well as for search and rescue, as we need more resources, including mechanics. we need more resources, including mechanics and training, to keep the aero fleet safe and in good working order. A fifth and final area of challenges are facilities, infrastructure, and training. We already mentioned CAD, so we'll simply reiterate the need for a capital project in this area. The perishable skills weapons training site is needed for deputies to maintain their skills and to comply with post-re requirements and state law. The training site at Biscaloo's is shuttered due to cracks in the foundation and other extraordinary maintenance needs. Additionally, it is not enclosed, and it's located in a densely populated neighborhood. If it were to remain, then Biscaloo's would need to be rehabbed and enclosed. The positives with Biscaloo's are three. One, it is centrally located. Second, the county already owns the property. And third, there would be no need for the sheriff's department to relocate. Other units needing space include the carry concealed weapons unit. We need space to reduce the backlog that is tied to litigation following the recent U.S. Supreme Court decision. TRAP, our vehicle theft recovery unit, has had its rent drastically increased, nearly tripled, and both TRAP and the Detectives Bureau need a consolidated work location. In terms of solutions, supervisors, we'll highlight eight examples of what the sheriff's department is implementing in collaboration with the CEO. First, we're continuing to monitor overtime to identify mitigation opportunities. Second, we are enhancing the multi-year equipment replacement plan. Third, we're moving to vehicle leasing and partial electrification. Fourth, we're switching to factory outfitting and turnkey delivery of vehicles to expedite deployment and to reduce costs. Fifth, we're reviewing all leases to identify potential cost savings to the county. Sixth, we're civilianizing the Scientific Services Bureau and other parts of the department. Seventh, we are engaged with the CEO's Legislative Affairs Team regarding the workers' compensation issue. And eighth, we will continue to work with the CEO on ad deletes to ensure that we have the correct classifications without incurring any unnecessary expense. Supervisors, I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to present those challenges. I'd now like to hand the presentation back to Sheriff Luna for any additional remarks or for any questions from the board.
Thank you, Herr Ardo. I know how hard you and your staff worked on hours and hours of this presentation, so we stand ready for any questions that any of you may have.
All right. Can I just, I've only got two questions, and I'll give it to Supervisor Mitchell. Can you expand on the projected judgments and damages shortfall in that ask? I mean, I better understand that number.
Chair Barger, so those are numbers that are projected based on the cases that are in the pipeline. That is a number that fluctuates and can reasonably fluctuate quite a bit. We rely on our partnership with county council to predict what that number could be. They work very diligently with our team to see how many cases are in the pipeline, more or less what they're projecting the settlements are going to be, and then that number gets adjusted. What you're seeing before you is the latest estimate.
So, and I guess my thinking is there are things you're asking for, such as, you know, the body worn camera expansion and all that, that I would think would bring that cost down if you had some of the things you're asking for?
Yes, there's a significant amount that we're highlighting here. One is the use of the new tasers. When I arrived, there were a lot that were broken, weren't being utilized. We're now employing a close to 3,000 new TASER-10s, which from our staff presentations are so much more effective. Just the mere fact that they have a new system attached to it that makes a certain kind of loud noise gets people to say, you know what, I give up. That is reducing, we believe, a significant amount of force and less deadly force encounters. But I do want to bring something else to your attention in that, in a lot of what we're presenting here, we're talking about training. We have, as a department, historically been woefully, for a variety of reasons, not doing the appropriate level of training. For example, I've talked about this in the past, our post-compliance. We just jumped up by double digits in the last couple of years because we were way down in those areas. So perishable skills training, use-of-force training, hate crimes training, there is so much mandated training in law enforcement that we were simply not keeping up with. So a lot of our plan puts forth a lot of this training, which could even mean putting deputies more at driver's training, which reduces the risk for liability because they're better behind the wheel. Bottom line is, more training, better equipment, better technology, less lawsuits. That's how you reduce it.
Thank you for that. I mean, I just see a correlation between judgments and some of the things you're asking for that will offset or hopefully bring down. Last question. Sheriff, or Chief Maroni brought up workman's comp and the impact it's having on his department. What is your situation as it relates to workman's comp and deputies out?
The first thing I'd like to say about workers' comp, it's there for a reason. And obviously, in law enforcement and fire, although I can't specifically speak to them, this job unfortunately injures a lot of our employees. And over my 40-year career, I have seen tragedies where we have to support employees who have either died in the line of duty or been significantly injured to the point where they can't care for themselves. So I always start that way. But I think it's come to a time where we, as a department, we, as a county family, need to look at the workers' comp law to make sure that it is being used appropriately for the people who need it and cut out any possible abuse that may be going on for whatever reason, because we need to provide better service to the residents of our county.
Thank you, and I agree. I think we all agree that comprehensive, and it's not unique to fire, and that's what we said to Chief Maroni. I mean, I think every department struggles with that, and even employees struggle in terms of getting access to a doctor, and, I mean, it's across the board. So I think it's an opportunity for us maybe to look at that. Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much, and good morning, and thank you for being with us. First of all, let me thank you for opening up with sharing the statistics, the crime statistics for the county. I appreciate you kind of setting the stage for all of us. Let me get just a point of clarification. On the first chart, I'm clear where it says NCC in the dollar amount. Your additional chart where you spent most of your time, the source says external. What does that mean? Is it a new funding source? Is it an increase in an existing line item? Is it NCC? Just flip to the budget challenges page, and you'll see the source says external. Whoever is monitoring the slides.
Supervisor, we developed that template, I think, on when you go to page three of four, the word external is, it's telling you where the challenge is coming from, whether it's internal to the department or if it's external forces that are, we have the ability to influence, but we don't necessarily control.
Got it. So should I assume that all of those items would hit NCC, or that I, you can't make that, I shouldn't make that global assumption? They're all different.
Well, I think the page one of the chart that has the NCC indication, the department is saying, here is the funding source that we would like to use to fund this request, which may in turn address some of these external pressures.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Just three quick questions, Madam Chair. One on the court transportation buses, second on the academy, and third on parking enforcement. So with regard to the court transportation budgets, buses, I'm glad to see that it was number one on your chart, you know, to hear the total fleet, the numbers that are currently operating. I guess my concern is, it is critical for people to be able to get to their court date to determine their length of stay in jail. And I know you have a five-year plan totaling $43 billion. My concern is, it's a need clearly that needs to be addressed quickly, given the negative outcomes of not having reliable transportation to court during the North County, during the fire near the North County correctional facilities. I know you utilize and have the ability to tap into external resources and alternative methods of transportation to get people to safety. I'm wondering if you're considering any external efforts to, or alternative methods of transportation to try to kind of expedite this process, because it's going to take, I understand it takes time, not only to allocate the funds, but to equip the buses. So I'm just concerned about a five-year plan, given the fragile state of your current fleet.
Yeah, excellent question. And obviously, I know we've had conversations, I've had conversations with all of the supervisors. Unfortunately, historically, we have not had a good equipment replacement plan. We have that now. I can tell you that moving forward, I don't believe this will happen again. But as we look at the challenges that we face now, yes, we're trying to get as many buses and/or vans in, increase our communication with the courts, with the DA's office, we just met with them again. So I love where the communication is and really getting a handle on who's missing court and why. There are some other issues within our jail system that were potentially causing a little bit of a clog, so we're unclogging that. And I also want you to know that we're not only looking at buses as an option. We are looking at, for example, video arraignment. How can we decrease the need for transportation? We'll never be able to eliminate it completely, but through the leadership in the CEO's office, working with our justice partners, with the Public Defender's Office, Alternative Public Defender, the DA, and County Tech, we are really trying to think out of the box, and I am very encouraged by what I hear and see. We're already piloting a program in our downtown court facility next to Men's Central Jail, so that is going to give us additional opportunities to make sure that our inmate population does not miss their court dates. That'll be critical, and it's not just video arraignment, it's for other court processes as well.
That's helpful. And those other strategies will go into place quickly, and so we're not waiting for five years. I mean, because I'm just concerned, I don't know if you have a sense of how many people on a monthly basis are missing their court dates because of all of the reasons you just listed.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I can definitely provide them to you.
I think that's important for us to be able to track.
Too many.
Yeah.
We don't want anyone missing court. That's the goal, to have zero people miss.
It would be helpful to have those numbers just so we can track progress. Another thing that occurred to me, we talk about replacement. Does replacement meet your current need, and does this budget ask only replace those that are, you know, need to be retired, or are you looking at growth, will you need more to meet your current or expanding need?
We will continue to assess that. You bring up an excellent point, that as of right now, based on the analysis that we're doing, our inmate population is already growing. So what does the future look like? We do have to be prepared, not only with bus transportation, but facilities and a whole host of other items.
You listed the continuation of four additional academy classes with an increase of 244 positions as, again, another top priority for the department. Can you give me a general kind of breakdown of the cost covered within the requested close to $36 million for this line item?
Supervisor Mitchell, members of the board, the vast majority of that is for deputy recruit trainees, specifically 200, of the total cost requested in this area, 200, it will fund 225 recruit trainees plus an additional 19 that include a sergeant and some other deputies that are part of the academy classes for training.
Okay, okay. Final question for me, Madam Chair. I noticed that what was not included were additional resources for parking enforcement, and I just want to make sure, I want to confirm that you believe you have the positions and services necessary to ensure the Phase Two of your plan to enhance parking enforcement is actualized.
Based on our inquiries thus far, our plan is moving forward. My understanding is that it has been very effective to this point. I haven't heard from any of you yet that counter, any information counter to that. We will continue to look at that to make sure it's working and how we can adapt to the needs of our community in that regard.
Well, you know, you came to us with a plan, Phase One, you were able to fill the 21, I believe, existing positions, but in your Phase Two plan, I thought that it expanded additional resources. So it's not so much in terms of complaints, you know, from the constituents, but just making sure you have the resources to operationalize the plan you brought forward. That's the question.
Yeah, and I really do appreciate that. And I think a lot of it is the fact that we've reprioritized and put a lot of effort, not only into staffing and equipment. Our employees who are working parking control, just like many other areas of the department, were shorthanded. They were doing what they could with a nominal amount of people. Now that we've given them people, we've gotten people through the pipeline, they have enhanced staffing, they're doing phenomenal work. It's almost like the same work ethic, but with more people, and they're getting the job done. I guess in a long way, what I'm telling you is, maybe we can survive with that and excel, and if we can't, then we'll come back to you with more resources. And I just want to go back to your first question, as Herr Ardo answered your question about the recruits. I didn't say this before, but when I talk about being shorthanded, because I know out in the community, people will ask me, well, is that the supervisors cutting you short? Since I've been here, all of you have been very supportive about giving us the resources to add more to each class. So we have the ability right now to hire enough for eight classes to try and fill those, to fill our ranks. And yes, we're shorthanded. It's a challenge we've had over the last several years. We are playing catch-up, but I can't talk about staffing without recruitment, hiring, and then the retention end of this, which we kind of alluded to, that we need better retention strategies from a county perspective to keep employees here, not only to service our community the way they deserve, but even looking out towards the World Cup, the Super Bowl, and the Olympics that are on the horizon for us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you making that distinction. We do often, I know I do here that, and so for you to, you know, make clear that, I tell people all the time, the sheriff is duly elected, we manage the budget, we have funded what he has asked of us in terms of the additional academies, and then I turn to them and say, and how many young people have you recruited to go to the academy? So it's a two-way street. We've talked about recruitment and all that, so I appreciate it. Just back on the parking enforcement, if I may, I just want to make sure, you know, Phase Two of your plan was a part of the board motion, so I'll follow up with you just to make sure that we're on the same page in terms of what Phase Two, I appreciate it's working now, but you brought forward to us the Phase Two, which was included in our motion. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page, that Phase Two is indeed going to happen. If you don't need additional resources to do it, okay, but I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again for your time today. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm well aware that as a result of Measure G, we have this new process where our departments are presenting their budgets in public and that the public will have an opportunity to weigh in, but at the rate we're going, it's going to be a long day. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to just narrow mine down to three questions, and I'm going to ask them all at once, and then, so somebody keep track and then respond together. One of the things I was going to ask about is the additional funding for body worn cameras in patrol, it says, and it was my understanding... in patrol, it says, and it was my understanding that all the sheriff station patrol deputies had already been fitted with body-worn cameras, and it was the custody deputies that needed it. So just want to know why you're requesting more for patrol. Second question, you have a request there for Law Enforcement Wellness Center. Helping our law enforcement take care of themselves is crucial. I'm wondering if a physical space somewhere in the county is the best way to support our deputies, or, you know, maybe virtual therapy sessions, maybe, you know, focusing on filling vacancies so they don't have to work so much, maybe would help them. So just maybe tell us why you think this idea of a separate building wellness center is a good idea. And three, I wasn't seeing a request to expand our mental evaluation teams, our MET teams, and do you think we have enough MET teams to meet what I think is probably only a growing problem of mental health crisis needs in county? So those three.
Yep, thank you. I'll start with the last one you asked, and then my partners could fill in any blanks. Regarding MET teams, do I think we have enough? Absolutely, we do not. But when I sit here across from you, and I'm well over 1,400 deputies short, I'm trying to fill patrol spots, custody stop, spots, and some of my employees are mandated to work anywhere between eight and 12-hour shifts of overtime, I cannot start expanding the different programs. I believe that the day that I get healthy, that'll be at the top of the list. I've heard everyone loud and clear, not only about MET teams, but host teams. They are incredibly effective, they're national models, and I would love to increase them. I just cannot do it right now. I don't want to tell you I can, and I'm just being completely honest. Number two, wellness center. When I talk about employee wellness, for too long in law enforcement, we have ignored how mentally demanding this job is. We truly believe that if we are able to get our employees the appropriate mental health care through a wellness center that not only impacts them or their families, that we will have much more healthier and effective employees who serve our community at a very top level. To have it separate from any facility we have is critical because unfortunately, there's still a stigma about asking for help or raising your hand. We are working on it, we're getting better. It's a management problem from an executive level, but having a separate facility to be able to tell employees, this is for you, this is for your family, it's going to pay dividends, specifically with the level of overtime that our employees are working right now. Not because they want to, they have to, to fill in the gaps that we have. In regards to your body-worn camera question, when we say we have body-worn cameras for people in patrol, and the next goal is to have body-worn cameras in our custody facilities, and that's what we're aiming for, what we find is because of those same staffing shortages, there are people who don't work patrol routinely, who have to go out and work overtime, whether they're detectives who are carping or other specialized units. We want to be able to equip anybody who goes out with body-worn cameras, so everybody has them, because they've been very, very effective for us.
Great answers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you. I first want to acknowledge the extraordinary work of your department during this time of crisis. I know there's been a lot of emphasis, understandably and importantly so, on our fire personnel during this time, but we also know that our deputies have played a significant role. I know in the Palisades Fire footprint area, Captain Gen C2 has been a lifeline to countless people, and I know that station has been working, I think, 25 hours a day since it broke out. And so I just want to acknowledge that because I know, especially with the numbers that you're talking about, it's important for people to know that we see them. I've witnessed them get screamed at just for doing what their job is, which is to keep the neighborhood safe and keep traffic flowing and enforce some of the closures on the PCH, and people come up with a lot of choice language. So I just want to take this moment to acknowledge that because their jobs are not easy, and they've done an extraordinary job in this time.
Thank you for doing that. That means the world to our employees. Yeah, our firefighters did an amazing job, but so did our deputy sheriffs, and they were out there working endless hours with no days off. They were risking their own lives, saving people's lives, and they are heroes, and it's nice to hear you and others acknowledge them, so thank you for that.
Absolutely, and thank you to all of your staff who have been there. One of the things that was highlighted as a result of some of the fire emergency has been the fire that got dangerously close to Pitches Detention Center. And so I want to ask what you have in your budget as it relates to resourcing an updated emergency or disaster plan for all of our facilities, especially as we're thinking about inmates and custodial staff.
As we are going through the debriefing process for lessons learned all the way across the board, whether it was what we did out in the field, what we did internally, which includes our custody facilities, it did cause us to, again, look at ourselves to make sure that all the evacuation plans that we have are effective for today's date with our current staffing, with the current equipment or technology shortages that we have. So as I sit here, I can tell you that we're going through that process now. We will bring any significant needs that we need to your attention immediately, but I also just want to take a quick minute to reiterate to our community members that at no time do I believe any inmate or employee was at risk during that Hughes fire. We were working feverishly behind the scenes with our partners at the LA County Fire Department. Chief Maroni and I were on the phone. He was giving me his plan on how we were going to protect that facility, and typically, they're the ones in charge of alluding to us about fire behavior, weather conditions. So when they told us we were safe to shelter in place, and they added additional engine companies, fire resources, and then sprayed the area pink with fire retardant, I felt comfortable. I should say, I never feel comfortable. I felt okay with what they were telling me, but even then, we were working on a plan behind the scenes to make sure that we had buses coming to start transporting people if necessary. And for clarification, we did evacuate 400, and I believe it was 58 inmates and employees from one facility on the compound to a separate one, just to make sure we were okay, because the structure was different and more, or a lot older than the other facilities that we had on the compound.
I know they weren't the exact same conditions, but I know we had students at Pepperdine sheltering in place because, during the Franklin fire, because that was the safer choice at the time. So I understand you have to evaluate the conditions on the ground. I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence with regard to all of our facilities and that we have updated plans in place and that we are funding them appropriately. So I'm glad to know that's on your radar in this budget. As it relates to this budget, can you talk about how we are expanding on the success of teams like the mental evaluation teams? Because I know that that gets brought up to our board from time to time. I know we have seen their success out in the community. What is this budget doing for teams like that, the host teams that focus on our unhoused population? How are we investing in those teams?
I would like to sit here and tell you that I'm adding more bodies to those units, but frankly, I cannot do that. Because of our staffing shortages across the department, we're doing everything we can to make sure that our specialized units, MET and host, are trained, that they're training other members of the department. I'm very proud of our both host team and MET team that have taken a leadership role in this region, training other agencies in LA County for best practices when their staffing allows. And it's not only what we do in the field. We have J-MET units that work in our custody facilities. We have T-MET units that work on our transit services. They are extremely effective at what they do, but unfortunately, due to our staffing shortages, we have not and cannot right now, we don't have the ability to increase the size of either host or MET. It is absolutely at the top of our list someday when we get healthier, and the goal is to get healthier.
Okay, I know that from my days on the liability trust fund board, you know, acknowledgement from our insurance carriers at that time was really, you know, how do we use these MET teams and how do we expand that, you know, because that also helps to Chair Barger's conversation around judgments, settlements, and liabilities. You know, I think those teams are a critical component, and so making sure that we are doing what we can to invest in them, I think, is important. I hear you on the challenges department-wide, I understand what you're navigating, and I would say, given the multiple challenges that those teams solve, they are, they ought to continue to be a priority.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's where I ask all of you, and I know there's so many priorities, that when we come to you and we talk about retention strategies for our employees, that it's something that we pay extra attention to, because if we're able to recruit and retain at the same time, then I'm able to fulfill not only my contract city obligations, my custody obligations with all of our settlement agreements and compliance, which we're getting a lot better at, but then we're able now to add to some of these specialized units. You're 100% correct, they do reduce risk. They are very effective at what they do.
Yes, and along those lines, I know you already touched on the projected judgments, how you're getting to those numbers. What will this budget do with regard to training requirements to also help us reduce those liabilities?
What we're really focused on, and again, a lot of this goes right back to the same answer, and it's staffing. I need to have the staffing so that I could consistently pull deputies out of their normal routine work and commit them to eight, 10 hours of training, whether it is driver's training, because if you look at our risk liability, the highest is collisions. But yet, when I look at the amount of training we're doing, it's, there's a huge gap there. So I want deputies to be able to pulled, be able to be pulled away from their normal duties to go do driver's training. There's use of force training. Gerardo talked about CAD. One of the top categories for risk is our dispatch and operator positions, and there's some challenges there, so we're trying to address that in this budget, looking forward with reclassification of jobs, centralized dispatching, so we get away from the station-to-station dispatch. Those are just some examples.
Yes, I think all of that's helpful. I'm not going to touch on CAD because I know you already talked about it. I would say another thing that this board has done, I believe, is invest in a consultant for you all to take a look at department-wide, where some of those vacancies might be filled by unsworn or nonsworn staff in order to ensure that our sworn staff are able to fill the vacancies where they are uniquely required. And I know we've done that, maybe in a handful of positions here or there, but helping to staff up in that way and looking at the department as a whole, that is another way that we can help. And so have we made progress in that regard?
I believe we have, and in Gerardo's presentation, he was talking about how we're going back and really looking at our positions by positions and see where the possibility or opportunity exists to civilianize. And I do go back to CAD because if we're able to reclassify some of those positions, we can get deputies from behind desks to go out and work in the field, which optimizes what we're able to do, but then has more civilianized positions within our facilities.
And one thing I wasn't going to bring up, but since you brought it up in your presentation, is your proposed care campus. I see that as a highlighted need in your budget. I think it would be helpful for us to understand what you anticipate to be part of that. You know, I think there's been discussion, or people have heard this term. I think there's been discussion around, you know, and I've certainly been asked, you know, what is it? Do you support it? And I can't support something that I don't know the details of, and I think from a budget standpoint, we need to have it a little more fleshed out to understand what you think that budget impact is. So do you have a sense of timing on when you'll have a more detailed plan for consideration?
Yes, I'm shooting for spring, early summer at the longest, as we are communicating with a lot of stakeholders to get more specific information, specifically to cost, because as I've stated before, I don't want this to be a sheriff-driven event, although I'm accountable for the jails, I want to remain accountable for the jails, but I see this a collaborative effort with LA County Mental Health, with health, with a lot of private partners, because ultimately, it's about wraparound services so that people that we're taking into our custody, we make better when they come out, which I believe if we're able to focus more on people with mental health challenges, people with addiction challenges, and we have them there, and we have the services for them, then when we put them out, they can be more productive when they get out. They're not going into a homeless camp, living in a tent, adding to our homeless population. I think we have an excellent opportunity to really change the way we've done this decades ago, looking at this completely different, and Gerardo mentioned it, they are Norwegian concepts. And I would invite any of you to take the same field trip we did up to San Quentin, where our state has done a lot of different things when it comes to incarceration and rehabilitation. We learned a lot of lessons that I think we can bring here and actually enhance it and make it so much better.
Thank you. I'm clear on your stated intention, I think, from a budget perspective. If you are continuing to do outreach and community meetings through the summer, knowing our budget cycle as we do, that, you know, depending on when in the summer you're doing that, I don't know what will get included in this budget cycle if we don't have a clear understanding of what it is that ask is. But I just, I wanted to acknowledge that I heard it in your presentation. I understand that it's a conversation that you will be bringing forward, and just wanted to get a better sense of what that timeline looks like for budget purposes. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff Luna and the staff for being here. A lot of good questions haven't been asked already by my colleagues, so I won't try not to go over that, but I do want to applaud the effort for adding the additional cadet classes, the $35.6 million that you have there, and anything you can do to also let the rank and file understand that, because I still get feedback from my field staff that there are still folks that are employed with the sheriff that will continue to say that, that somehow we're not supportive of the classes and all of that. So I just personally want to tell you that, because I think that that doesn't provide for good partnership, you know, overall, and trust at the local level. And I know you and I have talked about that before. I also want to say thank you for requesting the $24.2 million to backfill the telephone revenue, which is something that I had brought up previously in some motions, and that is important so that we can allow for our individuals in custody to not have to, you know, carry the burden if their families want to connect with them while they're in our custody. So I want to say thank you for that. And also for the inmate transportation, the buses has always been an issue for us and for me, and I'm glad to see that you're moving in that direction to acquire more, and to also think about the telecourt cases, you know, looking forward to what that looks like. That can reduce a lot of costs, you don't have to have staff transporting, being there and all of that. Those are ways to reduce, I think, the heavy weight on your budget. So we can do other things, and I wholeheartedly agree with my colleagues that are saying there's any way to consider expanding the MET teams and the host teams. I've always been a big supporter of the host teams. And that was one of the few exciting moments when I met some of, some former deputies that were out in the San Gabriel watershed, and Rodney Gutierrez, I think was his name, he's been since promoted, but he was excellent at knowing firsthand the names of the people that were actually living in the watershed, and he was able to successfully bring some of those individuals out to accept housing and vouchers and on the road to recovery. So there is a great value in that, and I think that that's a cost-effective way of thinking about prevention and to further our reach in terms of dealing with the unhoused. thinking about prevention and to further our reach in terms of dealing with the unhoused. And not everything is about putting the unhoused folks in jail, and I know that, I know you know that, but I think that there's a way of helping us to address it, especially in areas that I represent in the San Gabriel Valley, where we don't have a lot of infrastructure for providing relief to the unhoused. And being there and seeing what the host team does and has been able to do, I think, is really, really something that I don't think most people know really fully about, and how effective they are in terms of prevention and the fact that they have that kind of relationship with people on the ground. So I want to say thank you, but I also want to say, let's look at expanding that as best we can. I think that's really important. And with respect to the wellness center, I could understand how important this is. And I recall discussions we had with the fire department and with their local union, I think it was Gelati, Gelati who brought up the fact that there could be, there should be more assistance to our staff that are stressed, firefighters, public safety officers, your folks. I don't know what that means in terms of acquiring a facility, capital, but I do think that anything that could be done to help provide mentorships for people that have gone through experiences, sometimes your own deputies who have actually successfully been able to provide leadership, and that assistance can also be important. Maybe you're doing that now, I don't know, but certainly I think that's something well worth looking at, even to see what the fire department's doing, anything to cut costs. The other thing is, thank you for the 750,000 for thermal undergarments, which I also brought up for the folks in the jail, because when there's no heating and it gets really cold, as you know, vice versa, it is a big quality-of-life issue, I think, for us. And then, on the overtime body scanner operations, 11.6 million that you have there, I think, is a good, is good. And I want to, I want to just say that one of the things that I hope we can do as we move forward also, is having better relationships on the ground, not, I don't mean with you, but with folks that you put in charge, your captains. For example, East LA, we have the two captain model. Making sure that my staff is fully engaged in those interviews. We used to do that before, and I, and we did it under McDonald, even. So I'm just, I'm asking you to make sure that that communication gets down to your folks, not just in East LA, but City of Industry, those things were always happening. And I feel as though somehow we're pushing back, or someone is, not, maybe not necessarily you, but something's going on there, and I don't, I don't understand why.
We have, just to address that, that is our standard, that we include community input, supervisory input, local elected official input. I know we had a little bit of a snag in East LA, but to my knowledge, our knowledge, that was corrected.
Okay, I would hope, I would hope so, moving forward.
Yeah.
Because it was, a lot of, we can talk off, you know, but aside from that, I just want to say that doing more community engagement, also very top of the list, and I know that's very important for you. You're out there, I see you at a lot of our events, and you've participated with us, and I think those things need to continue. And I applaud your deputies for doing that, because they've been out there with us on festive occasions, and even when it's not festive, but they're there, and I appreciate that, that communication, and want to continue to see that. And I want to thank you, because I caught you, I think you were being interviewed on Channel 7 regarding the whole immigration issue and deportation, and I want to applaud you for that, and I want to say how much more you can do as well. I don't know if you did that in Spanish, but maybe you want to do that to get to our folks, because when people feel so intimidated, they don't want to talk to anybody, they won't even talk, they won't talk to our deputies, because they think somehow they're going to turn on me. We know that's not the case, but not everybody knows that. So I would just ask you to do that and work with your public service folks, your communications folks, to get that out, because it's, it's happening. This is real, emotional, raw emotional feelings that we're seeing in our community right now. So that's really all I have. It's really more just comments. If you want to react to anything I said, please, please.
Just the last comment, I think we've been very proactive, engaged with our different communities. I was at a Muslim leaders community last night, and typically in the past, when I've addressed them, their number one issue is hate crimes. Hate crimes are still important, but immigration definitely rose to the top, and it's not just our Latino populations, it is our Asian communities, our African communities. I talked to a couple of gentlemen from Jamaica who own a restaurant who are terrified right now. So it's real, and I think all of us as a county need to continue to communicate. I think things will get more intense, not less. So we will continue. I've even met with our immigration advocates just to hear their concerns, and I plan on doing much more of that.
Good. Thank you. Thank you to you and your staff. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and yeah, thank you very much for everything you do, and I echo Asad Bajal Horvath's gratitude. Epan Al Dina, and I've shared with you, when I see the sheriffs or the deputies, I stop and talk to them, and there's no question in my mind, their dedication and their passion for the job they do reflects in everything I see, especially Epan Al Dina. So thank you for everything you're doing, and it's good to see you back, Herardo, and always good to see you, April. All right, thank you. We are now going to hear from our Chief Probation Officer, Guillermo Bierrosa, Chief Probation
Welcome.
The probation department is seeking a 2024, 2025 budget of approximately $1.147 billion in order to continue our primary mission of promoting and enhancing public safety by ensuring victims' rights, facilitating positive change to enhance the well-being of the adult and juvenile clients within our probation system. We have taken great care to be considerate of the current budget pressures for the county and make this as flat a request as possible, even taking into consideration the many challenges that we know are very public. Of that budget, approximately just shy of $880 million, so the bulk of it is for salaries and employee benefits to support 5,482 positions. There are, or rather, let me tackle the first item, and then I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Director to continue, but the first item is personally important to me, because last year, we entered a process of reviewing the peace officer positions that we have and determining if we could, we would be better suited for both dealing with the staffing shortages and the type of services that we provide by reimagining the type of classifications that we could use, especially in our juvenile facilities. One of those endeavors was the creation of a new classification of safety and security specialists to enhance our ability to provide, especially when it comes to external security, drug interdiction, and making sure that our juvenile facilities were safe, while also freeing the peace officer positions to actually be providing client services inside of the units. We were able, through emergency authorization of the CEO, to create that new classification that had new requirements that are beyond what security guards would be, so that we had veteran law enforcement folks in those positions, and that's exactly what the classification requires. We're here today to make an adjustment, because originally it was for 55 positions, but we've learned that really these positions are better utilized on part-time, less than full-time basis. So we're seeking authorization, ordinance authorizations for 55 additional. There's no money tied to it, it's simply so that we can hire more people under the same amount of money.
Good morning. I will start with priority two. The chief just did priority one.
Can you just give your name for the record, just for the record?
Sure. Robert Smythe, I'm the Administrative Deputy of the Probation Department. So I'll start with number two, it's up on the screen here. Number two is a position, seven positions funded by the Juvenile Justice Realignment Block Grant. That's the block grant that was a result of the state closing its DJJ facilities and transferring those youth and young adults to our care and custody. These positions are in two blocks, so to speak, as you see them sitting there, the seven. Five of those positions are to help coordinate programs for youth at our SYTF facilities, so they would be doing everything from data capture and performance measurement to confirming attendance, developing new programs, et cetera. And that's five positions, the first five listed on your screen. The final two are accounting positions to handle the JGRBC funding, the coordination with the JGRBG committee, and the accounting and reimbursement back to departments as they consume those JGRBG funds. So two accounting positions to take care of that. Total annual funding there is $52 million, so this is a small ask of seven positions out of that $52 million to manage those funds and manage the services the kids get. I'll turn to priority three, number three on your list. These are 15 positions in total to realign hard-to-recruit administrative items, and what I mean by that, for example, is we have budget staff who are sort of a hodgepodge of title, payroll titles, that don't match the budget mission. We want to realign those positions and the human resources positions and the procurement pitch positions and the management service positions within our facility. Again, 15 total positions. We will realign them to have a more appropriate payroll title that matches what they actually do. Second reason of three is we want to realign them with our competition from other county departments. We all share talent, so for example, back on my budget example, we take budget people from other departments and they take from us. That's for the benefit of us and the other departments as staff learn and grow. And that leads to the third reason, which is to provide a clear career path for these folks. So if they're in the budget genre, the budget career, this allows them to stay within that career and work for us or another county department. So we collaborate with other county departments as we share resources. Same is true for HR, that's primarily payroll-focused, same is true for procurement, again, procurement-focused, and our Management Services Bureau, a little unique, some of those positions are peace officers and don't need to be, so we're aligning them with the appropriate administrative title. The fourth priority is primarily ministerial, this is simply realigning our workers' comp budget to reflect reality. It's a $4 million adjustment, does not cost you any more funding, we will claim that against state revenue, so no net county cost funding. And I know these next couple are going to be fast, because they're really quick. The Office of Diversion and Reentry provided a grant to probation for $2.002 million previously. We have consumed almost all of that grant. All this item does is realign that grant with the remaining $63,000, which will carry over into the next fiscal year, then the grant will have been exhausted. So just realigning that grant. Same thing with the next one, that's number six, this is the Mobile Probation Service Center grant, and this was to provide vans, which have been purchased, seven vans, to provide mobile services out in the community for those who maybe can't get to us, possibly experiencing or at risk of homelessness, and we will come to them. There's no reason for somebody to have to leave their job to check in with their probation officer, let's make it convenient for them, and that's what this is for. The remaining funds are simply to outfit those vans with the technology that they need in order to provide that mobile services to our clients and their families. Number seven is a collaboration with the CEO to transition the process of invoice review for large capital projects from the CEO to probation, so we're working that out with them. This is all sorts of invoice review and reconciliations to make sure the services were provided before we pay for them. Number eight and number nine I'll take as one, they are all information technology items. One is for programming services to build those applications that we need to modernize our IT infrastructure. The other is for data security purposes, to enhance our data security capabilities to address potential threats to our, again, to our IT infrastructure. And then there's another page on critical unmet needs, this one will be real quick as well, there's two items on there. One is an adjustment to our services and supplies to reflect essentially the consumer price index. As that goes up, our service and supply do not go up, so the purchasing power of our SNS dollars gets weaker and weaker. The chief mentioned that our SNS is about 2.4, excuse me, $240 million. A 1% increase in CPI, for example, is $2.4 million. So imagine if the CPI is 3%, that's $7.2 million right there in purchasing power lost. This is not unique to us, it's been mentioned in prior discussions from other departments last week. And the second one is unmet needs to realign our food services in our camps, to make them more robust, to truly treat each camp like a restaurant with the same oversight, stream capabilities, so that we have improvements to our food services to the youth in our care. And with that said...
Thank you, that's it, we're open for questions.
Okay, I'm sorry. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, I appreciate you, and thank you for the presentation. You answered, I have a question regarding the additional budget request for the 35 specialist positions, the security specialist, that's what I was looking for. You talked about the transition from part-time to full-time, but can you share a little more data on outcomes or examples of what the first round of the board-approved staffing positions were able to accomplish in terms of actually enhancing the safety and security for the two facilities? I get the part-time to full-time transition, but I just want to make sure I understand what they were successful at accomplishing, and therefore justify expanding the numbers.
Thank you. I think this has been one of the initial areas of clear success. The first thing that this allowed was to move and not utilize our peace officer positions where we have such a shortage, to actually do the job that they're really better trained for, which is direct services to the juveniles. So from my perspective, that's already a win, but in addition to that, the most significant piece is the interdiction. So they, we have plenty of examples in which, since hiring this new cadre of folks and the safety and security specialists, we've had interdiction of folks coming up to the wall and try to throw a contraband over and apprehending them, doing additional security assessments to determine what has been missing, that from an infrastructure standpoint. These are things where we didn't have a specialty for it, and we had really delayed on making the changes for not having that classification. So we can certainly, if you're interested in very specifics, like how many interactions, we can certainly provide that.
That's helpful, and I misspoke, you're transitioning them from full-time to part-time.
Yeah.
I said the other way, okay. Wanted to correct that. Second question, and that'll be all from me, Madam Chair. I really wanted to highlight the requested increase for ODR funding, for the continuation and the expansion of the FIST program, the Felony Incompetent to Stand Trial, and the diversion program of $63,000. Could you share more about how this requested additional funding would support your existing work?
The grant from ODR is expiring, so this is just the tail end of it, and what that grant has done is it's trained our existing staff to provide those services for those folks who may be at risk of not having the competency to participate in their own defense. So these services train our people to provide those skillset, to provide that service to those clients. So there's no more ODR grant after this. This is the tail end that just happens to be lapsing over the two fiscal years.
Got it. All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, also, and thank you, Chief, for your presentation and the staff. It's very helpful, you clarified a question that was already asked about the safety and security specialists and what they do. security specialists and what they do. And you're reminding me now what discussions we've had previously about what was needed. And so I appreciate that and the fact that you're now going from full-time to part-time, which is good. And these will be placed at just our two facilities, Los Pedrinos or Berry-Nidor for others as well.
Yes, this amount is to essentially just cover those two facilities.
Those two, okay.
Of course, we'll continue to monitor its success and whether it should also be utilized at camps, but this would just cover those two facilities.
All right. Well, I want to, I know that there's been so many challenges that we faced in the department, much of started long before you were here, even before I was on the board. But I want to say that I'm happy that you've provided through motions and things that I know I have put forward or co-authored, a compliance officer, a probation compliance officer, that is now focused exclusively on raising the quality of care and services at Los Pedrinos. How's that been coming along now?
There is a dedicated compliance officer that's actually housed with the CEO that is essentially embedded with us. You know, I think that there's still room to even strengthen that effort. Eventually, a department with the challenges and the size of probation should have an entire compliance unit. It's just impossible to cover all of the different regulations. So thank you for the comments, and I think there'll be an opportunity in the future to even expand the compliance program.
And CEO, you have your microphone.
Thank you, Supervisor. I think our two departments need to have probably a well-vetted conversation about the probation compliance officer. We have the motion, we stood up the unit. I don't think that our two departments are tracking and aligning on what that work should be, what it has been, and what it looks like. So I don't want to allow the board to leave this meeting thinking that that unit is, that the offices are working at optimal levels. And I think that is what our probation chief is referring to when he says, I think there's room to expand or to enhance the program.
And when you say that, obviously, the other day, we had some of our departments here, you know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
No, just the other day, we had some of our other partners' departments that were here. And I know that too has been a struggle in terms of getting on the same playing field or messaging and understanding what those roles are. And I know that there's still a lot of work to be done there, and I would hope that we could, we could have those conversations, or you all have those conversations much more readily so that people do understand what it, that we're talking apples to apples, not apples to oranges.
We, the directives and a motion are not unclear. We need to get on the same page about what that will look like and what the operations will look like between the CEO and the probation department. So there is no, there isn't a lack of clarity in terms of what the directives of the motion were.
Well, I, but my sense is, what I saw here on display the other day when we had the presentation about the global perspective of what the probation department would look like, I didn't get a sense that there was, everybody was on the same page. That's what I'm talking about. And for me, it's more about how do we, how do we get there? How do we actually get there and then get rid of those barriers that are, for whatever reason, impeding the kind of progress that we know has to take place so we can get straight with BSCC and all the other things that are really weighing heavily on us and the department?
So we either need to, from my perspective, comply with the directives of the motion and the intent of the motion, or if there's going to be a pivot that we can work on, then we need to come back and let the board know that, you know, there needs to be a pivot, and here's the reason why.
And I wouldn't, from my perspective, I hope that you're not sensing that it is due to a lack of cooperation and the spirit of working together with the CEO. Nothing could be further from the truth there.
No, no, I'm not saying that about the CEO.
No, no, I'm including probation. To me, sometimes just it matters organizationally where you put something because they are, compliance is a large program, and it touches many parts of probation. And so when you call out a small portion of it, then there's some inefficiencies and some structural problems. And I look forward to continued conversation on it to get it right, but it certainly isn't, from my perspective, a lack of coordination or discussion with the CEO's office.
No, and I don't mean it that way at all. My concern more is how we're partnering with the departments and really understanding what some of those impediments are. And that's going to require, I think, a lot of work and a lot of time, a lot of time on your part. I know it's exhausting, but it's, I think it's worthwhile. It has to happen if we're going to get anything done. So that's really all I want to say about that. I am happy that you're increasing programming, you're looking at doing that by actually getting staff in there to help you do that. That's really critical for our young people. They shouldn't be sitting there idly and, you know, in their, in their quarters or whatever it is. That's not healthy for them. And I'm also happy that the last report you had the other day, that we are really shutting down Central Juvenile Hall, that we don't have a need to have any youth there. That's really important, and the fact that you're going to be bringing more of those tools to Los Pedrinos and that medical attention, all those things that should have, we know should have been happening a long time ago. So I'm happy to hear about that. And I just want to, just want to know what funding is being allocated towards recruitment for new staff and for, especially staff for the probation camps and facilities? And have you been successful? Do you feel you've been successful in recruiting new staff?
It's an ongoing challenge, and I know it's not unique to us. It is particularly unique to probation because we're seeking the best of the best. We have aligned and changed our classifications in an acknowledgement that the folks that we're recruiting need a different skill set than perhaps what we had recruited for before. We're increasing requirements by expanding, for example, our DPO2 treatment and counseling, which requires folks to have graduate degrees. All of that makes recruiting even more difficult because we're competing with both the private sector. And so we have a number of recruitment efforts that are different from what's been done before and are multi-pronged, including a contract with a recruitment firm where we have had some success. But I don't want to leave you with the impression that we are healthy and that we have more applicants that we need. That certainly isn't true. And we continue to review our success and pivot. I think that we're going to see a pivot here shortly in which we try some different methods to get non-traditional folks that perhaps would not have considered coming to probation. This is a work in progress, and we continue to seek sort of what the right formula is to get folks that have the right skill set but that also understand the challenges. You know, it's a very delicate balance in trying to find folks that both understand the difficulty of the job and also have the skill set and the soft skills and the compassion to do it. That's a very particular person and tough to recruit, especially when they see in the newspaper that we're a good agency and they don't know what the future of it is. I think that as, as we move forward and folks can have a little bit more confidence that probation is doing better and that it's a department that's here to stay, that makes a big difference. It's hard to recruit folks when they don't know the future of the employer they're going to.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, and I continue to support the effort of trying to recruit people that really are coming from a more holistic approach, but maturity, education, and, you know, tested skill sets that can make that difference. So I know it's going to be hard, but I think the more that you can message that publicly, even beyond just the board meetings here, publicly is really critical. I think that's something that would go very far in terms of how we reimagine what's happening at probation. And I think there are people waiting to see that. So that's just my, my comment. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you. I think I'm going to pick up where you left off, Supervisor Solis, because I think another challenge for recruitment is when we see reports like the one today of CalDOJ indicting 30 employees in the department. And so we have a lot of work to do in this department. I know that when we have a reduced population of youth that we are supposed to be supporting, there has been an expectation that there would be an appropriate rightsizing of the department, an equitable reduction in the size and scope. And that is, in fact, in a detail in your strategic planning initiative. So what is specifically in this budget shows probation's investment in diversion, reducing intake, or an effective reentry process?
You're right to point out that the requests here made are not toward those efforts, that really they are as a result of the existing challenges, not for growth in those specific areas. I would love to be in a different position coming before you and saying, the emergency, the crisis, those areas are underway now, and what we really want to focus now are on the best practices to make sure that folks don't land with us. Much of those activities today land with DYD or some external folks. They're really not the focus of much of the resources that we have. I don't want to sell us short. There are still all sorts of programs that have continued, but we've not expanded nor are we seeking to expand them at this point because they require more staff, they require, you know, a whole host of things that we weren't prepared to come and ask for today, knowing that we still have vacancies and we're struggling in that other component. I hope we're in a different place. If I, if I could just very briefly, I certainly cannot comment much on the news article that you're referring to today, but I actually hope the public takes it differently, takes in the opposite, that what they see is that what you have now is a probation department that is transparent, that will not tolerate abuse by its employees, that really initiated this process. This is the culmination of a process that was initiated by the probation department in making a resounding statement that the expectation of all employees and peace officers in particular that work for us is of one, of honesty, to uphold the law and to actually care for the young people that we have entrusted. So I hope that, I hope that the message that the public takes is that, in fact, they should trust what we're doing more than in the past.
So to the end about the role that DYD is playing in the absence of probation's ability to think about that component of best practices in the department, I know that they're expecting funding for critical messengers that probation indicated it would be provided from probation and for other services that they're providing. So what is the timeline for them to actually receive that funding, because I'm told they haven't received it yet?
So Supervisor, DYD just recently shared with us the anticipated cost for those credible messengers and the timing of when they plan on bringing them on. We've agreed to set up a DSO so that they can begin billing us for the first half of the remainder of this year to cover that cost, and then they gave us the anticipated cost for the upcoming year, and we've agreed on that amount. And so now I've asked for the details associated with that, the number of staff, and that way we can ensure that the billing is appropriate. But that, that process has been ironed out between the department and us.
So now that you have a plan, how quickly do you think they'll get that funding?
It's a matter of them hiring and then billing. So once they bill, then we can reimburse them for the costs incurred.
Okay. This board previously directed probation to stop using OC spray on young people before I was on the board in 2019 and again in '22. And yet, it's my understanding, it continues to be used. So why isn't the budgeted amount for OC spray in probation's camps and halls zero?
This is a tough question. As, as you know, we continue with the plan to eventually get us to a place where, although resin capsicum spray is not necessary. I had to acknowledge early on after my arrival that despite that being a goal, it was just fundamentally impossible, given attempted escapes and violence that was taking place, to be able to maintain a juvenile hall without it. That doesn't mean that we've abandoned the elimination of OC spray. It certainly has been a delay, and I'm sensitive to the fact that that is still the goal here and the instructions from the board. And we're going to continue to work toward that end and update the elimination policy. In terms of the amount, it's very minimal when it, when it comes to the amount that's budgeted, well, it's not even budgeted toward OC spray. I don't think it would even be an amount that we would, I mean, we're talking about in the thousands of dollars that's utilized for the entire department and probably inclusive of OC on the armed adult component. So from a budget perspective, I don't, I mean, it's hard to even quantify it so small. But I, but I hear your larger point, which is how quickly are we moving toward not having OC altogether? And that's, that's one of the most difficult pieces in trying to balance, that's where we want to be, but a reality of not wanting young people to get hurt or employees to be hurt.
I know we communicated during the time of the Hearst fire and how it got dangerously close to Berry-Jade-Nidor. So can you tell me how this budget is investing in emergency and disaster preparedness for probation facilities for those who are in our custody and for our staff?
We're not asking for additional funding with respect to that. We think that with our existing emergency management unit, we certainly have some policy changes, some additional practical things that we need to do to, every time we have an incident, there are lessons to be learned, but I'm confident that within our existing budget, we can improve our emergency management response.
Okay, so is there something that's currently being spent in your budget already on that?
We already made additional purchases even during the event. So there were some things that seemed small, but for example, making sure that you had enough emergency equipment like flashlights, that was already underway. We essentially absorbed all those additional costs in real time.
So we have an updated evacuation plan, we have appropriate amount of vehicles and all of that, and there's no additional cost to the department? We've already invested in all of that?
No, correct. So for example, already having sufficient vehicles, already having an actual plan for evacuation, all that was already in place. So the improvements that are taking place are really at the margins in terms of smaller equipment pieces and enhancing the plans. So for example, we already have existing emergency evacuation plans. What the team has been challenged with is going back and saying, but do we have a plan if three of our facilities down at the same time? And so that's the area of tremendous learning and advancement, saying, so for example, if one location is an evacuation area to the other, but both of them go down, we certainly had area to improve, and this last incident really, really catapulted us to tackle that.
Yeah, I know, I know Campus Kilpatrick was nearby in terms of the proximity of the Palisades fire as well. So to your point about multiple facilities, I think thinking about that is critical now that we've seen that happen in real time as part of your after-action, that's important. I would also say communication, we've talked about this before, the communication with families.
Yes.
Wasn't happening in an appropriate way. And so making sure if you need to invest in critical communication systems, whether that's a policy, as you indicated, and practice, or whether that's something you have to invest in, I just want to make sure that we're doing an appropriate after-action and appropriately investing in emergency preparedness based on what we've learned from these events.
Yes, your comments are appreciated, and absolutely, and we are doing those things. They are important. Thank you for highlighting that. But none of them are, it's really not a cost for this budget. The large items that have to do with emergency, we already had those and those were, it's those other critical components of the communication with families and the, really the training component as well.
And then my last question really has to go to, we speak we speak, when we've met, we speak mostly about our youth facilities because they have been in the spotlight. But I have heard concerns expressed about probation's ability to provide routine services in the field. I know we've had to transfer some of our staffing from the field to the halls and camps, given our staffing challenges. So does this budget reflect probation providing appropriate and timely field services for the adult component and all of our field services for probation?
Supervisor, you really know how to go at the the tough questions and the challenges for probation. To be frank, I'm not satisfied with adult supervision that we're providing, period. But I probably would have come to that conclusion independent of what's happening on the juvenile side. So what I would say is that parallel, albeit slowly, what's happening on the adult side is an assessment and a reimagining of what supervision is and tying it to recidivism. Just to give you a brief example, we could easily make a policy change that says adult felons need more supervision and that enhances public safety. But it would also result in increased incarceration, increased pressure to the jails, increase. So the real question is how to make policy decisions that don't impact the entire system negatively, but do have a long-term impact on two- or three-year reduction in recidivism. We also know that most of the efforts that we can unilaterally do in probation, you know, they may have a 3% or 4% decrease impact on recidivism. And what kind of investment can we do in a moment in which we are stretched so thin? That, we're not blind to those challenges and we're working on those. I think much of it is, has to do with, when you refer back to this budget, the I T component, you can read in there that a good portion of that is to this end so that we can have a case management system, so that we can have good data to make those determinations. Because we can implement programs that we think are going to be effective. But if we don't have a management system that can collect the data and really tell us if it's having an impact or not, we're just going based on people's opinions. And that's really not an appropriate way to do that. So part of the I T request here is to that end so that we could enhance and do better in terms of the adult supervision component. But I think part of the question is also, if I may, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, which is, have we abandoned or has it been a decrease in our ability to provide appropriate supervision on the adult side because of the movement? This is a question I receive quite frequently. We've not stopped the programs that we have on the adult side. Staff has been stretched. There is tremendous pressure on them doing work. All of that is true. But we've not closed or stopped those adult programs.
Okay, I think that's important to note. And, you know, budget conversations can be tough. I know we just, I think Supervisor Solis said, I think he was just here. And, you know, so we just had a conversation around facilities. And at the time, you had indicated you weren't making major budget requests because you were working within. So focusing on our budget, making sure that our budget that is allocated to this department is going to the things that we actually need to be investing in, that's the purpose of this conversation. So I'm surfacing the tough questions because we're in a tough spot. And I think we have more and better work to do. And I want to make sure that we are appropriately investing in what our vision is and what our goals are. So thank you.
Thank you. Just one, I just have one question. The emergency proclamation that we passed in December included a section regarding H R to help get people back to work. Has there been any progress? Have you seen that to be beneficial?
So we're engaged with the Director of the Department of Human Services, and we've had subsequent meetings. In terms of their increased role with respect to that, I don't want to really over-speak or speak for her, but we are working collaboratively and we look forward to them continuing those services.
But I mean, I guess you would know because it benefits your department when you collaborate and it's addressing people that are, yeah.
Yeah, what I would say is that we're working together. The plan is still in infancy. We know the portion that they're taking over that is going to alleviate us, but we're not there yet. This is still, we haven't seen the fruits of it yet. But not because of a lack of coordination. It's just early in the.
Got it. All right, seeing no other questions. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to hear from the Director of Economic Opportunity, Kelly Lobianco. Director of Economic Opportunity will make a presentation. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I have our Chief Deputy Jessica Ku Kim and our Departmental Finance Manager, Narnie Gregorian, and Kevin Anderson in the back, who's been a help to us.
Welcome.
All right. All right, we'll get going. Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you to our Supervisors, our C E O and folks here for the opportunity to present on L A County's Department of Economic Opportunities' fiscal year 2026 budget. As everyone well knows, the department was created by this board in July of 2022 to centralize economic and workforce development in one agency as we emerged from the COVID-19 pandemic and committed to equitable recovery in the region. I was honored to join the county to establish this new department alongside you all. We are now halfway through our third year, leading with an ambitious vision for an equitable economy with thriving local communities, inclusive and sustainable growth, and opportunity and mobility for all, and are operating with a $241 million budget, 206 budgeted staff lines, our L A County Workforce Development Board and Small Business Commission, 18 America's Job Centers of California, an Office of Small Business, and hundreds of programs and services, capital and placemaking projects, and community partners who implement this vision with us. We know for the success, we know success for this department will not only be co-designing with our community and supporting transformational outcomes for the hundreds of thousands of youth and workers, small businesses and major industries, and residents that we serve each year, particularly those that have been historically disinvested, but ensuring L A County sets a regional strategy that drives investment, commensurate with our need, and supports our national and global competitiveness. In the wake of the pandemic and our creation, we are proud of our team's ability to launch 15 American Rescue Plan programs, supporting nearly 3,700 workers to date in programming-like rapid reemployment through our job centers, high-road training partnerships in construction, aerospace, the creative economy, and early care and education, and a worker equity fund, as well as 40,500 businesses to date with $55 million in grants, $10 million in commercial acquisition for community-serving use, and 500 new startups through our entrepreneurship academies. We're modernizing our public workforce system to focus on quality jobs, advancing programming that addresses our state of homeless emergency and care-first goals, expanding the capacity of our Office of Small Business with our Economic Mobility Initiative, investing in industry clusters in bioscience and sports entertainment, revitalizing county property through public-private partnerships, and driving plans that will optimize community benefit from new infrastructure investment and mega events like the L A 28 Games. I'm highlighting all of that because it's hard to tell on that first slide of all the things that we're doing and investing. But with full understanding of our fiscal environment, D E O is presenting a budget that continues to right-size our organization to our mission and our vision, sustains innovations and critical programming, particularly with the sunset of ARPA, and builds infrastructure that supports economic resiliency through economic disruption, which is at the forefront of our minds with the devastating windstorms and wildfires of last month. We are requesting in this budget $37.7 million in nine positions and unmet needs for a total of $97.5 million in net county cost and a $238.7 million budget in fiscal year 2026. We are requesting the board consider securing long-established and evidence-based programming that the community depends on, including our contractor bonding program that supports equity in county contracting and our Youth at Work and L A Rise programs. Each year, we come to this board to request Youth at Work dollars, the county's largest workforce development program. We are grateful for the increasing ongoing dollars year over year and the contributions of our partner agencies like Public Social Services and probation. We are in the process of redesigning this program to ensure maximum spend and education and employment outcomes for up to 10,000 youth per year. As folks know, we earned a gold eagle for this with parks last year, which has supported more than 100 permanent hires in the county. Each year, through Measure H and now A, we have come to this board to request L A Rise dollars, the county's largest homeless services workforce development program. This program, which includes a partnership with the City of L A and 40-plus job centers and social enterprises, has supported 5,700 individuals with paid training and connection to permanent employment and housing over the past 10 years. This year's cuts from eight, over $8 million to $2 million puts about 600 individuals at risk amid a homelessness crisis. We hope to restore these gaps. We are also requesting the board consider nine new positions that meet our current and future needs, but acknowledge the challenging budget years ahead and are proactively offsetting with revenue and deleting vacant positions where we can. These staffing requests include a new leader on our workforce branch to support our modernization efforts, a new leader and team for an Office of Resiliency, which will drive prevention and promotion efforts among small businesses and workers and offer surge capacity for personnel and programming in emergencies, a staff member for our Worker Ownership Program, supported by Care First Community Investment, additional staffing for our new sidewalk vending program to bolster permitting for micro entrepreneurs and effective and care-first compliance for health and safety, well-being of our vendors, brick-and-mortar businesses, and residents, appropriate data teams for program evaluation and predictive analysis, and dedicated positions for revenue and opportunity generation with the sunset of ARPA and opportunity with the Games and Infrastructure. Further, we have hired as full of clip as we possibly can with few vacancies remaining, thank you to C E O and Human Resources. We are only requesting what is absolutely needed to do our jobs well and efficiently. We are also requesting that the board consider an extension of the Economic Mobility Initiative, which has served 10,000 businesses and is sunsetting in June, to maintain education, training, and technical assistance and capital for entrepreneurs, small businesses, and nonprofits in each district. This minimal investment will ensure D E O has the infrastructure in place to activate economic empowerment strategies for the Games and our Equity and Infrastructure Project pledge, ensuring local hire and supplier diversity commitments are met. And as mentioned, with our start in COVID-19, management of economic disruptions like public works, projects, new laws and policies, entertainment strikes, road and business closures, administration changes, and now the windstorms and wildfires, a more permanent staffing and programmatic infrastructure to support economic resiliency is needed more than ever and is a key part of our strategic plan coming this spring. The board has already tasked D E O with outreach and engagement for 30-plus motions since our inception, and we have stood up 10-plus grant and business interruption funds to date. A team dedicated to ongoing and surge capacity as well as a permanent business interruption fund is needed to quickly activate and meet our community needs, no matter the challenge. Finally, we are requesting dollars that support economic impact analysis and organizational capacity to ensure that D E O can execute against mission and on schedule. Like my fellow departments, we face our own challenges and opportunities that make these investments and approval of our budget more important than ever. We are facing a decrease in our recovery and homelessness dollars that have allowed us to meet the board's goals and our mission and vision through staffing and programming. We will creatively pursue efficiency in-house and new revenue sources, but we do need some of these key positions and bridge funding at this time to ensure community responsiveness. We are also cognizant of the impacts of potential federal cuts, not only to our own public workforce system or capital projects, but also to our public health system and social safety net. We know threats to health and well-being, housing instability, and lack of access to public benefits are inextricably linked to economic security. We will all have to activate to meet the rising needs if federal supports fall short. And finally, we know that the economic recovery from the fires and the economic potential for mega events and new clean energy broadband and capital building in the region will require more from our current staff and partners and creative strategies. These are opportunities to cement our commitment to our communities, and we look forward to following your vision and ensuring our ability to meet the moment as we must. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve you all in our county, to share our requests here on the stage and to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'm going to just ask a few questions. On the Economic Mobility Hub that you're proposing, how does that not duplicate the work of our small business development centers that are run out of our local community groups like our chamber or even the Trade Tech Colleges and other such programs? And I guess my question would be then, why do you think that this should be set in the counties and the best position to run versus the community partners that are currently doing it?
Yeah, it's a great question. I would say, first of all, the county implements most of our programs through partners like those, many of whom we fund with the Economic Mobility Initiative. So the county and our department has an Office of Small Business. It's a small group of staff who are direct service and offer a one-on-one concierge and support with certification and contracting and referrals to community partners through our East L A Entrepreneur Center. But it is a very small group in a county that has 250,000 small businesses and a million when you count sole proprietors. The Economic Mobility Initiative has allowed us to expand the capacity of our Office of Small Business by not only offering one-on-one concierge through 15-plus partners, but dedicated entrepreneurship academies, training and technical assistance like employee ownership, One L A Contracting and Certification, and social enterprise accelerators, as well as capital programs. So we see this as a much-needed boost in a region that has much need, both for one-on-one services as well as boot camp-type programming and access to capital. And again, we often fund our small business development centers. We fund our chambers and help build their capacity to deliver through the Economic Mobility Initiative and these hubs as well in continuation, once it sunsets.
Thank you. And then we'll talk about that more. I don't know that, because I know my chambers are pretty robust. But having said that, we can talk about that offline. You're proposing a new position for the Worker Ownership Program. And my understanding is only three businesses have transitioned into this type of program. So what is the justification for adding additional staff for such a low number?
Yeah, sure. And happy to talk offline about economic mobility. We do fund the Antelope Valley Chamber as part of our Entrepreneurship Academy, and they've been a great partner for us. For Worker Ownership, through the American Rescue Plan, we did launch a program called Employee Ownership L A County. And that is a program that offers outreach and engagement to increase awareness about employee ownership, essentially supporting legacy businesses with their succession planning and going from an owner-to-an-owners model, doing feasibility assessment because it is quite legally challenging and costly to do this transition, and then supporting folks on that transition. We know that that's a long process. And so this is just the start. We've already engaged hundreds of businesses in workshops and dozens in feasibility. And so while you're only seeing three on the way right now, that's just a process over time. The Worker Owner.
How many are currently being mentored? Do you see?
Yes, hold on one second. We have provided education to over 200 businesses. And 33 were going through individual consultation after thinking this might be an option for them.
after thinking this might be an option for them. That is one way to think about employee ownership. We also have received Care First Community Investment Dollars to think about worker co-ops as well as like transition for legacy businesses. And so through those Care First Community Investment Dollars, we've been coordinating Worker Owner Leaders who have guided us about developing incubators and accelerators and capital programs, as well as extending the Employer Ownership L.A. County Program. This position is completely offset by Care First Community Investment and will allow us to launch those programs.
Got it. And then, my office has received many sidewalk vending concerns, and I'm told, and I, unfortunately, a lot of them came from Altadena, which, you know, has lost almost half of its residents right now. But I'm being told that it's taking an average of six months to investigate. Is that accurate?
No. That is, so, we have a lot of, a lot of incoming requests to investigate. I, I don't want to say there hasn't been lags in some cases, and so I want to acknowledge that in our work with your office on that.
Okay.
And others. But that is not an acceptable amount of time. And so we are working to, work more closely with all of your offices as well as our fellow agencies to ensure timely response on issues, making sure we go out there at least twice to fully assess compliance from DEO's perspective and activating our partners at Public Health, Sheriff, and others, depending on the compliance issues at hand.
And, and so feeding into that, since the summer, I guess, in order to get a sidewalk vending license, you've got to work with either a compact mobile food operation or a home kitchen operation, correct?
For a food, for, if you are getting a food, if you're a food vendor, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah. And I'm told that we've only got 66 of the compact mobile food operations and 56 micro enterprise home kitchen operation permits that have been issued. I don't know if that's good or bad. I don't even, that number doesn't sound bad to me, but what is needed to really support food, the vending?
Yeah. It's, we can do better, and we can do more, for sure. So we are, a sidewalk vending ordinance became effective in August of this year. And so since then, our sidewalk vending team, which currently is offset by American Plan Z, American Rescue Plan, and eventually will be by R.F.E.S. as well, a small team of four folks and a, and a supervisor, have been hosting 80-plus workshops with over 1,000 folks to inform them of the new ordinance, what it means to get permitted by DEO, and then if you're a food vendor, which is many of them, the, the process you need to go work through with Public Health, both to access a subsidy either for compact mobile food operations or a MICA, which actually just launched in late fall. So we, we know that we have more work to do to tackle, you know, outreach and get in contact with everyone. We know that we're continuing to put folks out there, but that's part of the reason we're coming here to the board and asking for two additional staff members to bolster our numbers, to be able to do that outreach, support both compliance today and getting through the multiple permitting processes, and then, you know, ensuring that they're fully compliant as a, as a vendor. We do know that the numbers will increase once we have our Small Business Mobility Fund, which is about to launch, as well as our karts out in the field, which is coming next quarter. We are almost all the way through our, our F.B. process internally with the county to select manufacturers.
Okay. Can you give us updates on that?
Yes.
All right. That'd be great. And then, last but not least, just an ask. The Antelope Valley, our Youth at Work program.
Yep.
We are 6% of the overall number countywide that are served up in the Antelope Valley, and yet I know there's a huge need up there. And I'm asking to work with your office to increase that number, because I know there are programs that, that we could benefit from using, especially since a lot of these youth are looking for opportunities versus getting in trouble. And I, I would really appreciate if you would work with our office to address and do outreach in the North County, especially when I look at the numbers that are staying pretty stagnant for the AV. And so I would just, that, that is more an ask, not a question, of you.
Yes, absolutely. I'll give you a half positive, which is it's more like 12%, which is still not good enough, but it's-
That's better than 6. We're moving up at least, that's-
Yes, so we had, in the last fiscal year, 1,021 individuals in the 5th District who accessed Youth at Work, our paid work experience-
In the 5th District or in the North County?
I will break it out by the North County.
Yeah, because I, I know the number's bigger than 6% for 5th.
Yeah.
But I focused on the Antelope Valley, and I know that when I talk to youth that are in our, in our camps, that come from AV, they would benefit from these type programs and probably would have prevented them from ending up.
Yeah. 100%. And we, we hear you loud and clear, and we've been excited to invest in our aerospace high road training partnership with Los Angeles. They're also coming onboard as our, our CBO partner for Antelope Valley, America's Job Center of California, and recently launched our Early Care and Education High Road Training Partnership, another cohort with College of the Canyon. So we know we have more work to do, and, and we're here to do it with your team. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kelly Lobianko. Can you remind us how long you've been in the job now?
I joined November of 2021 to help launch the department.
Right.
So just over three years with the county.
Right. And your department is probably one of the more smaller, right? How many employees?
We have 206 budgeted items and just shy of that, because we're happy, we've nearly closed our vacancy gap, which I keep highlighting because it was, it was a big one to start, and we're happy to, to close it.
And, and one of my concerns is, I mean, all the programs that you've outlined, that, that I know I have supported, I've been on this board now almost 10 years, and the Youth at Work program, since I was Secretary of Labor, that was funded by DOL. We want to obviously hope, hope to see more of that funding come out, but I'm very concerned that most of the items that you talked about, even the Economic Mobility Initiative, the sidewalk vending program, Business Interruption Fund, the Contractor Development and Bonding Program, the L.A. Rise Program, all these are critical, but they seem as though they're all going to be wiped out, wiped clean. Can you please tell me of the ARPA Plan Z funds that you currently have, what is still unspent of the 161 million?
Yes, thank you. And I agree that Youth at Work is critical, so it remains my number-one priority ask this year for the third year in a row. So we did receive over $160 million in ARPA investment thanks to this board. Of our, we have ARPA and some Plan Z. Of our ARPA funds, 100% are encumbered, and 95% has been expended so far, with some remaining, I think about 10% remaining, on track to be spent by the end of this calendar year. Some of that goes to childcare provider grants through LACTA and some legal aid for small businesses. Of our Plan Z, we have about $38.7 million in Plan Z funds, all of which have been encumbered and is being spent down as we speak on programs such as our Fair Chance Program, sidewalk vending, and our high road training partnerships. We've expended about 21% of that with full expenditure by December 2026.
Right. And I, I want to say, I know you had, with the previous administration back in DC, we were pretty successful in getting a lot of support. And now, obviously, there's a big change now, and so it's, it's, it's disheartening how impactful a change can be for these kinds of programs that really help a broad number of people that are, for, for me, in my opinion, they're part of the, the safety net. We've got to be the safety net for them. So what are some plans of maybe thinking forward where we could make up the differences? What, what activities are you looking at, if any?
Yeah, we share your, we share your concerns about potential impacts on our federal dollars, whether it's our Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funds, which fund most of our public workforce program, our job centers, as well as some funds, TANF funds that support programming in partnership with Public Social Services. We know that we can look at our current WEOWA allocation and the sunsetting of some of our American Rescue Plan innovations and better use some of our WEOWA to continue some of those. So making sure we are leveraging our rapid response dollars appropriately when we do have economic disruptions. We're going through a Youth at Work redesign now because we think that we can make those dollars go further. We have about 30% of our WEOWA budget is allocated to training by statute, right? And so thinking about how we incorporate those dollars into high road training partnership models, which we know work and get people into good jobs, and we know we have sidewalk vending dollars that are maintained now through fee, but we are going to have to get creative here locally. That's why we have included in our budget ask a staff line to support us with philanthropic and grant writing opportunities. We know that we're going to have to build relationships at the local, state, federal, and private sector end to make sure we fill the gaps, and so we need some support in staffing to be able to, to do that. We also know that there are opportunities where investments are still coming in, including some of the infrastructure grants that have been received, what we can work together with Infrastructure L.A. and make sure we amplify community investment there through job training and supplier diversity programs, and certainly setting high commitments with L.A. 28 and many of the sports entertainment events coming to the region. So we know we're going to have to get creative, we're going to have to implement programs that work, and we look forward to working with your board on that.
And I'm very concerned about what might occur back in Washington with respect to the Department of Labor and these programs, and a redesign of how formulas are going to be reimagined and possibly cut dramatically. So I hope that you're going to be spending time back in DC, talking and educating folks back there, as well as our own delegation, about the kinds of things that you're looking at and what we have been able to do already. I think that's going to be really critical, and making sure that industry is a big part of this, that whatever partnerships, it's always about getting them engaged to be kind of your, in Spanish, we say like comadre or compadre.
Yeah.
You know, someone who kind of takes you and you're, you're, you're working really close together, whatever industries that those are. I think is, is putting that best foot, face forward is going to be really critical as we, we move forward. So I look forward to hearing more about that and how we can help.
Absolutely. We absolutely will continue to advocate for those funds here. We share the concern, which is why the NCC for Youth at Work is so critical to maintain. We also are working very closely with industry, so actively investing in industry clusters in bioscience and sports entertainment and aerospace and beyond, because good workforce development always has industry at the table as well as workers. And so that's part and parcel of the way we do business, and it's going to be more important to make sure that we're all collectively investing at this time.
And I do want to thank the CEO for her past commitments on helping these programs really develop, and especially with the Youth at Work. We've, we've come so far with that program. I mean, before, we used to kind of tail what the City of L.A. did, and then we leapfrogged. So I hope that we can stay in that position, but I wanted, I do want to thank the CEO for that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the budget presentation, Kelly. Just a couple things for me. I, I did notice that you're asking for the 12 million for the Youth at Work program. Such a great program. Glad it's one of your top priorities. It enrolls up to 10,000 young adults in job readiness training, paid work experience, and helps actually place them in jobs. So, and I'm glad to see that it is making adjustments for the new minimum wage, which is effective July 1st of this year. All I'm going to say is, Fija, I really support funding this program. I think it is critical to all of our districts and really such an economic development multiplier, just that program alone. So thanks for that. The other two things I was going to ask about is, I, you know, I didn't really see it necessarily, but your Good Job Fairs. Saw that in action, hope to see that again, particularly as it relates to Phillips 66, but saw it with Farmer John. Was so impressed with how you just really got that standing up quickly and liked the messaging of Good Job Fairs, not just a job fair. And that was so successful, and we ended up, of course, you know, finding better jobs for about 200 of those employees that got let go at Farmer John. And we, we, we've called on you to do something similar for the workers who will be displaced by the closing of the Phillips 66 refinery.
Yep.
Does Budget still support those?
Yes, yes. Thank you for raising that. That is a, a critical priority for us. So we did, just for, for full awareness, coming out of COVID, we did have about 13 million allocated for rapid reemployment programming. So that is sunsetting, but we, as part of our public workforce system, we have about a $1.6 million allocation as part of our job centers for rapid response and layoff aversion. So we'll continue to activate those in moments like this. And we also are partnered with the state to bring in additional assistance dollars that are also Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Ask from the Department of Labor and EDD. But we're already starting to bring some of those in for Phillips 66. South Bay WIB and the City of L.A. are our leads. We're partnered together because it's a regional layoff of 900 individuals by the end of December. I think they've already brought in a quarter of a million for planning, and we're bringing more in for training to work with the steelworkers and others. And we're having some initial events next week with some of the steelworkers members to start talking to them about next steps, of course, including DHR and ISD as well for pathways to good county jobs.
Right. Thank you so much. And, you know, the things about, you know, you can't really prepare for some of these factory industry shutdowns. They happen sometimes without any warning, and so calling it the rapid response, you know, is so critical. And just when you think we've kind of got a handle on, you know, the economy and we think we're okay, boom, one of these major industries without notice shuts down, and there we have all these workers who really need a place to, to land. So thank you for that. And the last thing I just want to say, I saw you requested 412,000 for significant funds for revenue generating infrastructure laws and mega events like the L.A. 2028. What exactly role do you think DEO will play in a lot of these projects and, for instance, in the Olympics?
For sure. So right now, we're working with the CEO and HRNA on an economic impact study related to the Games, and so trying to understand what the economic potential could be and how we can make recommendations for, for commitments for our, our region. We are committed to, to supporting economic empowerment for the Games as well as FIFA World Cup, Super Bowl, the Games, and, you know, just generally being a sports entertainment capital. We are working right now on reciprocity in our certifications with L.A. City. We've got an agreement on that, and we're going to be bringing something to the board to codify that, so that if you're a small business coming to DEO to get certified and accessing our $6 to $8 billion in procurement power, you also have access to L.A. City's procurement power without all the duplicative administrative burden. So we're excited to bring that to this board. We're going to be bolstering our certification programming because there's going to be small business utilization goals. We sit on the small business, the procurement, Community Business and Procurement Committee for L.A. 28 to try to make sure that we, small businesses have a place in the, the $9 billion plus in spend coming out of L.A. 28. We're going to support youth and job training programs, so for the volunteer programs as well as local hire in the Games. There's opportunities for commercial corridor revitalization, activations for the, the, the Fun Zones, I forget what they're called.
Fan, fan zones.
Business attraction and tourism, and certainly working with the CEO on coordination among cities and countries. There's going, people are going to start coming now, and we want to make sure that investments that are being made from locally and abroad stay here for business workers.
Great. You know, thank you for that, because I think we're all really super focused on the economic development piece for the rest of the cities outside of L.A. and then Incorporated County. We've all been really focused on, on that. So really appreciate that you're already thinking about that and are going to play a big role in that. That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions for me, one on the Business Interruption Fund, sidewalk vending, and the Office of Resiliency. I'm, you know, very interested in, in the establishment of a countywide business interruption fund. I, and I think some other board members have put our own district funds into, into helping to support our small businesses that have experienced interruptions. So how would you propose that the Business Interruption Fund can be structured, and how can we ensure that the funds are allocated equitably across the entire county?
Yes. So in our short time as a department, as I mentioned, we've set up 10-plus grant and business interruption funds so far, and have appreciated the, the partnership and leadership of this board in doing so. Like, you've seen the disruptions that are of a variety of sorts and sprung to action, and, and we're excited to continue to help in that way. And I know that we share some of the frustrations in the timing to get those up and running because of bringing on a third-party administrator, the times to procure and contract and get them set up often doesn't meet the timetables of an emergency.
Right.
And so we're very cognizant of that and take that feedback seriously, which is why we are proposing a, a more permanent business interruption fund, so that we can bring on a third-party administrator in advance, who we can work to develop sort of our sort of customer-facing and webpages and such, build applications, support the development of eligibility and prioritization methodology when an emergency happens, so we can spring to that step in the process. They can manage fund distribution, training and outreach of our TA providers. So that, we really want to make sure that we are not stuck on the, the procurement and contracting piece in an emergency, but concentrating on audience and need with you all. So our, our thought right now is to allocate 700,000 per district with a 30% holdback for emergencies, so that we can allocate it depending on what comes our way. We know that private philanthropy may be interested in matching a more permanent BIF in crisis. in crisis, but we do, we do need to talk more with you all about what that could look like, because we want to make sure that folks that, to your point, who've been historically disinvested, might have the hardest time bouncing back, do get prioritized. But a lot of that will be in the eligibility and prioritization criteria. But we want to make sure that there's dollars available to all districts and then dollars that are available when a real crisis emerges, and we need to rethink about the scale and magnitude.
So thank you for acknowledging that your eligibility and prioritization criteria will take those structural historic issues into consideration. That's helpful to know. Your, the Office of Small Business, and we've already heard folks already reference sidewalk vending, I think we all hear a lot about that from our constituents. So help me understand, what's our goal for the number of permitted vendors by the end of next fiscal year? And how will these two additional positions help us bring vendors into legal compliance? Because I'm clear that it's not just you, Department of Public Health, but in terms of what you have, your area of responsibility, what's the number, you think?
The number that we've set, and we're not close to it yet, is 1,500 vendors per year coming into compliance with a sidewalk vending registration certificate. We're not anywhere clear that, close to that right now, as we just discussed with Supervisor Barker.
And so will these two additional vendors help you, I mean, employees help you get there? Or do, if 1,500 is the goal?
Yeah.
Does that require more positions?
Two staff, yeah. Certainly, I think more positions would help us get further. As you're hearing, we have four now, two is six. It's a very small number. We do leverage contracts with trusted community-based organizations to help us scale and reach, obviously, in language and in communities where they're, they have relationships and so we know that that's necessary. That's necessary for all of DEO programs. You heard, we have 206 budgeted staff lines. We implement through partners, and we're going to continue to have to. Bless you. In a region that has 10 million residents. We do think that it will help us both in managing the incoming issues, complaints, notifications of hotspots, helping structure outreach and workshops, bless you, to help inform folks, and also managing resources that can help folks come into compliance as well. Like we mentioned, some of the reasons folks can't come into compliance are burdens with subsidies for permits or inability to get a code-compliant cart. These are very expensive for folks to get on their own. The 400 carts that we hope to get out between county dollars and city dollars are going to require folks to be permitted. And so we're hoping that that will be sort of a large wave of registration by the end of the fiscal year. But I would, I hear you loud and clear, and I agree that it's going to take partnership with our fellow agencies, contracted partnerships, beyond just what the Office of Small Business is going to be able to do, you know, just.
And, you know, at some point, maybe, you know, sometimes we set a stretch goal, and then we are clear that we can't meet it, and so we need to have honest, hard conversations with ourselves. If 1,500 isn't the number, we need to know that. So that's not the goal we keep missing, just because structurally, we haven't put it in place to get there, in all honesty.
And we'll, exactly. I mean, we're still early days, obviously, in the program. It didn't launch until this fall. That said, honest conversations with ourselves are important and about, you know, we have American Rescue Plan, Dollars Plan Z right now that are allowing us to offer no-cost fee for folks to register, which is important, I think, the first time around to make sure that comes in, people come to the, from the informal economy to the formal economy for the first time. That said, reaching that scale will be required to maintain staffing for a fee structure down the line. And so, you know, we look forward to being, you know, to Supervisor Barker and your point Supervisor Mitchell, coming back to you, you know, in real time and letting you know how this is going, taking your support and level set.
Appreciate that. Final question, Madam Chair. I believe strongly in the work of the Office of Resiliency, but if you could talk to us about how it's uniquely needed, especially now, given the economic hardships to rebuild and support small businesses, particularly from my perspective in an equitably comprehensive and culturally competent way. So can you talk about that, about the role this office can play in that context?
Yes. We sure wish we had an Office of Resiliency right now. I can tell you that.
I agree.
So coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, when DEO was being created, we were part of a cross-sector group that still exists today called Together for L.A. It's multiple jurisdictions, our community-based organizations, experts in sustainability and resiliency, who came together to clarify information, technical assistance and resources for the small business and nonprofit community during COVID. It was sort of like an informal grouping that was supported by some philanthropic dollars. It's been very clear over the years that we need a more formal structure to organize, one, sort of both a prevention and a promotion perspective for economic resiliency. How are we building the economic resiliency of our small businesses and our entrepreneurs and our workers, especially those that don't have access to a lot of resources? To your point, making sure that those who have been historically disinvested are prioritized, and helping them be ready for economic disruption. So making sure we're extending the Economic Mobility Initiative, education and training and technical assistance and capital now, and also being where they are. So the way we're thinking about this is, you know, having staff that have a dedicated strategy in each of the districts, a presence ourselves, but also through contracted partners who have street-level engagement, that are able to engage and make sure folks know about the resources of DEO and the county, and our partnerships like Together for L.A. So we build that resiliency. So, you know, we often talk about how like $400 or $500 can be the make or break for someone to enter into homelessness. Small business community has similar thresholds, especially for those historically disinvested communities. And so making sure, we mentioned the 30-plus motions for outreach and engagement, whether it's policy or a program, like, how do we actually start to formalize our infrastructure to deliver on those? And then in moments like this, with the fires and the windstorms, how do we have the surge capacity both for emergency staffing between DEO and our contractors, making sure that we are standing up programs like the Business Interruption Fund and operating it efficiently, and generating emergency funds for the region for us to weather a longer-term recovery? And so many economic development departments in other regions have organizations like this. We also think calling it an Office of Resiliency may help unlock economic development dollars that traditionally haven't gone to departments like ours around, you know, previously just sort of climate resiliency, but now towards economic resiliency. So that's our, that's our goal, and we think it's critical. Yeah.
Thank you. Supervisor Horvath?
Thank you. I have one follow-up question on a couple of questions that Supervisor Solis and Mitchell touched on. So with a significant portion of your revenue coming from the federal government and that funding being in question, let's say, and knowing this board is committed to equity, how are you going to navigate that challenge while developing our workforce and economic opportunity?
Yep. It is, it's a serious question, and I appreciate you bringing it up and the other supervisors. We are certainly worried about that. I think one of the things that we talk about a lot is talking to folks about what economic development really means, how jobs and small business development, as well as engaging our major industries, is good business no matter what, and sort of like showing folks how economic vibrancy comes from investment in these kinds of programs. So we know that we're going to have to be clear in the impacts of the programs that we have in, you know, supporting folks in economic security and mobility over time, right? That they, that folks are, that we are sort of like working ourselves out of a job by investing in these programs. We also know we need to get creative with the funds that we have and that we need to partner with industry and see where we can leverage non-traditional funds for our system. And so that's why, you know, we're so focused on supporting our industry cluster strategies and thinking about how we braid in different kinds of funding for our programs so that folks can see a qualified talent pipeline doesn't just need to be funded by Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act dollars, but employer investments too, support the collective, the bottom line of that business, but the collective good of the economy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, and thank you for answering all those questions, and thank you for everything you do. When Supervisor Solis was asking you when you started, it seems like it was a long time ago. I don't know how you feel, but doesn't it, it time flies?
Yeah, I think, yeah, time is a construct.
Yeah, I know. Well, yeah. That's it. All right. So thank you, and thank you to your team.
Thank you very much. We very much appreciate your leadership.
Thank you. We're now going to hear from County Council. Dawn Harrison, County Council and staff are going to make a presentation. You're switching seats. It's going to be weird.
I can still sit outside?
Yeah.
Dawn Harrison, County Council. With me, I have Scott Kuhn, the Division Chief of my Affirmative Litigation and Consumer Protection Division, David Ruwan, my Office's Administrative Deputy, and Walid Malat, my Office's Finance Manager. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing me the opportunity to present my budget, my Office's budget request, and at the same time, educate the public a little bit about what the Office of County Council does. Pursuant to the Government Code, as the County Council, I am the Chief Civil Law Attorney for the county. My office provides legal opinions and advice to the Board of Supervisors, all county officials, all 38 departments, commissions, as well as agencies and districts. My office defends and prosecutes all civil actions and proceedings in which the county or any of its officers is concerned or is a party in an official capacity. My office prepares all ordinances, resolutions and proclamations. We review contracts, we prepare impartial analysis for the ballot measures, we represent the public administrator in probate proceedings, we represent the public guardian in conservatorship proceedings, and we represent the Department of Children and Family Services in dependency cases. In addition to our own County Council budget, my office plays an integral role in the county-wide fiscal responsibility, including county-wide judgments and damages, county-wide contingent liability, the county's litigation cost report, and the county's Appendix A legal disclosures for our bond ratings. Lastly, my office provides constituent services through our Office's County Hearing Officer, serving as neutral hearing officers in administering, administrative appeals, and, under the 17200 UCL powers that I have, represent the people of the state of California through our Affirmative Litigation and Consumer Protection Division, which leads us right into our fiscal year 2025-26 budget requests. As you can see from Slide 1, my office is requesting three attorney positions for our Affirmative Litigation and Consumer Protection, or ALCP, division. ALCP works on numerous issues that address many of the Board's nine board-directed priorities, including, we've noted here just one, but under environmental justice and climate health, the ALCP's work has included EXIDE, PFAS, Dominguez Channel Public Nuisance Odor Lawsuit, the Santa Susana Field Lab Cleanup, PCBs, and Aliso Canyon Gas Leak. Immigration can be seen through the ALCP's work on consumer protection cases to stop scams against consumers, including immigrants. Sustainability can be seen through the ALCP's work in the plastic bottle pollution lawsuit recently filed against Coke and Pepsi. Poverty alleviation can be seen through the ALCP's work on consumer protection, wage theft and labor trafficking. Homelessness can be seen through ALCP's work for rent stabilization, through the rent stabilization ordinance, and price gouging related to the 2025 wildfires. And anti-racism, diversity and inclusion can be seen through the ALCP's work on appraisal discrimination and the recent J&amp;J Talk lawsuit over products that targeted women of color. So as you can see, this is a small but mighty division that, like the DCBA who it partners with, has an ever-growing scope of responsibility. And these three attorneys, three attorney positions, will be used to, among other things, increase our capacity to do consumer protection and code enforcement work to protect consumers, workers and tenants. During the last year, ALCP worked on over 20 lawsuits and 35 investigations on a variety of consumer protection, code enforcement, tenant and worker protection and environmental justice matters, and recovered nearly $94 million, including abatement funds, civil penalties and restitution for consumers. Unfortunately, there are so many more unfair business practices, environmental justice issues, tenant protection violations and consumer complaints to be investigated and to be filed. If I could have Slide 2, please. As you can see on this slide, are budget challenges and pressures. I won't go through each of them, but as you can see, very much like other departments, increased workload, hiring challenges and recent wildfires are similar budget constraints, as noted on the slide. But I will highlight that these three additional position, attorney positions, as Ms. Davenport indicated from many of the budget requests that you are seeing today, this need existed and this request was submitted before the 2025 wildfires. ALCP is currently responding to the impacts of these wildfires in various ways, including investigating price gouging in the rental market, sending cease and desist letters to landlords and preparing to file lawsuits. And we anticipate additional price gouging investigations and litigation related to debris cleanup, rebuilding efforts, including addressing worker, public health and environmental impacts. So I will conclude before turning to questions that these ALCP, well, two things. Since ALCP's inception in 2018, ALCP has won judgments and settlements totaling over $800 million. So I'll conclude with saying that investing in three attorney positions is money well-spent for the recovery that the county receives. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's the quietest you've ever been, right there. Thank you. Not you, Dawn. Yeah. Supervisor Solis?
No, I don't, I don't really have any questions. I'm very excited for the presentation, but I know that we have a lot of pending things that are overshadowing so much of the work that you all do. And I know that it's a very competitive time out there, even attracting our own attorneys and kind of building our own field team, and that's something that we've talked about before, and I hope that that continues to be a priority, to create that pool of people that will be employees here and under this department. I also want to thank Scott Kuhn, I mean, just for his incredible work. I think you were here when we started this affirmative litigation, and it has paid off. I can't imagine, 800 million? Wow. I had no idea. And so that tells me there's more out there. Because if we just, we have a small pool of people working on this, if we had more, just think what we could bring in. They can pay for so much more. But I want to thank you personally, because I know for us, maybe people don't quite understand this, but EXIDE has been ongoing for 30 years. But the county, for the first time in the last decade or whatever, really took a more positive posture in going after and working with the state and really creating a synergy that never existed before. And I think that caused other people to look at the county of Los Angeles to see if L.A. County could get something done, which really wasn't our preferred mode of operation, that these things are worthwhile. And for what it's worth, I know my constituents were very pleased with the kind of work that you all did, but also getting our other departments engaged. Department of Public Health, I want to give them a shout out because they actually had boots on the ground. 1,200 employees who volunteered to go out on Saturday and talk to our people in East Los Angeles and the Southeast areas that I used to represent, Supervisor Han, at that time. But we've, it's just been an incredible effort and to get the state involved and to give us monies too, because they heard our plea and where to clean up and how to clean up. That was never the posture of DTSC. And we're still, I think, making inroads with them, because we also have Ecobat, which used to be called Quemetco, which is also a battery recycling plant that's in my district where my father used to work. So I know quite a bit about what goes on there, and I hope that we can continue to be overseers in protecting the residents and employees as well as folks that are impacted out there. The wage an hour, that's tremendous, just being, just to be able to signal to bad actors that we're going to go after you. If we see that there's wage theft and all of that, that's really critical. And then fraud, obviously, and going after those, I want to say, big corporations too, the plastics and all the other. The plastics and all the other things that you've been engaged in, whether it's oil refineries or whatever, it all matters. So, I just want to applaud the work. We got much more to do. But I want to be on a happy note. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, thank you, Dawn, to you and your incredible team. I think we have, like, the greatest team of lawyers anywhere. And I would put you up against anyone, anywhere, which is kind of my question. And I'm sort of asking this for, which I think the public would probably want to know the answer to. It's our use of outside counsel. And I see in this budget request, you're only asking for three new positions. You know, for me, it's like, the way we train our County Counsel and our lawyers, I think, is superb. And would it be better, you know, to have a bigger team here or this reliance on outside counsel? So, maybe just in a way that the public could understand, why is it that sometimes we depend on outside counsel? What do we, what is it, how does that serve us and the taxpayers better than our own, again, who I think are the best anywhere, team of lawyers?
Thank you, Supervisor. And I hope the CEO took note of that, that we'd need more lawyers. Thank you for the question. Yeah, capacity. We have to rely on outside counsel mainly for the defensive side. Not so much on our affirmative, though we do use outside counsel. And Scott can get into explaining how we choose to use outside counsel versus keeping it in-house for our affirmative work. But in terms of just generally speaking, I don't have the number of lawyers that we would need to handle all of the cases and litigation that come to the county, quite frankly. But we are actively trying to, you know, recruit, meet our hiring challenges and build, because we do have an excellent, I'll just tout, our internship program. We have people, every year, we have upwards of 25 to 30 attorneys from across the nation who come to County Counsel to intern. So, we do actively try to recruit, but we don't have the capacity.
I mean, again, at some point, I know you've done it, a cost analysis, because I'm not going to ask you what we spend annually on outside counsel. But I, I know it's a big-ticket item. And again, like I said, I know you've done the cost analysis, but just wondering, going forward, would we be better off trying to hire more county lawyers and depending less on? Although, there's probably, would you say there's certain big, big cases that outside firms, maybe that's more of their expertise? Would you also say that?
Yes, Supervisor. So, for one, we are trying to build our capacity to do more in-house litigation. That will take increasing, just even legal support staff. We don't even have the legal support staff to bring in the amount of litigation that the county has. But yes, there are certain cases that would be a matter of complexity, specialty, where there are just certain firms, that's their niche, that's what they do, and we need that expertise. So, we do try to build that as well. But there will be those instances where we will have to use outside counsel.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you for highlighting that. If all of your vacancies were filled, would you have enough capacity to do the work that some of the outside counsel is hiring? That we're hiring to do?
So, specifically as to the three attorneys that we're requesting for ALCP. So, one, we don't have any vacancies in ALCP. So, for the affirmative work, we don't have any vacancies. But even with these three, as I noted, there's so much more work to be done. So, even with those three, which is a start, that wouldn't, we wouldn't even have the capacity to do all of the affirmative work that there is out there to do. In terms of just the office generally, I think we maybe have 23 attorney vacancies. And if those were filled, no, because we have countless, countless amounts of defensive litigation in this county. And so, even if all of my positions were filled, we would not be able to handle all of the cases without using outside counsel.
Okay. And you noted stiff competition for attorneys as a challenge. What strategies are you considering to increase hiring? And does this budget account for that?
I, well, to answer the question, what are we doing? Outreach, outreach, outreach. That is what we are doing. We are trying to, we just completed our strategic plan. We're working on a pipeline. Again, we already have our internship program, but I am trying to expand that even further, not just for our attorneys, but our legal staff, paralegals, that's a specialty as well, our admin staff. We are reaching out and building relationships and partnering with community colleges, high schools, and I'm hoping to even move to middle school and elementary schools so that people can start to see folks like them in these type of roles and create a pipeline to our office. So, we are actively engaging through my chief diversity officer, as well as my internship director and my County Counsel Academy lead. The three of them are really kind of taking the bull by the horns and really trying to get our name out there. Anyone who graduates from law school knows if they want to do criminal law, they know the PD, the DA, AG, and city attorney. Many people don't know County Counsel. And my office is one of the largest civil municipal law offices in the country. We practice every area of law there is to practice, except criminal and family law. So, we are a very attractive office. People just need to know who we are. And so, outreach is what we're doing to solve that problem.
Okay. Well, if we can help in any way, I'm definitely supportive of the request that you've made. I know that my office has, in fact, borrowed from your team.
You all do.
Your expertise is much appreciated, and you cultivate a great team there. So, thank you for this presentation.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Seeing no other questions, thank you all very much. Nice meeting you. I don't think we've met before, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to hear from public defender. Thank you, Dawn. All right. The floor is yours.
All right, good. Well, then, I'll try that one more time. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, honorable supervisors, and, of course, all the members of the public who've decided to tune in today to hear this. I'm proud to be present before your board, a board that prioritizes care over cages and stands for the presumption of innocence and fights for equity across the criminal legal system. Your board has worked tirelessly on the ground to support our communities impacted by the fires. That includes public defender clients and staff that did not go unnoticed by members of the public defender's office. I'm joined today by Chief Deputy Justine Essick, Chief of Staff John Matthews, and Administrative Deputy Director John Troches. The best defense your investment can buy. That's what everyone accused with a crime wants. It's what they deserve. That's why so many of your constituents might think they have to go into debt to hire a lawyer so their son doesn't get railroaded by the criminal legal system or their daughter, who struggles with mental health, can get the help she, health issues, can get the help she needs and not end up in a cage. For people without the money to hire a lawyer, it is constitutionally mandated that we make certain they get the best defense. Your constituents should know and be confident that your investment, the county's investment, goes to pay for an incredible, zealous, and brilliant public defense team that provide top-notch legal representation. That's why I'm honored to lead the first and the finest public defender team in the country who are dedicated every day to the zealous representation of the most vulnerable of your constituents. I'm now going to go over my highest priorities based on unmet needs. First, 10 felony deputy public defender four trial lawyers to handle the most complex of cases. The changing landscape in the criminal legal system through policy and filing practices comes with an increased cost across the board. I'm specifically requesting DPD fours to offset increases in complex cases, including capital cases and homicides. The ABA guidelines require that most, the most experienced attorneys handle the most complex of cases. And based on my own experience as a capital defense litigator, I know this to be true. Next, we are requesting 18 psychiatric social workers, including two supervisors. Under mandated legal requirements, social workers are essential to the public defense team. They provide mental health support, assessment, and treatment plans for our clients, and they foster a rehabilitative model of care within the agency and our practice. The next request is legal support, 16 paralegals. Paralegals are essential to all law firms. 16 paralegal positions will provide critical support for our attorneys and improve attorney-to-legal support staff ratios that are expected in today's public defense market. Paralegals are critical to helping a lawyer prepare for trial and, in times, even sit with the lawyer to help pick things like a jury. They save the county money. Information technology positions. From my very first day as a public defender, advancing our technology has been a priority. The need for visibility into the criminal legal system, as well as data retention, has never been greater than it is today. But beyond visibility, we need to answer questions to you, your constituents, and the public about what the data means, how successful programs are, and this requires the positions we're asking for in IT. One accounting technician, too. This budget request recognizes that core services are necessary to fiscal resiliency. And best of all, from an NCC perspective, the position is expected to be largely offset by and refundable from AB 109 revenue, which carves out space for administrative costs. Now, I'd like to discuss some of our budget challenges. With few exceptions, the public defender's budget is funded by NCC, net county costs, almost exclusively. We have, however, been very aggressive in looking for alternative funding and resourcing for the office. When I started as public defender, we were 95% dependent on NCC. Today, we are 86%. That is a significant change for the department. We're all also looking for other forms of funding that come to the county more regularly. For example, Prop 172 allows the county to distribute funding to justice partners. In Los Angeles, that funding goes to the sheriff and the district attorney's office. But in other counties, that funding is shared by the public defender's office as well. There's a shift in the criminal justice landscape. This includes legislation and local policies which, that will have profound impact on our ability to service, deliver services to your constituents. We anticipate a significant impact to our criminal legal system and all stakeholders involved in light of our new district attorney's policies and changes in legislation. The district attorney is reinstating capital litigation. The death penalty is back in Los Angeles. He will be filing charges that were previously declined and applying sentencing enhancements, which all increase criminal liability for the accused. Special circumstances cases and reclassification of certain offenses as felonies place a higher burden on public defender teams. Whether one sees Prop 36 as a setback or not, there is not a question that it comes at a substantial cost to our county and thus, public defender operations. Because now, people facing certain drug and theft charges will be facing felonies, you will see a rise in felony filings, as well as a rise of the number of people going into county jail. We know, in Los Angeles, that means more black and brown neighbors going into jail. I want to share a statistic. We have seen our jail population drop from about 17,000 prior to COVID to approximately 12,000 today, a little bit more. Yet, even though our black brothers and sisters and neighbors are 8% of Los Angeles County's population, they remain 30% of the jail population. This is an unacceptable statistic and something that we should be working every day to change, and public defender's work every day to change. Increase in homicide filings has increased the volume of the most complex cases requiring the experienced attorneys to handle them. Public defender, the public defender's office has seen a rise in homicide filings. We saw a rise in 2022 of 58% and in 2023 of 72% as compared to our normal median. These cases are among the most complex. Further, when you take these cases, these homicides, and you add capital enhancements, they require, under the law, a deputy public defender four, which, again, puts additional pressures on our teams. Low legal support staff and attorney ratios creates added workloads for attorneys. A low legal support staff-to-attorney ratio reduces attorney time available for direct client engagement, ultimately impacting attorney workloads and the quality and effectiveness of legal representation. Loss of state funding, which will require elimination or downsizing of critical services. For example, the Public Defender Pilot Project, which all of you championed to ensure we would get that funding here in Los Angeles, runs out in 2025-26. These funds supported post-conviction relief services, helping thousands of persons sentenced to prison rejoin our community as productive members and neighbors. The program has led to family reunification, community restoration, and financial savings for county taxpayers. Post-pandemic labor market, as we all know, that market has been incredibly challenging for everybody. Even with these challenges, we at the Los Angeles County Public Defender's Office have closed our vacancy gap in the last two years through robust recruiting and hiring teams. We have expanded talent pipelines and expedited the hiring process utilizing the homeless emergency authorized granted by your board. We have worked hard over the last few years to ensure that we do not have many long-term vacancies. The department currently has less than 6% true vacancies. Unique volume of prosecutions. Los Angeles is unique to many other counties, not only because of its size and its demographics, because of it, but also, as to the public defender's office, because of the 15 independent prosecuting agencies. In most counties, the prosecution agency is solely the public, excuse me, the district attorney or one, perhaps, city attorney. Here in Los Angeles, we must respond to the filings and prosecutions of 15, as I've said, independent city attorneys that file charges. The Sixth Amendment to the United States Constitution ensures that in all criminal prosecution, the accused shall have the right to a speedy and public trial and have the assistance of counsel for their defense. The Supreme Court of the United States and the state constitution mandate that Los Angeles County provide these services. I am proud to represent my team of constitutional guardians who are the best defense your investment can buy for our constituents. I want to thank you for your time and if you have any questions for me.
Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions. Over the past several budget cycles, your department has been really consistent in your request for more experienced attorneys, particularly to handle serious, complex cases. And I get it, particularly given the current landscape that you painted for us. So, for the sake of the public and all our collective understanding, could you share how the positions listed in your Tier 1 needs, which are felony trial attorneys, DPD fours, psychiatric social workers, and paralegals, are important and interconnected for you to be effective as counsel?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question, Supervisor. First of all, with the filing of capital cases here in Los Angeles, deputy public defender fours are the only attorneys who can represent those individuals. So, when those cases are filed, we have to put a deputy public defender four on them. The increase in homicide filings that I spoke about have placed already a pressure on the existing public defender fours, as well as some public defender threes who have to handle the balance of the homicides. So, as those cases and new cases become capital, that pressure is going to increase on the existing staff when we need to be able to move people into those positions to ensure that they're getting the proper compensation for this more challenging work. Now, if you'd asked me that question 15 or 20 years ago, I would have said, you don't need a social worker. You just need a lawyer, an investigator, go pound the pavement and figure out what happened and come back to try the cases. But today's market is completely different. Today, the law requires that every person brought into the system be assessed for mental health issues, substance use disorder, abuse in the family. And if any of those matters are detected, we have to do an entire research of them, who they are, get information, and provide a report to the court so that we can convince the court that they need treatment rather than a cage.
And that's only in the case of felonies?
That's actually in every case, Supervisor. So, the social workers are something that's needed across the department at every level. And so, that's a change in the criminal legal process and for public defenders that has happened and developed over the last several years as more and more statutes come to play requiring this type of work, which lawyers aren't any good at. Quite frankly, there's things I do well, but being a social worker and assessing people's mental health is not one of them. Another factor is the paralegals. Another factor is the paralegals. When you have more complex cases, you need a partner in that case to help you analyze it and prepare it. Every law firm understands that. Every law firm has paralegals. We have them here in Los Angeles and use them effectively, but as these cases grow and as we get more of them, we need more paralegals to help in that work. In addition, with what I was talking about with the social workers, the paralegals can gather the information. So they go out and gather the documents, they assess them, they provide them to the lawyer. All of this allows a lawyer to do what the lawyer does best, lawyer, as opposed to try to substitute their knowledge and get into these different areas.
So it really is a collaborative team approach.
Hundred percent.
In keeping with that, and particularly with your reference to social workers, I'll just share with you what I shared with the DA earlier, because it's fresh in my mind. I just visited the homeless court in Redondo this week. And one thing I did learn that I hope that you will pay some attention to, because what makes it so unique and effective is the continuity of personnel. It's the same judge for the last three years, the DA is the same person, but it's my understanding that the public defenders do rotate. For something you could take a look at, it's one day a month. I think the continuity of representation on the PD side would be helpful, based on what I experienced in talking to participants as they refer to them as opposed to defendants, and all of the support services that were there to wrap around. So if it's something you could consider, I hope that you would.
We will, Supervisor, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ricardo, for your presentation. And I just wanted to also lean in and thank you for the work that your lawyers do every single day. It is a special person with a special calling, in my opinion, that goes into the public defender's world. It is a very different world, and it takes real compassion and real dedication. And I see it every single day. I've been seeing it in our juvenile facilities, and I think the young people in that facility really appreciate their public defenders who are there with them every step of the way. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
You know, in last year's budget request, you requested a lot of these same positions, especially more felony trial attorneys, paralegals, psychiatric social workers, but you did not receive the positions you asked for. In fact, you received zero felony trial attorneys and psychiatric social workers. So last September, this board passed a motion that directed our CEO to come up with a plan to fund the felony trial attorney and social worker positions that the public defender's office requested. And our motion emphasized the new reality we're facing after a shift in the criminal justice landscape that has focused more on punishment than it is on rehabilitation. And this shift means we can expect to see more people charged for crimes that would not have been filed in the past and more people incarcerated in both our local jails and prison. We sort of heard a little of that from the DA earlier, right? We're trying to depopulate Men's Central Jail and look at closing it and having a mental health treatment center or whatever, but it sounds a lot like he's more interested in putting some more people in jail. So we've got a dilemma before us. So the CEO responded to our motion by saying that they would reevaluate the public defender's request during the next budget cycle. This was last time. So here we are in this next fiscal year budget cycle. And I see once again that you're requesting these positions as critical unmet needs. And I think it's important, in my opinion, that we give our public defender's office the support and the positions they need based on this changing landscape. So just a few, maybe drill downs, clarifications, again, a lot for the public who's listening. So in response to the motion, the CEO said that one of the reasons they did not allocate additional positions was because your office had vacancies. But you sort of talked a little bit about those vacancies. So it sounds like you fill them or don't have them. And so then what is the status of these public defender four and psychiatric social worker vacancies?
Thank you, Supervisor, for that question.
In plain layman's language.
In plain English, we don't have those vacancies. In plain English, they're promotional positions. So when we have a vacancy in a deputy public defender four, for example, it's at any snapshot, you could see a vacancy, but it's not a long-term vacancy, it's a promotional position. So it depends on whether or not there's an exam or simply the team evaluating who's the best person to place in that. It's not a long-term vacancy for us because it's promotional. The social worker situation is, we knew the money was running out for purposes of the Public Defender Pilot Project, and there are social workers in that project who would basically have no job if we didn't keep those positions open. So those positions are open, knowing that those individuals will come in and will absorb them once that project runs out. If we didn't leave them open, those people would have to be laid off, and we didn't want to do that.
So it sounds like our CEO and you have a little bit of a difference of opinion. So hopefully, you can work that out. And also, I think one of the things that I was looking at, Pia, you also pointed out that the public defender's office has more attorney positions than they did before the pandemic curtailments. But it's my understanding, Ricardo, that you might have more total positions, but many of those are the attorneys who are to handle the lower-level charges. Is that correct?
We do have more lawyers that are handling lower-level cases. We also have attorneys that sit on specifically funded positions that we then have to absorb when that funding goes away.
So you don't have fewer public defender four positions? Or do you have fewer?
We do have fewer public defender four positions than we did five years ago. But I will say that we have worked with the CEO team to make those adjustments.
Good. I really think there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and I would support that. And then just one last thing. Your office is the ones who are providing the legal representation in our care court?
Yes.
And I didn't see anything mentioned in your budget request for that. How's that going? Do you have adequate funding for your care court legal representation?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. Currently, care court is funded through state funding, and so that is not a request we're making from this board or from our resourcing at this point in time. That funding appears to be sufficient to handle the case, the care court's volume. So that is why it is not a request at this time.
Okay, good to know, because I know we were a little anxious in the beginning about because we thought maybe there were some outside nonprofit legal entities that were going to step up, and it was crickets. And your office stepped right up to say, no, we will provide that representation. And we were a little concerned about who was going to pay for that. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Horvath.
We heard from our district attorney this morning and his proposal and his approach, how the budget that he's developed is supporting the approach that he's bringing to his office. So recognizing that he has identified priorities that will likely lead to an increase in demand for your services, especially with regard to things like the sentencing enhancements for gangs, for gun-related crimes, potentially even death penalty cases, how does this budget provide sufficient senior attorneys to address that increase?
You know, we expect an increase, but I don't expect it to be an avalanche on a day when we've seen a slight increase since he's come. We've seen 27 cases that are now capital-eligible when we didn't have that last year, and we've seen a slight rise in what we call Prop 36 cases, about 500 or so that weren't filed before into the office. So we're seeing a slow and incremental change, and we expect that the attorneys we ask for will make up for the first year of those changes, including existing staff, and then reassess, obviously, in the next budget cycle, depending on whether or not we see a large increase in the second half of the budget year.
And the mental health and social worker staff that you're including in your budget, are those services required by state or federal law, or is that something you're choosing to do?
State law requires it. Well, state law requires that every person that comes into the system that becomes our client be assessed for the things I mentioned before, and lawyers can't do that. And because the conversations with the individuals step into the attorney-client privilege, it's impossible really to use outside individuals because of their obligations. So we need people that are part of the public defender team that have that attorney-client privilege and protection to ensure that the most confidential and appropriate information from the client is received, so we know what they need.
So you couldn't use our existing departments?
No, we've used them whenever we can, we do use them, and there are some forms in court where we do use them to assess individuals. But we've had some challenges with the sharing of information inappropriately, which creates a frosty relationship afterwards.
And since this is a state requirement, does the state provide funding?
I wish. Unfortunately, no, the state seems to have a bright line about not giving funding for...
So how does your proposed budget support those positions in an ongoing way?
By providing these individuals, we send them across the county. So we divided the county, I have divided the county for our purposes, into regions. And each region is based on the courthouses, and each region supports a particular, well, usually more than one supervisory district. So based on workload needs, we would send different number of social workers to a particular court that would support those constituents that come to that court. And it just really depends on which courthouse it is and the volume of work they need. An example for your district would be Van Nuys, where we see a high level of mental health cases and the need for... So we do have slated that Van Nuys would get a certain particular number of those social workers to offset the workload.
Yes. Another gift from the state has been the transitioning largely of the juvenile justice system and that framework coming back to the county in recent years. Does your budget provide sufficient funding to meet the demands your office is experiencing for our justice-involved youth, given that change?
We do have resourcing at this time for the juvenile division. Again, these were based on our ongoing and high priorities. There is need for additional support in juvenile. Give me one second. We do have the Juvenile Justice Realignment Grant Block, which provides some resourcing for our juvenile divisions, as well as the Juvenile Justice Care and Prevention Act funding for our Youth Services Division. At this time, we are anticipating getting resources from those two block grants to offset any needs that we have from our juvenile department. We have received that in the past, and we don't believe there's any reason why at this point today, as I'm sitting here, that our youth services would not be receiving some of those resources. But again, these were the priorities based on unmet needs in prior years that I wanted to highlight.
But the funding sources that you've identified, does that fully cover the cost of your department to provide those services to the youth?
I don't have the exact figure with me here today as to what percentage it would provide, and I'd get that back to your office if you'd like me to do so.
But it's probably not the total cost.
But no, it's not 100% cost of the needs that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you for appearing here today. And I just want to say, just have some comments, really. How long have you been with us now, Ricardo?
I'm going into my seventh year.
I'm asking everybody that.
I like to say when I arrived, I was 25 with jet-black hair.
You had jet-black hair.
Now I'm going to be 56, and it's been seven years.
And you didn't have this.
Yeah.
But I wanted to say that you've really taken the office to a different level since you started, and I know it was trying for you. And I hope morale and everything has changed now in the department. Was happy when you were onboarded and you were out there immediately creating the expungement mobile unit. How has that been going?
It's actually one of the jewels on the crown of the public defender's office here in Los Angeles. It's going quite well. We have, as you may know, four vans that travel around the county, providing expulsion services where people are at. We've been able to partner with other community groups across the county so that they have individuals that arrive and know we'll be there, and it's been very, very successful.
And I appreciate that, because you were out there, out in the watershed, Woody and Narrows, where we collectively see hundreds of homeless, and many of them, obviously, were in need of this service. So I'm really grateful to your team.
Thank you.
That they consistently go out whenever we have events for that population. So I want to thank you for that. And I also want to give you kudos, because at one point, I know I met one of your paralegals out in, I think it was, what was it, Salazar Park, East Los Angeles? And they explained to me, and you explained to me what they do. And these were young people that were given an opportunity to do this kind of work and then hopefully lead up to becoming an attorney. So for me, it's more of a good training, a field training for them, obviously, and they spoke the different languages, which is very important. And I just want to say that I think those are very worthwhile positions to have. I am a bit concerned, though, earlier today, it's too bad that we couldn't have you sit next to the new DA, because they're quite different pictures that are being painted. And of course, a lot of us are concerned with respect to the growing number of incarcerated young people, as well as our adults. And I'm more concerned now more than ever about the youth, because now it's a different ballgame for them and just trying to provide more prevention. And I'm wondering, have you, I'm sure you met with the DA, but I mean, is there a constant, do you guys meet regularly? And where do you find any synergy or places where you can collaborate?
We're developing a professional relationship, and while we may look at problems in a different way, we are trying to find ways that we do see things similarly so that we can move things positive in the forward direction for the communities here in Los Angeles. I think one of the places where we do see something similar is that people deserve diversion. The question that we both kind of run and bump heads in is, what does that mean? And how do you provide that? And so I'm hoping I can get them to move a little bit more in my direction, because I think that's the best way to ensure that people don't end up with a criminal record, that the impact of that is not adverse to their life moving forward, and they get to come back into community in a productive way. And we have seen that here in Los Angeles. One of the amazing things about this community is that, for example, the Rapid Diversion Program does do diversion before, oftentimes before charges. It has been incredibly successful. 3,000 people have been assessed in that program. 1,000 have graduated successfully. Families have come back together. Businesses have been opened. It works, and it works well. So I'd like to see that.
I'm certain it would be really critical to invite him to come and see some of the things so he can see it for himself and his staff and understand what it takes and what impact it could have for us in the county overall, just in terms of trying to reduce our costs. Because I mean, it's so costly to incarcerate an adult or a young person and all the services that have to go into that to keep somebody locked up while we can be doing, hopefully, other innovative things that we've been trying to do here at the county. So again, thank you, your staff, and keep doing what you can. I know it's a tough battle. I hope the CEO's sitting right here, so she's hearing us all.
Thank you, Supervisor.
We're crossing our fingers. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, you're just smiling. I thought you wanted to say something. No? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciated.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to go on to the alternate public defender.
The floor is yours.
Hello?
Yep.
Hi, Supervisors. Hello. I think you guys placed us perfectly right after the public defender, so that many of the issues were already hit. But we do have our special needs over at the alternate public defender. Hello, Supervisors. I am Erica Nswarki, the alternate public defender of Los Angeles County. And joining me today is my chief deputy, Jane Yang, and my administrative deputy, Mike Iwanaga. I appreciate the opportunity to present the critical unmet needs of the alternate public defender's office for the 2025-2026 budget year. On this first slide, you will see ministerial changes to our budget, but to the left-hand side, you will see the mission of the alternate public defender, which in essence is defending the liberty, dignity, and rights of every client. For context, the APD was created as a separate and independent office to handle adult, and now juvenile criminal cases when the public defender's office cannot take the case due to a conflict of interest. Being a distinct and separate office is critical to our mission. It allows zealous representation without encumbrance, compromise, or conflict, ensuring that every client receives their full Sixth Amendment right to counsel. Before our creation by the board, these conflict cases were assigned to private attorneys at a much higher cost to the county. With our creation, you ensure high-quality, consistent high-quality defense on conflict cases while saving taxpayer dollars. Our cases involve severe penalties, multiple defendants, and complex legal challenges. Included in such charges that we handle are murders, attempted murder, conspiracy, assault, robberies. We handle the heavy cases. While our attorneys have the expertise and commitment to handle these cases, the steady rise in serious offenses has created significant challenges. rise in serious offenses has created significant challenges. And the complexity of defending cases has intensified due to several developments. As you heard the public defender talk, California has enacted statutes that mandate comprehensive mitigation. These include immigration consequences, PDEA analysis, advising clients on how convictions may impact their immigration status. We have to do veterans diversion analysis, mental health analysis, youthful trauma analysis, racial justice claims under the Racial Justice Act analysis. And all of this to uphold, all of these are mandatory, but it also upholds the board's care-first, jails-last priority. And to fulfill our constitutionally mandated representation and to prevent claims of ineffective assistance of counsel, it is imperative that we balance the work of our attorneys and our obligations to our clients. I am here before you today to highlight a few of my requests that would keep true these principles. The requests are essential to maintaining fairness in our judicial system. My first request is for four attorneys to handle serious and violent caseload increases. Right now, our office is seeing an all-time high of 340 pending murder charges, murder cases, stretching our resources to the limit. Each murder case takes months, sometimes years, to prepare. We have to do extensive investigation, look at expert witnesses, file pre-trial motions, all towards litigation. I want to thank the board and the CEO for your unwavering support throughout the years and helping us maintain a high-level quality of, in our office. Your commitment to our clients has allowed us to strengthen our defense team with the necessary psych, social workers, paralegals, investigators, and attorneys to provide the high-quality representation needed. This work is mentally and emotionally exhausting and our attorneys are overwhelmed. Supervisors, I want to tell you, historically felony attorneys carried two homicide cases along with their other cases. However, now they are carrying three and up to four murder cases. To put this in context, many public defenders throughout the state of California limit two murder cases to their, for their attorneys. Additionally, we have seen an increase in our overall cases, growing from an average of 15 to 17 cases on a constant basis to now handling, our attorneys have to handle 20 to 30 while still handling those murders. That's an increase of 50%. With that being said, we don't just sit back. Our attorneys not only work hard to settle cases, but they take cases to trial. In 2024, we conducted over 200 trials, including 65 homicides. 20% of those cases resulted in not guilty. I bring that to your attention to remind people that just because you are arrested, that does not mean you're guilty and every person deserves their day in court. We expect cases to grow even more with the new policies that you heard from our new DA who ran on a platform to bring back sentence enhancements, file more felony charges, use Proposition 36 to the fullest level, and who also reinstated death penalty. The new DA, immediately upon the new DA coming on, 10 of our cases became death penalty eligible. More enhancements on our cases have made our regular felonies more complicated to defend. And with Prop 36 cases going from what used to be misdemeanors to now felonies, we have to keep a heightened vigilance because the last time there was a war on drugs, that historically disproportionately impacted Black and Brown communities. So that's my first request. My second, I want to highlight my second request, which is the neurocognitive disorder team. To better service clients with neurocognitive disorder, APD seeks support to establish a dedicated team. The NDT unit will enhance opportunities for diversion for those people, for those people who have cognitive disorder such as autism, dementia, traumatic brain injury, ADHD, fetal alcohol syndrome. A dedicated attorney and a psychiatric social worker can work with medical experts, identify alternative sentences, and prevent unjust incarcerations of these vulnerable individuals. Without this specialized unit, individuals who need treatment, not punishment, will fall through the cracks. I also want to highlight the racial justice, that I'm asking for a Racial Justice Act attorney to address racial act violations. RJAs, as you've heard today, has been in effect since 2021 in different stages. The Racial Justice Act allows defendants to challenge cases where racial bias influenced any part of the judicial process, such as in charging decisions, in sentencing, in jury selection, and more. We have been utilizing one attorney to work on these cases, but I will have you know Supervisors that in one year alone, we have seen motions rise from 30 cases to 80. That's a 167% increase in post-conviction. And we also have another 20 RJAs cases in pre-trial. Without a dedicated attorney to review, file, and litigate these motions, we cannot ensure that racial bias, implicit or explicit, does not impact the fairness of our legal system. So we need a dedicated Racial Justice Act attorney who we become our subject matter expert and will train, support, and guide attorneys handling these types of cases in The weight of the rising caseload is being felt by our attorneys and staff, but this is not just about workload, it's about justice. If we do not receive these positions, murder cases will be handled by attorneys that are already at their breaking point, racial bias claims will go unchallenged, neurodivergent individuals will be lost in the system. So to address these challenges, I am requesting funding for these positions. And these are just highlights from my budget requests. Thank you, and I'm ready for questions.
Thank you Supervisor Mitchell and then Supervisor Han.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. I want to follow up on one of the last points you made earlier. We heard in the district attorney's presentation, his top priority is the Race Blind Charging Implementation Program. And he
Yes.
Educated us about bias and implicit bias and how the pilot worked in Yolo County.
Right.
And I'm wondering, based on your experience and the statistics that you just shared, if you have any concerns about whether the Race Blind Charging Implementation Program will positively affect your work, his work, or not?
Supervisor, thank you. That's a really good question. I do have concerns. It's new, but one of the major concerns about what I heard was that he was going to use a program that has AI that, and as you pointed out, that has a tremendous amount of flaws already. But another part of the law that's concerning is that it's really for the district attorney. And so it's an honesty, it's based on honesty on their part. We can only get information through a public request act. So this is a new implementation. They have to abide by it, but there really isn't laid out a way to oversight of it, really. But we'll have to do it via public request act. We start to see, which right now, we are keeping track, for example, on sometimes in that Figaro corridor where we have human trafficking, some charges when it comes to Black and Brown clients are charged as pimping and pandering. And when it comes to our Caucasian clients, it's just a person who's out to have a good time. It's completely different, pimping and pandering, have higher sentencing versus just being someone who's out trying. So I do have concerns because we're already seeing how sometimes charges are
Unequal?
Unequal, yes. So we will have to keep an eye on it because it's new and the only way we can really ask for information is through a public request act.
Well, I hope that you would reach out to him because he seems very eager
Yeah.
to implement the law and felt very confident that his experience and outcome here in LA County would mimic that of Yolo County.
No, Yolo County is too small. It's different. We have 10 million people.
I'm just restating what he shared.
Yes, I see.
And that it was only 5% difference in the blind outcome and when they, I guess, added race, class, and gender back into the fold. And even for Yolo County, as small as it is, 5% difference is really quite shocking given the time I spent in close proximity to Yolo County with my own Black self Supervisor Solis. I'll just leave it that way. All right, moving on. Independent pre-trial and pre-trial services are really important to the constituents that I have the privilege of representing and is a direct strategy to assist in the closure of Men Central Jail. And a large portion of our population, as you well know, is awaiting trial and while doing so, should be provided with the opportunities and options for community-based support. So I was happy to see you requested positions for independent pre-trial services that they're listed in your Tier 1 needs. So could you share more about how these 40 positions will support that kind of work?
What, 40 positions?
Oh, the four, I'm like, 40? You know what? Stop, 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 stop.
Okay.
Stop. I'm on my wrong page.
Okay.
I was so busy throwing shade, I turned to the wrong page. I'll own it. I was throwing shade. Because that was ridiculous. You answered my question. I wanted to know about the racial AI thing that's going to
Okay.
make implicit bias in Deneley County. Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Han, and then I just want to let the board know, we're going to lose Supervisor Han at 3:30 is when you have to leave?
Oh.
Okay. So I just want everyone to be cognizant of that and it's 2:30 right now. So with that Supervisor Han, no pressure.
Thank you. Thank you Erica for your presentation and thank you to the alternate public defender's office and your team. We gave great kudos to the public defender, well, I did anyway, and same to you as it takes
Thank you.
a certain special person to go into the line of work that is our public defender or our alternate public defender's offices. And we thank you and your team for doing
Thank you Supervisor.
such great work. Everybody, you covered a lot in your presentation. We had some questions. I was just going to end with one. One of the challenges that you listed in your presentation was recruiting entry-level and experienced attorneys. So maybe just highlight what your strategies are to try and recruit. And again, I'm sure colleagues would want to say, what could we do to help?
I think we're doing a lot of the same. We, I am proud to say that I started and my team helped me get off the ground. And it's basically, we have law clerks and then they graduate from just law clerks to senior law clerks and if they pass the bar, then they can sit for the one exam and become entry-level attorneys. That's something different. It wasn't done before because of the fact that we have serious and violent cases, but we're growing them, teaching them, and that helped the pipeline. So we saw that people were doing it in other departments and we thought we'd try it and it's working out. So that's how we're helping that.
Thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now we are going to hear from the Director of Justice Care and Opportunities, Judge Songhai Armstead. Welcome.
Thank you so much Supervisors for this opportunity. With me, I have our administrative deputy Eric Lopez with me and both of our senior deputies, both Gina Ikas and Adam Patino. All right. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I've got the message, so we need to try to hurry up. Got it. J-COD is the newest department in LA County. We've been here just over two years. Our goal is basically to support community-based organizations that in turn support community members in keeping them out of the justice system through prevention, pre-trial diversion, and reentry services. For instance, the Incubation Academy has had eight cohorts, has supported over 160 organizations. We launched the Justice Connect Support Center last October, October before last. We've already had over 15,000 encounters with justice-involved individuals. That call center operates seven days a week from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We also have our RI-CMS program, which is our reentry intensive case management program. That program has served over 33,000 individuals since it's launched. And just last year, it was 7,500 individuals that we served. 72% recidivism is one of the themes that's come up several times. We've learned through research that 72% of the folks who do receive services through our case management programs do not reenter the justice system. So that's another proven program that we know that works. We also partner closely with the health departments and our justice partners on our programs. And actually, our public defender mentioned one of our programs, which was the Rapid Diversion Program. He talked about a program that works. So that program is celebrating right now 3,000 diversions and 1,000 graduations. And that's one of our newer programs that's also working as well. We also just signed an MOU with Military and Veterans Affairs to actually provide space for them in our doors location in Antelope Valley. And another one of my personal and our department's personal goals is making as much data available as possible. So we've been building systems and infrastructure within our department to make sure data is available, publicly available. We have some already on our website and we're continuing to build more and more. Our gross operating budget for this fiscal year is 130 million. 55 million of that is funded through net county cost. We are making the request of 17.3 million as an increase, which will provide 112 new positions and additional services for the populations that we serve. Our base budget is mostly unchanged except for the request for a justice system director and that position we need because it came as part of a reorganization of the DA's office and we had to absorb one of their former employees. The rest of it is just updating salaries and benefits according to all that. Okay, try to go a little bit faster. So now looking at the next slide. Okay, I went too far. Can you do it? Thanks. All right. We have three tiers of unmet needs. The overall theme here is that we're trying to make sure that we have sustainable funding to maintain our programs. A lot of our funding was done through one-time funding and so we're trying to maintain that. Let's see. The first unmet need, the number one was for the doors. We have Antelope Valley, we have Los Angeles. We're trying to expand to the Long Beach area. We have temporary funding to set up the program, but ongoing funding is a little bit of a struggle. In 2024, we served 2,700 unique individuals through our door sites. We have identified the first year of funding to start and launch Doors Long Beach virtually, but ongoing is a bit of a challenge. We're also, we've secured the land across the street from Men Central Jail for warm landing place through the, our partners in the courts helped us actually pay for that. So we're thankful for that partnership through state funding. But we do see that there's been, there's a funding gap to be able to complete that construction. But so far, we've already served 1,000, I mean, 3,000 individuals through Warm Landing Place just through the table that we have within Men Central Jail and we're going to have a trailer that will be outside in the spring. There was conversation about what was formerly known as Camp Gonzalez, which was LA County Training Center. I'm happy to report, actually, our first cohort, more than 50% of our graduates actually have all been, made offers with Cal Fire, which is super exciting. And we've been working with DHR and Fire to kind of develop a clear pathway for those folks to get employment within the county. I think based on everything that's happened in January, making sure that there's an opportunity for those folks to work on fire mitigation and prevention right now would be amazing. We're also excited to announce that we'll be starting our first all-female cohort by March, which is pretty exciting. I'm excited about that. We had 80 people who applied. We'll be having a class up to 25. Want to make sure we get it right because some of these women have experienced trauma, but we're going to do up to 25 women for this cohort and once we have the system down, we'll be able to expand. Also happy to report that construction on our larger dorm should be done in about a month and a half, according to ISD, I believe. Let me see what else to highlight. We're also looking at other workforce development. We're looking at a partnership for construction. We're looking at a partnership for construction with Metro and some other providers. We're looking at expanding. We just launched another auto mechanic program. We have five programs that already do construction, which I think will be helpful with the rebuilding of Los Angeles County. What else should we mention quickly? Our, another one of unmet needs that we're asking for is some staffing around ECM, which will help bring in more revenue into the department and hopefully reduce some of the reliance on NCC when it comes to some of the case management that we've mentioned previously. Another important place, because we are a new department that is building, is making sure we're able to meet compliance, monitoring, quality assurance, and external affairs. In that, we are asking for some more staff to be able to do contract monitoring, compliance, and quality services. We already oversee 177 contracts and growing directly. Plus, there's a number that we do through our third-party administration as well, third-party administrators where, as well. And I'll just stop with that, because I know you guys want to jump to questions.
Thank you, Judge. And I just want to personally thank you. I was up in the Antelope Valley, and I appreciate the role that you've played in your team. And I know that my city's appreciated as well.
Thank you, Supervisor.
I'm very grateful for that. With that, Supervisor Solis, then Supervisor Mitchell, and Supervisor Han.
Yes, thank you, Judge. Great work you've been doing. And you have only been here two years? Wow. It's a lot. Feels like it's a lot longer.
We're busy.
Right. I wanted to ask you a question regarding the warm landing place.
Yes.
How is that coming along? Is any of the $19 million in funding gonna be applicable for the warm landing capital project?
Yes, that money would, is the gap that we understand through our meetings so far with Public Works. We're also looking for other ways to cut costs to be able to get that facility built. But that's one of our, as you see, it's our number-two priority on the list, based on the conversations around jail diversion and everything, catching people as soon as they exit the jail, we know is very, very important.
And you said you've already serviced how many people? With your little mobile trailer, whatever?
Yeah, the mobile trailer is, then we have the table that's right outside. Yeah, so 3,000 have been serviced already. But we'll have a trailer literally right outside the door. We've ordered it. It's the delivery that's been somewhat of a challenge, so hopefully it'll be out there within a couple months.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, have you been able to estimate the impact to your budget regarding the reentry and intensive case management services? The program is due to lose, I guess, funding? So what recourse do we have?
Well...
As a passage of Prop 36.
Well, Prop 36 has largely funded our case management services that I mentioned, so like 7,500 individuals just last year. We are trying to expedite now that the board, thank you so much for your support around ECM. And we are already in the process of signing our first contract with two more in the queue. We anticipate that within three years, once we're fully, all the contracts are fully executed, and we have all the partnerships, it would be able to be self-sustaining. But it would take approximately three years on the conservative side. We are using as much of our one-time funding. We're floating some other places where people are being served, say, for instance, through pretrial services. We're using some of our CFCI funding to be able to help support in those ways.
Right. And I'm really excited about the fire camp. That's something that I know Supervisor Kula and I worked on many moons ago, and I'm glad to hear you're gonna outreach, you're gonna include women, and would hope that you come out my way.
Yeah, I would love for you guys to see. It doesn't even look like the place that it looked like when I first got the assignment. It looks completely different. We've actually taken people there who were incarcerated there, and they don't even recognize the dorms anymore. It's pretty amazing.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you. I agree in terms of bringing women into fire service. Department of Corrections did it at state facilities like 40 years ago. So it's, you know, it's a long time coming, and I'm glad we're there. So you heard my question, in terms of pretrial. So could you share more about the 40 positions that is gonna support your work on the independent pretrial services?
Yes. So our call center is fully operated by contract workers, so none of them are employees. So the first 31 are actually to solidify those positions, so that we can have some continuity of services there. Also, we've been working with, we've had preliminary conversations with both DYD and probation about expanding services for their populations as well, particularly for the adults that are in the juvenile systems, that we'll be able to link them to services and resources. And so with that in mind, that's the 31 positions for the call center. The other nine is for expansion on pretrial services. As the DA said earlier, I have had preliminary conversation with him about kind of working on what does that look like? We were in previous conversations with the last administration that sort of the model has shifted. And so even as recently as today, I've been working with the staff on sort of what that model will look like, where they feel comfortable. We're also trying to get him out to a couple of other sites that have more of the structure that I think he's looking for, that we actually provide through something like our STOP program.
Thank you. One more question. We, the Department of Economic Opportunity was just here a couple of presentations ago, and we talked about their high-road employment, training, and the youth employment. Are you all working collaboratively? Because it seems to me that those kind of programs and the target population dovetails perfectly with who you're trying to support as well.
Yeah, we do, we do work collaboratively. Actually, our, one of our staff members just moved over there, got promoted. So we do work collaboratively. We are working with them specifically about job placement for some of our training programs. Our model's a little bit different. We provide a lot more wraparound services for our population to keep them out of the system.
Because they need it.
They do. They need a lot, they need a lot more support. But we are working collaborative with them. We do not want to duplicate services. And we're trying to streamline as much as possible.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Supervisor Han?
Thank you, Judge. And I was glad to hear you talking always about the Doors Reentry Center in Long Beach. When we met with Mayor Rex Mitchell's in last summer about the idea to open a new Doors Reentry Center in Long Beach, he was very supportive and interested in a partnership with us. Can you elaborate a little bit, just for the public, on what Doors Reentry Center is? What kind of services it will provide? And why you think it's important to have it in Long Beach?
Yeah. The Doors Center is really a one-stop shop. So we link people to education, housing, employment, case management, supports, family reunification, and the list goes on and on. So it's basically any services. We link them to mental health services. We link them to other partners. And like, even at the VA, we talked about Military and Veteran Affairs. They're gonna be able to put a provider right in the Antelope Valley, because we saw that there was a high need of folks out there who need services. So it's basically a one-stop shop. And we have the one in South Los Angeles, right across from USC. We have, we opened one, which is really lovely, in Antelope Valley. And so having one in the most southern part of the county would be really important, because we know that there's a high need there as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I was also looking at the $11 million that you're requesting for the LA County Training Center. What would the $11 million be? And can you elaborate a little bit even on what the...
Sure, the Training Center is. So the Training Center is a unique environment. The only other one that's quasi-similar is one in Ventura County. Los Angeles, obviously, is a larger county. So when people go and they actually fight fires, and I've been out with a lot of our incarcerated firefighters over the last month or so on fire sites, there's very few pathways for them to get into employment. And thank you Supervisor Mitchell for raising it earlier about some of the barriers even once they're out. And so what it is, is a facility where we provide housing. We provide all of the training. People receive a stipend while they're there, so they're able to support themselves. And they receive case management. They receive expungement services. They receive anger management or any other requirements that they have, and we help them stay on track. And when they're done, the goal is obviously for employment. And so we're excited that the first cohort, even though we're still learning everything and ironing out, that they've gotten so many offers from Cal Fire, which means that it was successful. But we're still fine-tuning and making sure we bring in the right services. But that funding basically would make it sustainable. We've used earmark funding. We use one-time funding. We've kind of piecemealed it together. We want to make sure that it's sustainable. The other thing we've learned is that everyone's not built to be a firefighter. It's really hard work. So we want to make sure that we have other pathways available for them as well.
Thank you for that. And finally, I know you're asking for a lot of NCC to provide ongoing funding for programs that you've already started, like the Training Center, Pretrial Services, Pilot Program, Doors Centers. My understanding is that's because you've been using a lot of one-time funding, like the American Rescue Plan Act and the Care First Community Investment Fund. So if you don't receive all the funds that you're asking for from NCC, would you have to end some of these programs?
The goal would not be to end. The goal would to be maybe cut back a little bit. And I mean, as with everything we've done since I've gotten here, we do more with less. And so, you know, we would do as best that we could, and maybe hours get cut, maybe people are part-time. I don't know exactly yet. It just depends on at what level the cuts are being made. Or maybe they're, maybe, you know, maybe we're not able to open a physical location. Maybe it's only virtual. I'm not sure exactly. Depends on to what extent. We've done some preliminary estimates, but it depends on what percent the county eventually goes with.
Right. Well, I appreciate that, and thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
The work that you and your team do.
Thank you, Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You've answered a lot already. I know you identified that you're developing databases and systems to be able to communicate how many people you're serving and how your department is doing. So how are you determining priorities by ROI, given that we're talking about budgeting and having to make choices?
Yes. So there's, the programs that are older obviously have the better data, right? So we know sort of what the recidivism rates are like that. We have already sort of streamlined sort of what we're doing. So as much as possible, I'm trying to say, no, we can't take that on unless it fits into something that we're already doing. And we're just trying to tighten up and make the programs that we, as I, all my team will tell you, I'm always like, how can we have a 30% increase on investment with the same amount of labor? So we're looking for technology shortcuts to get stuff done as much as possible without taking the human touch to it, if that makes sense. So we're really focusing on stabilizing folks. So housing, employment, and case management is our baseline. And then from there, other things are added.
Okay. I know in speaking with the courts, we recently had a meeting with them about how we can work with them more on diversion opportunities. And one of the things they just sort of candidly shared was that they need, they're happy to see us do voluntary services, but many times...
They want to order.
What they need is something that they know people are actually going to as an alternative. And so how does this budget propose funding, not only voluntary services that we think can be a value add, but given that we have to make choices, some of those more mandatory structured programs, so we can actually see more diversion to something else?
I actually agree with that statement. We are trying to have more conditional release programs available. We actually already have them. The challenge has been the MOU between all of the partners. So as was mentioned with the last two presenters, there's not alignment...
Right.
Exactly about what that looks like. And so we have the programs available. Some of the judges do use them, but the judge has to order them, as opposed to waiting for the parties to agree, if that makes sense. So there...
What they told us is they would order them if they thought they were available. Right now, whatever they could order, from their perspective, is a voluntary program. And so they don't feel comfortable ordering something, in many cases, that will ultimately be voluntary for a person to continue. And so how are we investing in programs that do provide that sustained structure that it sounds like our partners in the courts are looking for, to be able to divert to something else?
Yeah. I would love to have that meeting with the court, so I could understand the question a little bit better, because they can't order them there. The alternative would be that they would go to custody. So there are structured programs that have, you know, they can construct, they can design it as much as they want. So we have programs that, for instance, the supervising judge of criminal uses quite often, which is, well, when she was sitting in court, was a STOP program, which is a lot of structure. So there is, everything is organized every day. All the judges don't use that. But she did use it, and she used it for felony cases as well, particularly for those with substance use disorder. But the alternative would be custody if they didn't stay in the program.
Absolutely. And I think that's, that's why, from their perspective, they, they're saying, you know, there are probably people I would love to see diverted and not be ordered to custody. I just am not seeing a program that will keep them structured in a space that I feel confident addresses that concern. So I just offer that as feedback when we're thinking about where we're investing our resources, and happy to facilitate that conversation if there's something that's being missed, because I think that's the critical gap that has to be bridged.
We have 400 beds available in that program that she was sending, but the rest, it's slowly rolling out to other judges.
But if it's, it's not about availability of beds only. It's like, and how do we make sure that people stay in a program for a period of time?
Well, unless it's carceral, you can't make a person stay in a program. So unless the doors are locked, you can't make a person stay in.
And finally, I would, I understand that your department is working on ways to expand revenue generating programs, including by potentially seeking Medi-Cal-related revenues. So can you give us details on where those efforts stand and how they're reflected in this budget?
Thank you for that question. We have one contract that I think we're just close to signature.
Very close.
Yeah, we're very close to signature. We have two others pending. It took us a while to get an MPI.
Yes, an MPI.
Yeah.
National Provider Identifier.
It took us a while to get a national provider identifier, but we have it now. So we are able to, we have three actually pending right now, so that we're pretty close. One of them should be, hopefully be in signature within the next month or two, is my, the first one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate you and your team. Good seeing you. All right.
Thank you.
We are gonna move on now to the, hear from the Director of Youth Development. David Carroll, Director of Youth Development and staff, are gonna make a presentation. All right, the floor is yours.
All right. Good afternoon. My notes said good morning, so I didn't know exactly where it was gonna be. So, you know, on the fly, no. Thank you for having this opportunity to present our budget for the Department of Youth Development, fiscal year '25-'26. My name is David Carroll. I'm the Director of the Department. I am joined by Danielle Vappi, our Chief Deputy, and Dewan Belton, our Administrative Manager. The Department is in a stage of maturing, and I'm very excited about this year's budget, because I believe it truly does show the maturation of the Department, as well as the, a greater understanding of the amount of effort that is needed from each individual staff person to reach the goals of this board and of the Department. Our mission is to be a catalyst for transformation by providing innovative pathways to youth development through intersectional, anti-racist, youth-centered strategies, so that all young people can access resources that nurture their growth, well-being, and connection to community. We are very proud of that recent mission statement. And I highlight that, because oftentimes, we are kind of siloed into only being diversion or only being reentry, when in fact, we are a comprehensive system of care for young people that serves thousands of young folks in multiple different settings, including diversion, including in the facilities, but also including young people living in community in each one of the supervisory districts. So I just try to return us to that grounding as often as possible. Here in our third year of operation, we have already filled many of the core recommendations of Youth Justice Reimagined. The Department funds over 75 community-based organizations. This year, allocating about $32 million worth of resources for a full continuum of care, including youth development networks, diversion, in-facility programming, and in-community programming for young people returning from facilities. We have spent a lot of time on our strategic plan this year. And again, we've done an in-depth exercise on the amount of hours that it takes for our staff to meet the needs of the community-based organizations that we support. As we jump into the budget, the Department is currently budgeted for 93 positions, which is extremely exciting for me. If you think back to the last couple of years, two years ago, we asked for 39 additional positions. positions. Last year, we asked for 59 additional positions. This year, we are only asking for 16 positions. And this is in light of the maturation that I believe the department has experienced as well as the financial constraints of the county that we are well aware of. This particular budget reflects an overall decrease in our budget from $80.8 million to $74.3 million. The change is primarily due to the removal of one-time carryover NCC, carryover AB 109 revenue, and a negative retirement COLA adjustment. Due to the current financial climate, the department is maximizing its ability to leverage existing resources by shifting resources from SNE to SNEB to address excessive workloads and the timely completion of departmental initiatives. The department's budget priorities will be supported by shifting other funding to refrain from requesting any new NCC. So our budget priorities are to, obviously to support the county's Care First, Jails Last racial equity and prevention priorities. We're requesting 16 positions, again, with no net county costs. And those include one position, and these are in list of priority, one position to support the implementation of programming in the juvenile detention facilities that is specifically to connect young people to outside resources as they're being released. They would be co-located in Los Pradinos. One new diversion position, specifically a bilingual staff person to work with diversion services and strengthen our referral partnerships. Two, folks in research and evaluation to support data collection and analysis for the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act program. As you all may be familiar, we took over some of the data element responsibilities for programs like Ready to Rise and some of the other primary prevention programs coming through JJCPA. Four positions to support the implementation of general programming in the juvenile detention facilities and to assist predisposed youth in accessing, in accessing, sorry, community reentry resources. Right now, we've got two or three people that are driving all over LA County to visit each one of the, the centers that we are, the facilities that we're currently located. So we want to start to assign staff to each one of those facilities to help coordinate the activities of the CBOs that are there, work on the schedule, make sure people are where they're supposed to be when they're supposed to be there. And four positions to lead our transition-age youth in collaboration with PPSGC and OCP. Again, we are really trying to develop the way that we support young people that are coming out of the child dependency care system, and we believe that this, that these positions are crucial to that, to that goal. Our budget pressures include the need for increased programmatic capacity to achieve measurable impact on Care First, Jails Last priorities by expanding our role in leading facility programming, providing coordination, community-based reentry services, and securing resources for sustainability. An increase of demand for youth development programs and evidence-informed prevention and promotion of youth connection and safety through expanded prevention and diversion services. The need for increased staff capacity due to our, the growth of the department. Per the recommended budget phase, we are requesting some administrative services support. Again, the need for increased resources to achieve the remaining major YJR initiatives, expand programming, add additional resources, again, and reach the true goals and mission of Youth Justice Reimagined. With that, I will take any questions, and I think I stayed under six minutes.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask one, and then I will hand, hand it over to Supervisor Horvath. But can you expand on the school-based ambassadors? I think that's intriguing, and I actually, I think we've talked about it, but I'd like to hear a little more about it. And then what would you think is the ideal candidate that you'd be looking for to fill these positions?
Yeah, so it is the, it is the first step in our, in our school-based work. Originally, we were going to support a program that prevented truancy within the schools in partnership with the previous District Attorney's Administration. Although the administration has changed, we are still pursuing that same work. So what we're doing is identifying the schools that have the highest percentage of truancy challenges, and we are planning on, on contracting with at least 10 different community-based organizations that would then be coordinated by these two ambassadors. So most of the positions that we're hiring for, I should have mentioned that earlier, are at the lower level of the positions that are within our, our class specifications. So these folks would be working, again, directly with the CBOs, making sure they had everything that they need to support them in preventing truancy. Now, where it could go, right, is other opportunities to work with the school, even with things like crisis intervention and eventually less reliance on things like school resource deputies, et cetera. So this is the first step to that much broader goal.
I think it's interesting, and I mean, I know with the push away from resource deputies, I think there's an opportunity to expand on this because contrary to, at least in my district, the resource deputy also build a relationship with the students and oftentimes are able to help them navigate, whether they're having difficulty at home, whatever it is. But I think that a school-based ambassador would, would fit that need and, and would be a benefit to the kids as well.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Horvath, and then Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much. I would say, speaking to your comments around the maturity of the department, there's certainly recognition in the state about the leadership that you're providing at the county level and a belief of, you know, how much you have stood up and are, and they're excited to see the capacity that you will have as well. So I, I want to acknowledge that in, in the context of your comments. Earlier today, we heard from the Chief of Probation, and I asked him about the dollars that their department is supposed to be giving to your department for the Credible Messenger program. And their team said that you all had just given them the numbers and that they need your detailed plan and ultimately invoices to reimburse. So the ball's in your court, it sounds like. Is that now your understanding? And are we all on the same page with regard to that funding stream?
Yeah, absolutely. So as of the meeting we held on October 31st, when this idea first came about, right, of having a Credible Messenger organization help move young people from the living units to school and back, and then provide some other wraparound services, during that time, we've actually identified a provider. It took a little bit longer to come to final finance, financial terms with that particular provider. It was a lot of conversations between my team and them and obviously Danielle to help get us to our final number. We've reached a final number that we all agree on. That number has been presented to and also agreed by probation. So we formally provided that, that, that number. The contract itself, I'm trying to be careful not to say too much, right, because we haven't signed it yet, but the contract itself is with County Council currently. So as soon as the contract is approved, the, the provider is ready to go in, I think, as of March 1st.
Okay. So that's your timeline? That's your projected timeline?
To get started.
Okay.
Eventually, it, the, the goal is 20 of these Credible Messengers to assist in this. It may not start with 20. It may be, you know, eight to 10 to begin and then ramp up, you know, gradually over. They've told us over about 30, 45 days to get up to that, to that 20 number. So there's, there's the rest of this year that probation would be funding, and then at least one subsequent year. And throughout that year, we're going to have to go back, obviously, and, and, you know, look at the, the performance and see exactly what we need for subsequent years.
Yeah, we've certainly heard testimony here about the importance of that program, so I want to make sure it's funded properly, that you all have the support that you need to grow it. The value has been documented, so, so that's good to hear, that March 1, we'll see evidence of that program. That's good. And then as we're thinking about our budget, not only for this year, but as you're talking about growth, I, I'm glad to hear you thinking about how we sustain that growth. I appreciate that we're in a little bit of a different budget position this year than last year, but I want to make sure that we're thinking through whatever projected budget instability might happen and still helping to support your department. So are there any particular challenges, whether it's changes through Prop 36 or other challenges that you anticipate from a budget perspective that particularly threaten your department?
So with regards to Prop 36 and some of the overall just justice-related changes, right, in, in the landscape, we are carefully monitoring both the population in the facilities as well as the diversion referrals that, that we receive. So far, we have been pleasantly surprised that the diversion numbers are actually still higher than they were this time last year. And we, right now, we've been meeting with the DA and with our other law enforcement partners. So we are, again, cautiously optimistic that diversion is still, is still moving along at the same pace. Obviously, we are aware of some of the increases in the SYTF population, while the population at Los Pradinos seems to be a little bit lower or kind of staying, maintaining constant. So we're obviously keeping an eye on that. Financially, what I can say is that we have left the, the stage of perennial leaving dollars on the table, and we are at a stage now where almost all of our resources have been encumbered, right? What we're trying to do with our staff is make sure that they are helping those organizations to perform to the maximum capacity of those individual contracts, right? Because we don't want to leave any resources on the table. In the upcoming budgets, we've actually created in a way to where we use more of those carryover funds because we're trying to get to a net zero, right, between the carryover and, and what we're using currently. With all that said, we're going to need, in the future, as we continue to expand, we're going to need more support, right? Especially in the facilities as we start to add more and more programming. So for this year, that is not as much of a concern, but we are certainly looking at probation and other sources of revenue as we add more and more programs and lead into what this board has asked us to do, which is take the lead in facility programming.
Yeah, I think that's important. You know, we did hear from probation today that they're really counting on you to provide a lot of that programming and support that, you know, when we asked them where in their budget they were providing some of those supportive services, they really highlighted that you were the place where that's happening. So I want to make sure you're appropriately resourced if not only are we counting on you and your department, but another department is counting on you for that. So, so helpful to keep surfacing that with us through the budgeting process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much. Regarding the four positions on your other slide, it's like priority number five, the probation facility support positions. And I understand that those are different from the Credible Messenger positions you just talked about with Supervisor Horvath. So what are the service gaps these positions will help address, especially those that may be important to probation achieving BSCC compliance?
So thank you for the question. I'll, I'll answer it to the best of my ability, if anyone on the team wants to help me out. So these positions, these folks are going to be based in Los Pradinos, in Berry J. Knight Orf, in Campus Kilpatrick, in the facilities that we serve eight hours a day, right? So currently, what we have are staff that does program design, then they go to a facility for a few hours, then they go to a different facility, and they're, like I said, they're kind of driving all over LA. What happens when a community-based organization has trouble getting in the door? You know, what happens when they get to a facility and they're double booked, there's another program that's supposed to take place at the same time? What happens if they don't show up?
Mm-hmm.
Right? You know, and how does probation, you know, rectify that situation? So these folks are going to be there to deal with all of those in-facility needs. So they'll be a resource for both probation and a resource for the CBOs that are, that are in the facilities, you know, operating in the program. And it won't be as sporadic as it is now. And honestly, it's kind of a burden. We've got folks driving from Silmar to Downey, you know, to Malibu, you know?
Right.
And that's kind of a, you know, kind of a stress on, on them individually.
Right.
So that's what they'll be doing. I'm, I'm trying to think with regards to BSCC, we, we are in very active conversations, and we've actually developed a template for an electronic calendar that both county folks as well as CBOs would be able to, to view and be able to see exactly who was supposed to be where and when. So I believe in that way, these people will be managing that calendar, if you will, on-site. So I think that may be an area that would assist in some of the BSCC questions. But Danielle, I don't know if you've got anything additional?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. I think that's correct. Supervisor, the ambassadors would be at the facilities full-time. We are currently trying to put contract folks in there now because of the need, but it will help with the BSCC because some of the issue has been, as David pointed out, the, the scheduling issue.
Right.
So because the scheduling issue has been an issue, we want to make sure that our providers are where they're supposed to be able to get in the facility, and we think that will support it. So it does answer the BSCC question.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Seeing no more questions, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Have a great day.
All right. Now we are going to, that concludes the presentations for today. Executive office, please call those members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item. And we're going to give 90 seconds, so a minute and a half, and then we're going to have public comment open until 4 o'clock. So go ahead and call the public.
Will the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you. Tejana Weeks, Deidra Handy, Esther Yim, James Jones, Robert Hayesbrook, Andrew Ames, Sharon Senegal, Kathleen Blackstone. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address item one you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first caller, please?
Our first participant is Stan McKegney. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute, speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. I'm one of the directors of Youth Mentoring Connection. We're located at Manchester and Vermont, serving primarily black and brown young people. I'm here to strongly urge you to maintain J-COD funding at its proposed level. Thanks to these CFCI funds, we've been able to transform our urban oasis youth center. As it was mentioned in the first hour of the call earlier, it's a small mini example of a care campus, healing-centered with mentoring-based programs, mental health support, a safe space for young people to find refuge in crisis. People show up to us who are suicidal, sometimes in violent situations or disconnected fully from school. We help them find a way forward. We have an empowering experience, such as volunteering as a group within the wildfire, wildfire relief efforts recently. We, we step up in times when community needs. Cutting this funding would abandon the young people who need it the most. I urge you to stand up with us and with them and continue investing in their future. Thank you for putting this time together for the community to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rochelle Calles. Your line is open. You may begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rochelle Calles. I'm a resident here in South Los Angeles, sixth generation. I wanted to speak on, in regards to the economic opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for your PowerPoint presentation. I wanted to talk about the risk of the decrease of federal funding, 35% decrease in funding to be exact. Ms. Kelly also tied in the risk of public safety, and I'm in agreement. Wherever there's poverty, there will be crime. So in regards to this budget that was approved by the voters, Measure G, how will this board, and then moving forward, the task force, because we're, we're going to break this city up, you know, so it's going to be a task force, how are we going to ensure the funding that is given to these agencies will be utilized by the freedmen community, the community that has been redlined here in Los Angeles? We want economic empowerment. These agencies, city agencies, they lack cultural competence. So I just wanted, I just wanted to know how will the, the board track that we are using the funding, how we're using the funding, and how we're interacting with these agencies and our outcomes so that we can ensure equity and that our tax dollars are, are not misappropriated like it was with the homeless oversight commission? Thank you all for being here, and we're going to get this right. Peace and blessings.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Charles Vignola. Your line is open. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Board Supervisors. My name is Charles Vignola. I'm calling on behalf of LARP, the Los Angeles Regional Entry Partnership. We're the largest network of service providers here in Los Angeles County and a strong supporter of J-COD's budget proposals that they've put forward. We think that there's a lot of key programs in their budget, such as their specialized treatment and optimization programming, the Care First Community Investment Program, and LA County Training Fire, Training Center, firefighter training program, which play crucial roles in providing community opportunities and support for individual transitioning back into their communities from incarceration. These initiatives not only provide essential services to those who have been impacted by the justice system, but they foster a spirit of rehabilitation and reintegration that's so vital to this network. We've seen CFCI, the Care First Community Investment Program, offering significant support across districts that has allowed organizations to reach populations that may have otherwise been underserved, creating more equitable landscapes for the community engagement and support that's desperately needed. We think that the assistance that's being put forward is a really great opportunity to expand J-COD's support system and make sure organizations know that they're supported. In the light of Prop 36, we know that there's a significant need to increase the funding to sustain support systems for J-COD, and we're proudly supporting the, what they've put forward in their budget. We think that systems such as the Warm Landing Place offer a great opportunity as well as their push to make sure that Men's Central Jail is closed in the near future. We believe that continued funding for J-COD is going to lead to long-term benefits for both the community and the broader network as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Eric Previn. Your line is open. You may begin.
Well, it's a miracle that I finally got back through. How much time do I have?
One minute and 25 seconds. One minute and 24 seconds.
One minute and 25 seconds? Okay, well, Jesus. All right, well, calm down. First of all, I like the, you know, I remember when they would have a budget meeting and none of the department had to even show up because there was a wink and a nod. So this has been, this has been very good to hear from everybody. Obviously, we have a big problem if Supervisor Horvath doesn't know what the care campus is. And obviously, we have a problem if Nathan Hockman is going after a long list of people, except for the people who we brought to the county diligently as residents, that then nobody goes after. But I do think that Mr. Probation was cross-examined by Horvath, and that was, you know, interesting. And I think Garcia, everybody loves the public defender and the ultimate public defender of the conflict. I just think that this is a lot in one day. I'm going to write it up nicely so that everybody can get my views because when you when you offer such little time after a marathon, a better project would be to let the speaker, you know, Hockman comes on, he faces the public briefly, then we bring out the sheriff, he faces the public briefly, and you, because, you know, everybody has good questions. This is all about, as Davenport will remind, getting up Priority Mountain. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sierra. Peyton, your line is open. You may begin.
Thank you so much. My name is Sierra Peyton, and I'm the CEO of the Michael Soder Foundation. And as a child of a formerly incarcerated parent, I know firsthand how incarceration affects families. And so through the CFCI funding, our organization has been able to provide transformative arts programs directly and indirectly to youth impacted by incarceration in Districts Two, Three, and Five. And one of those youths is Santiago. He joined our animation program at Berry J. Nydorff, and at first he was resisting our guidelines because he wanted to talk about his life, gang-banging and violence. But we challenged him to see beyond his past and redefine his narrative. And after our classes, he shared that, you know, he liked that he was able to express himself through creativity. And then he started to see that he's not defined by his past, but the decisions that he can make today. And so through our filmmaking, animation, and financial literacy workshops, I can honestly say that Santiago, he found his voice, not shaped by where he's been, but where he's going. And so with this funding, our organization has been able to teach our youth that change starts with their mindset first. In our classes, we don't do finger pointing, we don't blame the system or the man. Instead, we empower our youth to recognize their potential, take full ownership of their growth, and reimagine their future. And so with this funding, you know, we, our hope is that we can continue to provide these programs that empower our youth and to really make real change in our communities.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Brian Jose. Your line is open. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Board Supervisors. Byron Jose with the Translatina Coalition, and Reimagine LA. Thank you to the board, to supervisors who are definitely amplifying some of the needs to ensure that the budget truly reflects some of the board priorities and not just continue building our carceral system. Under Measure G, these new processes, we were told that it was not going to cost much from the budget, but it's costing us time. Thank you, Chair, ensuring that there will be at least 90 seconds provided to all budget matters moving forward. The presentation by the sheriff, by the probation, by all the folks that get the majority of the budget, they should definitely sit here, sit and listen to the community and the concerns, given that it's their proposed budget moving forward. However, even the slides that they presented, there's no alignment, there's no identification in terms of any board priorities, there's no metric plans, there's no strategic plans. So we understand that this is new, but these institutions that continue to get most of the budget continue to pretty much function as they please and not even turn in a full proposal, a full breakdown of the budget, and how to align it to other departments. Thank you to the rest of the departments, like J-COD, the Department of Youth Development, and other folks in the county that are willing to ensure that our budget truly reflects a Care First, Jail Last, Jail Never approach, and ensuring that the needs in the community are being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Daniel Rodriguez. Your line is open. You may begin. Your line is open now. Please go ahead.
Daniel Rodriguez, Senior Manager at the Social Impact Center. I urge you to please retain these J-COD funding. Judge Armstead is an incredible leader, and we're extremely grateful for these essential programs. By removing this funding, it adds a lot of stress and negativity for system-impacted people, and these resources are essential to our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay, Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Thank you. We will now go to in-person speakers. Please begin.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Tihana Weeks. I am the Community Ambassador and Violence Interruption Coordinator for the Sidewalk Project. We are located in Area 10 of District One, and we serve the most vulnerable populations in Skid Row, and Hilda Solis is our representative. She has been a wonderful supporter and champion of our work. We're very appreciative of her and all of you and the work that you do. The Care First Community Investment Grant provided by the Justice Care and Opportunities Department is essential to the work that we do, caring for the most exposed and vulnerable, sensitive members of Skid Row. Because of this funding, we were able to furnish comprehensive wraparound services. We connect those in need to housing, physical and mental health services through our case management. We provide workforce development and job readiness opportunities. And as my title suggests, we are able to employ a team of lived, experienced community ambassadors who make Skid Row a safer neighborhood by peacekeeping, conducting outreach, de-escalating violent or potentially violent situations, nurturing relationships throughout the area, assisting neighborhood community hubs, and cultivating potential neighborhood sanctuaries, and so, so, so much more. In January, as fires raged throughout our city...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. If you want, if you've got something in writing that you want to enter into the record, we'd more than happy to take it or just submit it at another time. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Esther Yim. I'm here on behalf of Mentor for Change. And I come from, we serve in Supervisor District One, which is where Supervisor Hilda Solis is. Hello. I just want to thank Supervisor Solis for providing support for our scholarship program a couple years ago. It has really been beneficial to our students. Today I'm here because I want to address the fact that J-COD support for us has been very impactful over the past two years. We're in our second year of funding right now. Through the J-COD grant, we were able to actually expand our services to other neighborhoods as well as expand our services to more and more distressed populations of youth. Initially, we began serving first-generation low-income youth, and now we are able to have additional programs that specifically serve unhoused youth, systems-impacted youth, and also youth who are impacted by the justice system. Most recently, we were able to add services to Los Praderinos, which we've heard a lot about today. We just began services there. We would not have been able to do that work, expanding our services to more youth and to a greater diversity of youth, without the funding that we received through J-COD. And I just want to share that, you know, you may be able to duplicate services, but you can't duplicate relationships. We have to be where the kids are and where they have need, and that's why I...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, could she please meet with my deputy? Her name's Annabelle. She's right there, so you can talk to my staff. Yeah, thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Andrew Pathwood-Akinship, CBO based here in LA County. First off, I'd like to thank you all for all the hard work, as well as the other organizations and departments supporting this restorative, justive initiative. Funding for jail and prison programming is crucial because it provides incarcerated individuals with the tools they need to break free from cycles of crime, addiction, and trauma. Without these programs, the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation is merely housing individuals rather than rehabilitating them. Programs focused on education, vocational training, mental health, and trauma-informed care addresses the root causes of incarceration, helping individuals rebuild their lives and reintegrate into society. These initiatives reduce recidivism, promote personal growth, and create safer communities. Continued J-COD, CFCI, and all reentry resource funding is vital to sustaining nonprofit efforts that provide essential rehabilitation services. Without the support, many organizations cannot offer the same level of care. Investing in these programs moves the system from mere incarceration to true rehabilitation, benefiting both incarcerated and the communities they return to. I'd like to submit a letter of support to file in. Thank you all, and God bless.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Robert Hasselbruck. I'm a program coordinator for Center for Living and Learning out of Van Nuys, Third We were Program Area 22 Housing Project, as well as Program Area Six Reentry. I'm here in support of J-COD's funding. So the funding has allowed our organization to hire directly from the community that we serve. We have been able to hire those who have been incarcerated to receive training and become gainfully employed while providing much-needed assistance to our clients. We have been able to provide gender-based case management services for women and rapid housing for those released from incarceration within the last 18 months. Our rental assistance allows us to bypass lengthy and cumbersome process to immediately house someone who fits the criteria, giving us valuable time to work on financial stability in the meantime. Amity Foundation has been very proactive in assisting us with technical expertise, or expertise, yeah, allowing our staff and organization to grow. Thank you, guys, for having, for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
To the distinguished board, I'm Reverend James I. Jones Jr., better known as the community's Pastor JJ, founder of Gangsters for Christ, and President of Sopio Minister Alliance. And I'm just, wear many hats in the community, but I'm standing today on behalf of Sopio Administration Alliance, where our program, the Wisdom Program, who's been supported by J-COD, has blessed our community tremendously as our youth. We don't have to talk about the climate of our country, even from the House to the White House, we have serious issues right now. And the last thing we need is to take away from a great program from our children. I deal with many mass groups of organizations, and J-COD has been strategic and intentional about bringing real strategic and vital programs to our children. It would be, at this time, it would actually be devastating for a time of this hopelessness and despair to take away the programs that's great. We need more programs, and we need, and again, I want to thank our illustrious Supervisor, Holly Mitchell, Second District, for all the support. And I would just continue to, and the work that I've been doing with all of you all, she steals me some time from you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Deidra Handy, and I am the Program Director for the Restoration of Virgin Services Human Trafficking Drop-In Center. We're located at 208 North Long Beach Boulevard in the city of Compton, California. We are located right on what is called the Blade. The Blade is where all of the human trafficking victims congregate, and that is where all of the brutality and everything else that happens on the Blade. We are frontline. So I'm going to read. Located 208 North Long Beach Boulevard, known as the Blade, a well-known trafficking hotspot, we're a drop-in center that provides a safe haven for survivors seeking refuge from abusive situations. The center's strategic location enables real-time intervention. The services that we provide are the basic needs, hygiene items, window breakers, because the the young women are kidnapped constantly, hand warmers, because they're out there freezing. We provide pepper spray because they're constantly being brutalized by the pimps. But more than that, we provide hope for 96 women that have come through on on just 20 hours a week, that's all that we have, 20 hours a week, 96 women have come through, and 11 of them have been rescued. And we, I want to thank Supervisor Mitchell, I want to thank J-COD, I want to thank Amity for their support. I don't have enough time to tell you everything that we've done and all the lives that we've saved, but I want to let you know this, that the money that we have received has not gone in vain, and we have, we have saved lives together.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Blackstone. I'm coming to you from Moon Water Farm. We are a community farm, part of the J-COD program in Compton, and we're providing youth education on culinary arts, land stewardship, and herbal remedies, and have created a third space, if you will, that is an alternative to traditional education. We've hired six culturally competent staff. We had over 70 applications for 30 positions. It's a 24-week program and has really, I think, instilled in the youth the realization that our relationship with land is what heals us. And so the source of good food, plant remedies, and, sorry, I'm getting nervous now, and economic solidarity. Sorry. So we're there to create an agricultural product. And so we're spending a lot of time each week developing products from agricultural plants and animal fiber, and we have goats and chickens right in the city. And so it's this alternative place that the youth return back to over and over again. The money's been incredibly helpful and support the J-COD budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lunidy, and thank you for your service. My name is Shereen Senegal. I'm the Executive Director of Ronnie's House, and I am a recipient of one of the J-COD grants. I started my organization after I lost my husband to gun violence in 2016, and I realized that the work that we do is crucial to save lives and not just families, but to build safer communities. Through the funding and the amazing leadership of Judge Armstead and Amity Foundation, the funds have gone to help us launch businesses for those that have been justice-impacted. They have 40% more chance of launching a business when they've been through the system. We integrate very crucial mental health services and resources by working with mental health providers around us, and we work with the community as a whole in order to ensure that people have the opportunities. The truth is, the funding here is important for intersectionalities from homelessness to gun violence, and those that have been affected by the justice system are experiencing more homelessness, are involved more with gun violence. And so when we sustain these types of resources and invest more, we are really supporting our communities as a whole. We're located in Supervisor Han's district. She has been an amazing support. And Supervisor Mitchell, as well as Solis, we serve people in your districts as well. Thank you so much for your time and for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment?
There are no other speakers to address the board, Madam Chair.
Okay. With that, that concludes our time for public comment on these items. These reports are receive and file. Hearing, no objections. That will be the order. That concludes today's meeting. The next meeting of the board will be held Monday, February 24, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. And the next meeting of the board will be a public hearing meeting to be held Tuesday, February 25, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. Thank you all for being here.